Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our chambers. Welcome to the March 26, 2024, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, good morning, Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Desmond Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, March 29 at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to Clerk Staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to closing the public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak, and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will also manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may also send your comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see Clerk Staff for assistance or contact the Clerk's office at (916) 874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please call the first item?
Your first item are public comments for matters that are not on the posted agenda, and we do have a few. We have three public comments.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Kai On. I'm here above my father, Wu Kong On's death. Sacramento DA Office has not contacted me, so I authorize California State Assembly member, Ms. Stephanie Lewin, to get information and inquire Sacramento DA Office, Sacramento Law Enforcement, California State Justice Department, and FBI about my father's death. I asked Ms. Lewin to see if Sacramento DA Office and Sacramento Police Department gave me fake information about the driver that killed my father. Because I also authorized Ms. Stephanie Lewin to get information and inquire State Controller Office, CalPERS, and DMV about my father during DMV payable by Metcalf and health insurance, Ms. Lewin's office may contact Sacramento County Office, Ms. Stephanie Kors about the impersonal email from Mr. Andrew Spauer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. On, and again, we're sorry for your loss.
If you had a genius lamp, there's many things you'd wish for. You'd want to help the homeless with not only housing but what's holding them back. You'd help public safety with not only staffing but equipment and create a gun exchange program so we can get many of these polymer guns and illegal guns off the streets. But you'd also wish for equality with not only reparations program but a program that would create forgivable business loans, forgivable student loans, and jobs at your forefront for minorities so we can uplift all people of color. And you think globally because human beings should be treated like human beings, irregardless where there's a conflict. We don't pick size, we provide solutions. Food, water, medical supplies for the current issue. When the issue's over, we provide help to rebuild the houses and critical infrastructures like hospitals so we don't add to the 30 million existing refugees of the world. The Path to Humanity provides millions of dollars to fund these causes, all without taxpayer money. It is funded with an eight-phase system. Phase one is very simple. Businesses choose what they want to support. They get a coraling sticker for $40 a month. They also get an added discount on a discount coupon card, and the people can buy the discount coupon card for $20, and they'll help them save money by shopping locally. So I'm sure you're thinking like, what do we do with this program? We're stressed out with everything we have. Well, Rome wasn't built overnight, but it was built by Romans. We have many nonprofits in the area that we can RFP out the positions to help. You have your fast-forward program, we can put this into that. You also have the, we could do like a BID process and stuff like that. And then we can also create a mural to celebrate the success of the program as well, which will also help recruitment to the homeless to get them in the program. The Path to Humanity allows us to do what was once impossible and make it routine. My name is Travis Castle. I'm here to get things done. Join me.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Appreciate your time.
Abdallah. He's not here.
Not here.
Okay, we're going to close the public comments. That completes your public comments for off-agenda.
All right, next item, please.
Okay. For your consent matters, items 2 through 52. For item 13, you're adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 4.63, Title 4 of the Sacramento County Code relating to regulation of shopping carts and repealing Chapter 9.76, Title 9 of the Sacramento County Code relating to shopping carts. You waived reading on this on February 27. And for item 14, I need to ask the Board to continue this item to April 9. This is the Laguna Creek Ranch/Elliot Ranch Community Facilities District Number One Improvement Areas. Authorization to use funds for alternative flood control project.
All right, Mr. Hume.
Happy to move those items. Just a question, why are we continuing item 14? What was the reason for it?
Dave DeFonte, Deputy County Executive. One of the attachments was too large to attach, so we're continuing it to find a way to make those materials available to the public.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second the continuance.
Okay, before we have a vote, I would like to pull item number 2 and handle that separately. So if the makers of the motion would agree to a friendly amendment to pull number 2 and hear that right after the rest of the remainder of consent.
I will amend my motion simply to continue item 14.
As will my second.
Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. That takes us to item number 2.
Item number 2, authorize the county executive to sign a contract with Kevin Gardner to serve as Inspector General in the amount of $165,000.
Thank you. I wanted to pull this separately just because this is such an important contract for the people of Sacramento County. Also wanted to thank Supervisor Desmond. Typically, the chair, and last time I was chair, I had the privilege of doing this. I think Mr. Serna's done it twice. I, you know, to participate in this process, however, the previous chair was already halfway through the process, and given his extraordinary experience in the subject matter, I thought it only appropriate that he continue to operate in that fashion. So I want to thank Supervisor Desmond for taking the time to do that and see if you had any comments yourself. Put you on the spot.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, for letting me participate, and it was really a pleasure. I think I agree with you. It's an extremely important position, and I'm very happy with the selection that you will be announcing here momentarily, so thank you.
Okay. With that, if we have no other comments from the Board, we have no public comment that I can see, correct?
Not for item 2.
Okay, then I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
And Mr. Villanueva.
Thank you, Supervisors, for taking that action. I'd just like to pass the baton to Deputy County Executive Eric Jones to introduce Mr. Gardner.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Chair, Board of Supervisors. It was my pleasure to bring this contract to you today. As you know, it was a very robust recruitment, nationwide search with a recruitment firm, and part of the selection process when we got down to the interviews included Sheriff's Office staff, a community panel. So, for example, the community review commissioners, several of them were on it. In fact, one of our commissioners, Bishop Baker, is here today, who participated. Thank you. And the sheriff himself, Board of Supervisors representative, Mr. Desmond, as well as myself as a CEO rep. So just some quick background about Mr. Gardner before he comes up and says a few words as well. He has over 30 years of sworn law enforcement experience, two years as chief of the Division of Law Enforcement for the California Department of Justice, over 15 years of management experience, development of strong community partnerships, training and experience with law enforcement discipline and processes, and he investigated and received citizens' complaints while serving as interim in a like position for the city of Sacramento. So I would now like to introduce Mr. Kevin Gardner to say a few words at the podium. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner, welcome. Morning.
I'll be brief, as I haven't been in front of a crowd for quite some time. I'm a little shaky up here, but I just wanted to say thank you for approving the contract, giving me an opportunity after a brief hiatus from my previous career with the city of Sacramento and the state of California to get back into public service. It's what I pretty much was born to do. I've pretty much spent my adult life in public service, and I'm looking forward to having an opportunity to get back and continue. I'm looking forward to having an opportunity to speak with each of you at some point to kind of see what your thoughts are about this role and about how you feel that this role should interact with this Board, the county, and with the community. Again, I'm pleased to be back. I want to thank Deputy County Exec Eric Jones for all of his help over the last couple of weeks and helping me with the onboarding process, and I'm looking forward to getting started. So with that, any questions or comments?
Thank you. I don't have any questions, but I would recommend that you make those rounds with the Board members sooner rather than later. That'd be great.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any others? Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Next item.
Okay, so for the balance of the consent, we have comments for item 9 and item 13. So for item 9, we have Rachel.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Hagan, and I'm a provider, E-Board, and bargaining team member. I'm joined by my fellow bargaining team members and union family, who have all worked hard to improve our union contract, which covers more than 30,000 IHSS providers. While these changes are far from what we need to truly thrive, they are a good first step to improve our economic well-being and address the caregiver shortage affecting 36,000 IHSS recipients. Although it took longer than we hoped, we're glad this Board has finally heard our concerns. Our members fought hard to secure wages increases from 17 to 1975 an hour by 2027. This will give Sacramento IHSS workers, who are predominantly women and people of color, who lead and provide for our households more spending power to the benefit of our community. Because state and federal sources cover 84% of the cost for the wage increase and providers spend their money locally, the new contract is projected to generate millions of dollars for Sacramento County through additional tax revenue, state and federal reimbursements. We're glad the final agreement we reached recognizes the need and importance of healthcare workers having healthcare ourselves. And for our county's first-time funding for essential training and for PPE, the improvements we won in this new contract shows what can be accomplished when long-term care workers advocate for ourselves, for our consumers, while working with the Board of Supervisors towards solutions. So while we thank you for your vote on this contract today, we want to also thank the countless SEIU 2015 members who worked tirelessly to make the lives of your constituents better in these tough economic times. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Liz Sanchez for item 13, or Lisa Sanchez, my apology.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. I am here just to make a few comments about the shopping cart ordinance. I just wanted to say I appreciate the added amendments that have been put forth here, reading all this. One thing I do suggest to be added, it's on the third sentence for the first chapter 4.63, when it says that basically they're promoting blight and deterioration in the county. I would like to have added "and causes ecological damage to the critical waterways." We've pulled over 650 shopping carts from our creeks and waterways within the last year, just under a year and a half, 650-plus at this point. They're pretty detrimental, so that would be nice to have added. But I just wanted to say thank you for adding that the shopping carts will be, they'll have disabling vices included on them, which is not a requirement, so that is a definite bonus, that there will be violation notices given, and that there's going to be a cost recovery put forth in order to require the owners of the shopping carts to reimburse the county, which has been something that has not been done. So the third-party vendors that are contracted through the county end up wrangling the shopping carts up, but the county and the taxpayers end up paying for that third-party vendor, not the businesses that they're wrangling the shopping carts for. So again, very much appreciated on that. The last thing I wanted to ask or request is if the shopping carts will be tracked to identify those that are more of a nuisance problem business. We do tend to find the same businesses over and over again in a high volume. It's not the little mom-and-pop shops of like a thrift store or whatnot. It's these bigger location businesses. But anyways, I wanted to spend my time to come here and just tell you thank you so much. I appreciate it. I think everybody will appreciate that, especially our waterways. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Serna.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, Barry, can you come down to the podium, please? Thank you for being here. With regard to Ms. Sanchez's last comment about tracking, can you respond to that?
Yes. I mean, everybody is required to have a plan to recover their carts.
When you say everybody, you mean the grocers?
The grocers, anybody that has shopping carts, regardless. And so we will be able to tell by talking to the vendor that actually picks up the carts where the most problems are.
Okay.
We've already inspected. We had an 851 that supposedly had shopping carts, and ultimately, there was like 270. We've been to all of them, and we've done outreach to all of them, and we're going to be monitoring what's going on through our, for the company that we use to retrieve the carts.
So in your opinion, then, the concern expressed about tracking is built into the ordinance?
Well, I mean, it just depends on how well the stores, which are required to have something on them that says that they're zone, they should be able to track them. Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. And then, thank you, Barry. No more questions. Question for County Council. In terms of the suggested additional language, which I agree with and wouldn't necessarily think it, you know, constitutes any substantive issues with the mechanics of the ordinance, can we simply take that language and plug it in at this moment before we vote on it?
Yes, because you're introducing the ordinance, and you can add that language today. But you need to, I mean, I just need to know exactly what it is.
So, Ms. Sanchez, if you've written down that additional language and you want to give it to County Council now, would be the time.
Just to clarify, I believe this is adoption of the ordinance.
Yeah, so no, sorry. I thought we were introducing the ordinance, but we are adopting.
So we cannot?
I need to, can you give me five minutes?
It's not substantive.
I need to see what it is before I...
Take a look at it.
Okay, then I'll ask while she's doing it, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I have a question. I don't know who it's directed toward on this subject, and that's, what are the other jurisdictions in the county doing? Because, you know, almost everyone up here has a lot of areas that it's, you know, a city, a county, city, county, city. So, you know, it's much more helpful if we're doing this on a countywide basis. These shopping carts don't have any knowledge of our political boundaries.
So basically, ours is the most comprehensive. I'll have to do some research with the city, and I know that they use the same company to collect carts. I don't know exactly. We basically had two ordinances, and we combined it, and we did a lot of research as far as what we felt would work, and we got feedback from the Board of Supervisors and such. I'll have to check into that because I'm not sure.
Well, it's nothing that needs to be decided before a vote, that's for sure, but, you know, Barry, maybe when you're talking to your cohorts in other jurisdictions and you find this out, maybe you can highly recommend that they get as, you know, tough as we are now in order to make it so it's across the board.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So after reviewing the language and because it is just in the findings, I think it's acceptable to accept that amendment today?
Are we able to note it for yourself so it's in the record?
Yeah, I'd like to get a copy from the speaker before she leaves.
So do we, should we vote on this separately, then?
Yes.
Okay, so I would move the item with the amended language.
All right. We have a motion of seconds. Is there any other public comment? Seeing and hearing none? Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez.
Next item.
Do you want to take a separate motion for the balance of all the other items?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
All right, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Okay, for item 53, this is the presentation of resolution recognizing Mary Merrett upon
Good morning, members of the Board. Liz Bellis, Director of Regional Parks, and this is Mary Merrett. And this is one of those bittersweet moments where we are congratulating someone and wishing them well and very excited that they get to retire, but we are sorely going to miss Mary and all that she has done for Sacramento County and its residents. So fun factoid, Mary and I shared an office many a year ago when I first started, she first started. And Mary is truly the epitome of the start of our natural resources program for Sacramento County. She's done an amazing job. She's well-respected. People often come to her because of her expansive knowledge base on the American River Parkway, plants, and ecology. Some of the highlights that she has accomplished is establishing our invasive plant management program for the parks, establishing our fire fuel reduction and grazing program, which has been quite successful. The Cordova Creek Restoration Project, and most recently, she drafted the Public Access Plan for Isla M. Collin Conservation Preserve near Mather. She's done amazing work, and I'm really happy that you were able to come down here for this resolution, that we can honor you. We're really going to miss you. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Can we, I don't know, I don't think she wants to say a few words. That's up to you.
Would you like a picture? I'll go ahead and take a picture. But we can take pictures.
Well, Mary, since you're going to be modest, I will say on behalf of the Board, thank you, because that list of accomplishments is something that has impacted every district and throughout the county, and you're really going to have an impact for many years to come because of all those things that you have accomplished. So thank you very much on behalf of the county.
Barry is irreplaceable, but we're trying our best, but we actually had to hire two people, just so you know.
Sounds like it. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is the County Service Area Number One, Zone One, Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charges for the Carmichael Promenade Subdivision.
Good morning, members of the Board. Joe Grassick with County Engineering. So the Carmichael Promenade subdivision is located just north and west of the intersection of Fair Oaks Boulevard and Marshall Avenue and consists of 46 single-family parcels, some common areas, detention basin, and private roads. So during the entitlement process, the project was conditioned to provide full funding for street and safety light maintenance, which is provided by County Service Area Number One for unincorporated Sacramento County. And as a result, the project proponent submitted an application to initiate the benefit category change process, and in response to that application, a ballot and notice were mailed to the property owners on February 9. The project currently consists of 57 parcels in the safety light-only benefit category with an annual assessment of $2.56 per parcel for a total of $145.92. The proposed change is to the enhanced street and safety light non-residential benefit category. The rate of 9.71 cents per foot of public right-of-way frontage will be prorated among the 46 parcels for a charge of approximately $12.62 per parcel, or a total of $580.52 for the entire project. And if there are no questions from the Board, we recommend that the Board open the public hearing, consider any public comment, and close the public hearing, and then direct the clerk to tabulate the protest ballots.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board before we open the public hearing? Okay. With that, I will open the public hearing. At this time, is there any member of the public that would like to address the Board on this item?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay, and seeing no one in the audience, I will close the public hearing. Bring it back to the Board. Is there a motion?
And you can, you need to direct me to tabulate the...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so confident.
There is also one more step after the...
Oh, we have to read it in, yeah, 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 yeah. A little preoccupied with other things this afternoon, thank you.
So we've received one ballot from HBT of Carmichael, parcel numbers 245033001 through 057, site address 4015 through 4110, Porton Lane, and 8200 through 8238, Carmenada Lane, Carmichael, California, and they are in favor of the change.
Okay.
Great. So with that, I'll read in the fill-ins for the resolution. So in Section 2, at the close of the hearing, the Board had received zero written protests. In Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the Board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category, and 0% was in opposition.
Thank you. With that, do we have a motion?
I'll move staff approval to levy increased service charge.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Please vote.
Oops, sorry about that. Unanimous vote. That was fast. Okay, for your next item, 55, this is the Public Hearing on the Annexation of the Wild Hawk Creek Subdivision to County Service Area Number 10, Benefit Zone Number 3.
Good morning. Joe Grassick, still with County Engineering. What we have today is a proposal to annex two parcels into Zone 3 of CSA 10, which is a two-step process. The first step is today's hearing, and the requested resolution, which approves the annexation, approves an amendment to the engineer's report, states the intention to levy service charges, directs the clerk to mail notices and protest ballots, and sets the subsequent public hearing for May 21 at 10:00 a.m. And the May 21 hearing is the second step, which is the ballot process at which the property owner can vote for or against the establishment of the CSA 10 service charges. So these two parcels comprise the Wild Hawk Creek subdivision, which is about 1,600 feet east of Bradshaw Road, south of and adjacent to Gerber Road, and will construct 76 residential lots. The project was required by condition of approval to annex to and participate in CSA 10, so the developer initiated this annexation process in order to move forward with their final map. The project is surrounded by Wild Hawk North Development Area on the east, west, and south, and by the North Vineyard Station specific plan area on the north, all of which are currently within the existing... all of which are currently within the existing boundaries of CSA 10 Zone Three. So as I mentioned, required as part of this annexation is an amendment to the engineer's report, which has been done and is included as an exhibit to the resolution. So with that, I'd like to open it to the board for any questions and public comment before voting on the resolution.
Is there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing and hearing none, any members of the public?
No comments.
Okay. Is there a motion? I'll move staff recommendation. A motion of second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Joe. We'll see you on the 21st.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item 56, receive a second quarter fiscal status report and approve appropriation adjustment requests for various departments.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy, members of the board. My name is Amanda Thomas. I'm the county's chief fiscal officer. And I'm here today to present the Fiscal Year 2023-24 Second Quarter Fiscal Status Report. And before I get started, I just wanted to take a moment to thank all of the department fiscal staff who prepare and submit these fiscal status reports, as well as the analysts in the Office of Budget and Debt Management that review and summarize these so that I can be here before you today giving this report. Okay. So as an overview of the report, I'll be talking about the estimated revenues and expenditures for the current fiscal year 2023-24, which are based on actual data through December 2023 and any other information that was available as of January of this year. Overall, expenditures in most departments are estimated to be lower than budgeted. As I'll discuss later, certain budget units do require an appropriation adjustment to increase or transfer appropriations, but nearly all departments expect to have more than sufficient total appropriations in the budget this year. And then as we look at discretionary revenues, we are estimating those to be slightly higher than budgeted, as I'll discuss in more detail later in the presentation. And this is positive news, but I do want to let you know that we are expecting lower growth in revenues for next fiscal year. So it's not a reduction in revenues, but just a lower rate of growth compared to recent years, despite the fact that we're expecting higher than budgeted revenues this fiscal year. In the general fund, that the combination of those higher revenues and lower expenditures results in an estimated $76 million available fund balance carryforward. And this becomes an available source of financing for the next year's budget. So I'm going to talk more about how that $76 million was calculated. But first, I wanted to show this chart to sort of help put that number in context for you. And this chart is showing us the fund balance available each year going back to 2013-14, with the top of the bar representing the total amount of fund balance. The orange portion showing how much of that was put into reserves. And then the blue portion showing the appropriations in that budget year that were funded with fund balance. So as you look at that, that gray bar, which is representing the $76 million that we're estimating to not be spent this year in fiscal year 2023-24 that would become a one-time source available to fund next year's budget, you can see comparing that gray bar to the, the two bars, you know, immediately to the left of it, that we are looking at an amount that's lower than what we have available in this current year's budget, both when you compare to what we were estimating at this time last year for the June budget and then what that final number ended up being, which is included in the adopted budget for 2023-24. You can also see that that estimate is really continuing the trend that we started to see last year of sort of returning to a more normal kind of pre-pandemic level of fund balance. And you can see historically, that's been in the sort of 50 to $75 million range. So as, as we think about, you know, what that means for next year's budget, I think it really means that there is, there will be less capacity, right, to fund the, both the one-time and the ongoing expenditures that are currently funded with, with fund balance in this year's budget. Which really illustrates, you know, the importance of this concept of structural balance, right? And making sure that we're aligning our ongoing revenues with our ongoing expenditures. I think the other thing to think about is that what is still a pretty sizable fund balance is also an indication that our budgeted appropriations may be overstating our actual expenditure needs. And that's something that we're taking a really close look at as we develop the budget to help bring our 24, 25 budgeted expenditures and make sure they're as reflective as possible of what we actually expect to spend. Okay. So now, sort of turning back to look at this fiscal year and each of the elements that make up that fund balance amount, starting with discretionary revenue. I indicated that we are expecting discretionary revenues to be higher than budgeted. We're estimating about $4 million, about half a percentage point higher than budget in total. Property tax revenues are our largest source of discretionary revenue at about 70% of total. Those we're estimating to be just very slightly higher than budgeted, about 0.1% higher. Our sales and use taxes, which are a smaller percentage of the total at about 17%, are a lot more volatile than our property tax revenue. And we're, we are expecting a bigger variance there at $8 million higher than budgeted. And that's really due to a one-time amount that we expect to receive this fiscal year. And then estimates for other taxes and revenues result in a $5 million reduction compared to budget. And that's largely due to actuels coming in below budget for things like utility user tax and property transfer tax. Semi-discretionary revenue is another large category of funding in the general fund. And that includes our 1991 and 2011 realignment revenues, as well as the Proposition 172 Public Safety Sales Tax Revenue. And so these revenue sources are based on statewide sales tax and vehicle license fee revenue. And they're accounted for in separate funds and then transferred to the general fund to reimburse eligible expenditures. So based on our updated revenue and eligible expenditure estimates for this year, we are estimating those reimbursements into the general fund to be about $16 million lower than budgeted. And this includes $6 million increase related to CalWorks-related reimbursements that really don't have an impact on the use of discretionary resources in the general fund. And then $22 million decrease in other semi-discretionary reimbursements, which is largely due to lower estimated expenditures, right? So we have less coming in as reimbursements because we're estimating the expenditures to be lower. But it does also include a $4 million reduction in the Prop 172 Public Safety Sales Tax Revenue due to lower expected revenues this fiscal year. So looking at the expenditures that are expected to be funded with discretionary and semi-discretionary resources, overall, general fund departmental expenditures are estimated to be out about $270 million or 6.7% below budget. The departmental revenues that offset those expenditures before the use of discretionary or semi-discretionary resources are also estimated to be lower than budget by about $136 million. And then the non-semi-discretionary reimbursements, lower than budget by about $56 million. So the net result of all of that is a $78 million or 3.7% decrease in the net departmental expenditures that are funded with those discretionary and semi-discretionary resources. So this is kind of showing us what the math looks like when we put all of that together. So we have a $4 million increase in discretionary revenue. From that, subtract that $16 million decrease in semi-discretionary reimbursements, add the $78 million decrease in general fund net financing uses, so the things that we're funding with those resources. And that gets us to a $66 million estimate of estimated fund balance as of second quarter. But we also know that that estimate as of the second quarter typically understates what our actual fund balance ends up being. So we're adding in a 15% increase to account for that historical difference between the estimated and the actual fund balance, with the result being that $76 million estimate that we're, we'll be using for the 24, 25 budget.
Excuse me, Amanda. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Amanda, this is helpful to kind of understand the formulaic aspects of this analysis. The question, though, when we're using, applying that 15% increase there at the bottom, is that looking back over just like, is that a mean for several years back, a decade? I mean, how accurate is that a measure of central tendency? I think that's what my stats class taught me.
Sure.
In terms of it being, you know, an accurate adjustment factor?
Sure. So that's a great question. And I will tell you, you know, looking back at sort of the, the last three years when we've had these historically very high fund balance amounts that are largely driven by a lot of things associated with the pandemic, you know, difficulty filling positions, unanticipated revenue sources, delays in projects. You know, we, we saw a couple of years with a much higher variance than that. However, sort of looking at the, the kind of pre-pandemic experience, 15% was, seemed to be a more normal range that we would expect in terms of variance. So that's why we're, we elected to go with that number as opposed to the more recent experience, which is probably not as representative of, you know, kind of a more normal average.
So is, I mean, is that like from 2019 backwards to 2015?
So it was looking at the, the year, the years leading up to. So I think it was the three years sort of leading up to that 2019, 2020 year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. So, so as I mentioned, most of the updated estimates that were, that are prepared as part of the second quarter review, they don't result in adjustments to the current year budget, right? So we don't have appropriation adjustments for all of those changes and estimates. However, there are some cases where an appropriation adjustment is required. And I'm not going to go over each of these adjustments, but I'll just note that those listed under the first bullet are funded either by additional revenue or a budget transfer, so there isn't any impact on the use of discretionary resources in the budget. And it's those that are listed under the second bullet that do impact discretionary resources and actually are resulting in a net increase of about $923,000 to the general fund contingency. So with that, the recommended actions today are to receive the second quarter fiscal status report and to approve those appropriation adjustment requests, which does require a four-fifths vote.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Amanda, for that great presentation. I had some questions on items E, F, and G on the request, the appropriation adjustment request.
Yes.
Those three items have to deal with human assistance. First question is, is the five and a half million related to realignment, is that included in the 15.9 essentially for the item above?
Yes, it is included in the total. And I'll just note that this is that, that sort of CalWorks-related realignment that I spoke to that really can only be used for that program and doesn't have an impact on the use of discretionary resources.
Which was my second question. Thank you for anticipating it. And so then on item G, that is an additional amount of money irrespective of the previous two items?
Correct, yes. Which is funded by additional state and federal revenue.
Okay, and so none of those dollars are discretionary or even semi-discretionary?
Correct. I mean, so, so the realignment, we technically consider to be semi-discretionary, but it's that category that doesn't really impact the use of discretionary resources.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right, any others from the board? Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not. Hang on, let me just double-check.
So Amanda, while she's doing that, did you stop the requests because you ran out of letters?
Yeah, yeah, good point. I think we'll have to implement that next year.
Yeah.
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion? Chair will move?
I will second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Okay, for item 57, this is the updates on county outreach efforts and Florin Safe Stay.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, members of the board. Emily Howkin, the Director of the Department of Homeless Services and Housing. And at your request, I'm bringing you today two informational items for discussion and input. First is an annual summary of outcomes of our multidisciplinary outreach teams working in the unincorporated county as well as within our Parkway system. And the second is a six-month review of the impacts, initial impacts and outcomes of our first Safe Stay community at Florin and Power Inn. And I want to note that we don't do any of this work alone. And so I do have partners here in the audience who I'd welcome to contribute to this. Certainly, Tim Lutz is here, who can add some context around how behavioral health works. And our partners, I'm sure you see in the audience, from Coho, Kelly Scott and Kyle, as well as my staff, Rachel, who oversees all of our work in the field and does an amazing job. Before I dive into the actual reports, which are attached to your, your board item, I did want to note that these reports certainly represent significant efforts and investments from the county, but really are a part of broader, community-wide work that we're doing collectively with many partners to prevent and end homelessness. And to truly understand the impacts of these individual programs, we really need to look at system-level reports that reflect the combined efforts within this continuum of services. And as you may recall, Lisa Bates was here a couple of weeks ago when we discussed the Regional Coordinated Homelessness Action Plan. And she shared with you that SSF has a commitment that by July, they will be having these reports available on a monthly basis. This will allow us to more thoroughly look at not only the key indicators in each program that you fund and that others fund in the community, but also look at their impact across the program types. We'll be able to compare shelters to each other, as well to shelter system as a whole. And also allow us to track how these combined efforts of different programs really work to effectuate outcomes for individual people and different groups of folks. So the Department of Homeless Services and Housing will definitely work to supplement any work that SSF puts out, including data that lives outside of their purview, things around the geography of encampments, funding that we commit, some of the encampment work that we do that really isn't about homeless services. And we really look forward to working with them to ensure that those reports are capturing also information that might be important to you. So as I go through this today, keep in mind that we're, this is a starting point and a building block and would really welcome any input you have on additional information that you'd like to be presented, either in one-time reports like this or that we can lift up to SSF to make sure they incorporate in the system-wide reports. So I'm going to start today with our multidisciplinary outreach efforts over the past calendar year. As you'll recall, about two weeks ago, we were in front of you with a similar report for our multidisciplinary efforts under our partnership agreement with the City of Sacramento. And this is really now looking at the same type of data in the unincorporated county and the Parkway system. A little orientation, because I think this is important in how the outreach efforts that in the county are working. During the past year, we have had, we have 22 full-time equivalent positions contracted through Community Health Works. And last year, we had four behavioral health clinician and peers working alongside them. I do want to note that today, we're up to seven clinicians and peers, but the data reflects the efforts of last year where we had a few, few fewer staff on the clinical side. Important, as we think about outcomes in our outreach, is that all of our outreach work is very, very purposely marked by a commitment to case-carrying. We've used that term in other conversations. Our clients, through successful exits from, from unsheltered homelessness. So that means following them as they may move around, as camps may grow or, or change, as their situations and needs changing, and a commitment to working with them towards whatever the appropriate exit is over oftentimes an extended period of time. Our teams deploy in three primary ways, which are highlighted here. The first is we do have a team that we call the Encampment Services Team. This is our proactive team who are going into county-identified camps. These are often camps that we've identified because they are on a public right-of-way and the Department of Transportation needs to do some construction work. They've been brought to us by your offices or by constituents through 311. These are typically camps that have at least four encampments or four individuals, although we have flexibility there. And the point here is that the teams work typically over a longer period of time in one specific geographic location to try to connect every single individual with, with an outcome. I do want to note that even when the Encampment Services Team leaves a location because that location has changed or it's been saturated, we maintain connection to the individuals there through our community-based teams. So the fact that an area may be designated as an encampment that we're targeting one day and not, does not mean that service connections are lost. We're very, very intentional to make sure that the individuals there can maintain that connection, even as our priorities may change. The second is our Parkway Team. They certainly do a lot of the same services, but they're dedicated within our Parkway system. We have 10 dedicated full-time employees through Coho there. They do both reactive responses and coordination with the Rangers and our other park staff. They also do some proactive work in lone locations. And they do, because the Parkway is so geographically big, they also have some designated, we call them office hours, but known locations where they will be, where people can self-refer and find the navigators themselves and engage at their own, at their own interest. And then finally, especially in the more suburban areas of our community where there aren't very large encampments or often aren't very large encampments, the community-based team or the CBO team is how I think they call themselves. or the CBO team is how I think they call themselves, they've established, again, these office hours in known locations that so the community can make referrals. That might be a business making a referral, or a place of worship making a referral, or even a self-referral from somebody picking up and calling two-on-one and saying, hey, I'm out in Carmichael. We can say, hey, that that team's going to be out at the library next week. Why don't you go check them out? And this is also the place where if our encampment teams are leaving a location, they'll make that direct referral for the continuity of care. So overall, in calendar year of 2023, our outreach teams collectively engaged with 55 encampments and at 16 different consistent locations in this office hour model. And we enrolled almost 1,300 people into outreach services. And I want to underscore that being enrolled in outreach, this means you have already, you've engaged probably many times with the team, you've agreed to services by providing identifying information, and you're on somebody's caseload. So you are assigned to a community health worker on part of their caseload. The depth of engagement in our efforts to do this case-carrying approach, I think, is evident when you look at the number of unique services that are provided by the outreach teams. Almost 35,000 different services in the calendar year, which if you average it out, is about 27 different service touches per client. Obviously, some are a lot more and some are a lot less, but this really shows and demonstrates the intensity of services that we are really trying to to get to people. What this data doesn't show, which I know the board is interested in, is the number of people that the teams attempted to engage but did not agree to services. And as we've discussed previously when I've been here, this is incredibly difficult to capture. I can presume that within those 1,200 people that did enroll, a good number of them on day one were a no, and on day two were a no, but ultimately, through rapport building and engagement, became a yes. However, we are very committed to capturing this information. And I'm happy to report that we have been working with SSF to create a very customized assessment within the homeless management information system to allow the teams to track this. SSF just completed the creation of this the last couple of weeks. The teams are in training right now, and will start launching this tool in the field in the next week or so. So I anticipate, but by the next time that we report to you, probably early in the next fiscal year, we'll have the first couple of months of look back on data about service refusals. And this will also include capturing not just who said no, but why they said no. What type of needs were we not able to meet? What were the outcomes people were expecting and then didn't feel they got? What was the shelter waitlist looked like and at the time they were offered a service? And what kind of barriers were there to accessing services that caused somebody to say no?
Excuse me, Emily. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So I just want to make certain I understand what you're telling us today about perhaps the lack of time that's elapsed or data sets that permit you to tell us today the refusal rate. You're saying that we don't know, of the 1,284, we don't know what percentage that is of the total that were touched, right, or presented services?
Right. And the reason, yeah, the reason, so all of this data, majority of this data comes from the homeless management information system, which requires you to identify yourself, even if you say you're Mickey Mouse, you have to identify yourself. Many of those rapport building and the sort of first touches are pre-identification. So we have to create a whole different assessment tool within HMIS to allow us to try to capture data pre, and HMIS is called a program entry. So while anecdotally, we probably could say we touched as many people, we couldn't then say what subset of that is the people who enrolled, if that makes sense.
But I'm also hearing you, and correct me if I'm wrong, that by when, end of the year, we will have that?
Yeah, so the data has been, the assessment has been established, the teams are being trained in the field. I think they'll start capturing April 1st. So, end of the fiscal year is when I'm, so, starting in July, when we have our first reports from SSF. I do want to say the SSF reports will not include this data field. So we are actively working with DTEC to have a companion piece specifically to outreach. And I'm assured by DTEC, and my team is assured, that we'll be able to put out a companion piece around that same time that SSF puts out their broader system reports. So July-ish.
Okay, that's a good, good note. I would go one step further. I think, of course, the data point or points need to be understood. That means that we need to know what the denominator is, I guess. But, and I do agree with you, we need to know the why. Why are people refusing service? But I would say perhaps equally important is then the challenge to us, what to do about it, right?
Exactly.
So I don't know that the list, the bullet points at the bottom of this slide are intended to be exhaustive. I assume it's not.
They are not.
But for instance, what I haven't seen so far in your presentation is any reference to something as, I don't want to say simple, but important to, we know is important to much of the unsheltered population is that they oftentimes are accompanied by a pet. So I could very well see us perhaps enhancing the availability of some kind of maybe rudimentary, you know, onsite pet services or health assessment of the pets, or something that might be, you know, something that finally encourages someone to say, yes, I'll show up to office hours, right?
I really appreciate that. These are definitely collapsed within HMIS. I think there's probably 20 or 30 or maybe even more distinct services that you can engage people, and these are collapsed. And I think, to your point, some of those nuances can be ferreted out as we look at the more exhaustive list.
And then, Emily, are we, if someone is willing to avail themselves of, you know, attending office hours, or at least getting registered in the system, that they, if they tell someone, a navigator, that, yeah, I have a history of mental health problems or challenges, and yes, I have a history of receiving medication to help manage whatever the issue might be, are we working with our public health folks to do what we can to go so far as to give them a script for, to get them stabilized back on what they're saying they they need? Or does that have, does that involve all kinds of other complications for re-diagnoses and that kind of thing?
So I'm going to say a couple of things and see if Tim wants to add anything either now or later. So yes, we do co-deploy with our behavioral health clinicians, who can do a lot of those connections. We also can support transportation to clinics, you know, whether it be in our own clinic or other clinics. Also, Coho O does a great job at connecting folks with Calain benefits, so that the client doesn't have to go seek out those things. Whether they can fill prescriptions in the field, I don't know that. But we can certainly get that. I mean, I can ping Tim when he comes up in a minute.
Yeah, I only mention that because I think part of the challenge for us is trying to make this as easy as possible for those we're trying to serve, right? We're trying, we're trying to be where they are. We're trying to understand the type and magnitude of service delivery that might inspire their, you know, finally a change of circumstance for them. So, you know, again, not being a very, admittedly knowledgeable on how HIPAA might get involved on something like this, or what state or federal law might say about in-the-field prescriptions. You know, I think we ought to be kind of pushing the envelope on on being innovative and doing what we can in the field.
Good morning, Supervisors. Tim Lutz, Health Services Director. Absolutely. So we have been deploying street medicine teams more often and working with homeless services and the teams recognizing exactly that.
And we're going to have more too, by the way, through One Community Health.
Yes, actually met with them yesterday and having that conversation about coordination, because I think we know the need is there. Right now, mobile prescription is something that we really don't have capacity with with pretty much any of our providers. And I think you bring up a really good point. We've been looking at it. There are some requirements. It's less around HIPAA, more around regulations on any pharmaceuticals, you know, how they're stored, dispensed, tracked, things that we need to work through and conversations that we have been having. And appreciate that input and would agree with you.
Thank you.
And Supervisor, if I could also lift up, we do operate a medical clinic at Loaves and Fishes as well as another opportunity for folks.
Great, thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. And thank you, Supervisor Serna, for all those points. That was a really great discussion. In terms of, so HMIS, it sounds like there needs to be some changes made to really capture and reflect everything we're doing. Is that a difficult process to get that, those changes made?
Well, the changes, it's not changes, it's creating basically a whole set aside assessment tool. And the reason for that is HMIS is set up at the client level, not at the counter level. So in order to capture, we're trying to capture, you have to create a set aside assessment that has been done. So I don't know how hard it was, but it has been done. And now it's training the field teams to utilize that. It creates a little bit of a, you know, you have to now enter two different screens. It's manageable, and it's really important data, and we understand that. But it is, it is somewhat counterintuitive to how HMIS has been set up, which was for completely different reasons than what we're talking about, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
And you'll certainly let us know how we can help in that regard, if there's any issues with that. And I appreciate the discussion about some of the, defining some of the terms, because sometimes it's not intuitive. You know, we had this discussion, I think, in the context of the report back on the two-by-four, that if someone, it says if they're enrolled, that's different from actually participating. And I think, well, if they're enrolled, they're actually in a program, but that's not the case. But you actually also brought up, you said people who are engaged versus people we have attempted to engage. When you say attempted to engage, does that mean that you weren't even able to enter them in HMIS because they wouldn't provide you their information?
Yeah, and I would actually say those, those three things are distinct. So there's attempted to engage, I walked and definitely looked to Kyle and her team to to check me on this. But you walk into an encampment, somebody's going to talk to you. Then you have things where we engage, and they walk into an encampment, and they might want a bottle of water or a granola bar and willing to sort of talk to you, but not yet willing to have their data put into HMIS. Once you're in HMIS, you are enrolled. You are enrolled in an outreach program. Then you might subsequently be enrolled in a shelter program or a housing program. So this, I know it's a little, you think it's Tim, in his world, uses enrollment slightly different. But in the homeless services world, when I say you're enrolled in a program, it means we have your enough identifying information in HMIS to say who you are. We've entered some basic data standards that you have to meet by HUD, and you have a entry date into a program. In this case, that program is street outreach. So as you can imagine, maintenance of data in a street outreach program is much more difficult than in a shelter. Because in a shelter, you're in the bed tonight, you're in the bed tomorrow, I know where you are. In an outreach program, it's a lot more of a nebulous program because people move, right? So you come back tomorrow and they're not there. So sort of at its base, outreach data program is always the most complicated to manage and maintain, and typically the place where we lose clients the most because they're not in a known location.
Okay. Well, that is very helpful. I mean, silly of me to feel like government would be consistent in its use of terminology across all of our different disciplines. But that's, I'm glad you pointed that out. So enrolled in this context is really they're just in HMIS. It may not mean anything beyond that. Is that correct?
In this, sorry, in this case, it means you're, so in HMIS, you can have a client profile, meaning I'm Emily, I'm a woman, I'm this old, this and that. Then you have a second where you can be enrolled in programs. You could be enrolled in a street outreach program. You could be enrolled in a shelter. When I say enrolled here, that means you are enrolled in the Community Health Works outreach program, which means you have an assigned community health worker, you are on somebody's caseload, and you have received at least one service. In HMIS world, if after 90 days, you haven't been retouched, if you haven't engaged again, you on the natural drop off. Your data and who you are remains in HMIS, your profile of your name and identifying information. But your program enrollments can come and go as your status changes.
Okay, okay.
Does that help?
No, that is helpful. And then in terms of the, the team provided the services, and Supervisor Serna was talking about some additional services, when we, when we come and hear the sheriff's hot team officers talk about their own data and offering people services, is there an effort, Emily, to make sure that we're, that they're being consistent with what we consider services as well? Because I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah, so I, what I can say is the sheriffs are not entering HMIS. So I'm not familiar with their data system or how they're collecting it. I know that Mr. Jones has requested some more information. I'm not familiar with how they're collecting that data or the system they're using to manage.
I just think, and I understand they're not using HMIS, obviously, but it would be nice to know that when they're talking about services, they're more or less talking, it's kind of an apples-to-apples, you know, comparison when we're talking about services and someone being offered services. I mean, there's obviously a huge distinction between being offered a water bottle and taking it being, versus being offered a spot in a scattered-type shelter, for instance, right? So, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, sorry. You made it through three slides. That was pretty good.
I think we have like four or five more.
Thank you. And I agree, Chair. I was planning on saving my comments, but we're stopped at a, at a point that's germane to my questions. So the 55 encampments, are those unique visits, or does that represent multiple touches?
Right. They're unique locations. So each of them would have been visited multiple times. So it's physically 55 different geographic locations we've identified.
Okay, I was hoping that was the answer. So thank you. And then I appreciate that you're going to try and provide us with the number of people who were approached and refused service in the future. I think that's a critical piece of information. My question is, do we have a standard protocol or what happens after they say no?
Well, from outreach perspective, saying no today doesn't change what we're going to do tomorrow. We're going to keep on trying to engage. I think others in our community and law enforcement may, may use that information differently, but we wouldn't use that as a reason to cut you off. We would use it as a reason to ask a different way the next day.
Okay. And then my last question on this item is, these are great one-sheet metrics that you provided, those little snapshot pictures. On the outreach page, the number from 25 to 44 and 45 to 61 are the same, about 41%. But then over on the Safe Stay page, and I understand we're going to get into that in more detail, it really becomes skewed towards older individuals. Is that because the acceptance rate into the Safe Stay is a different demographic, say, than the outreach?
Yeah, so we do prioritize shelter beds across the system, not just Safe Stay, based on vulnerability. So it would make sense that those more elderly would have a higher acceptance rates into all shelters.
Okay, thank you.
But I think it is indicative, and it's a good, my next slide, into
Don't go there yet.
Okay, sorry. Into some of the demographic trends that we're seeing, so.
Mr. Villanueva.
I just wanted to respond to Supervisor Serna's question about the assistance with the pets. Last year, you may recall that the board did an investment, and we have our PAWS vehicle out there, which is the, a big trailer to help, a medical unit with Dr. Metcalf attached to it, out three days a week, providing services to those experiencing homelessness. So thank you for that investment, but I did want to bring that up to your attention.
No, I appreciate that. And I know, I've actually seen the PAWS mobile unit out at the Florin Safe Stay. But I was really kind of thinking, since we were talking about the Parkway in the context of the office hours at the Parkway, I hope we're doing the same at the, in the Parkway.
I believe we are. I've talked to our Director Bedsworth, and we're also looking at stationing at some of the core centers also.
Great, thank you.
All right. So one question I have, Emily, on specifically on outreach, is would you say, as some of the, I think, well, you can all stipulate, you're an expert in the field, that the number of encampments reached is not as important as a measure of success as the number of clients accepting services?
100%, yes.
Thank you very much. You may proceed.
Okay, thank you. So this slide shows some very high-level outcomes of our outreach teams. There is a one-pager as well that looks, hopefully looks and feels similar to the one we submitted for the city. But I want to share a little bit more of the data that's not presented here, because it's just a little space and something, but does speak to what I think is the efficacy of the model that we've adopted, which is this deep engagement at fewer locations, but with a lot more intensity. And so first, a little bit about who the clients are that we're serving. Some of this is on the one-pager, but not on the slide here. But as with our homeless population overall, the people we're serving are disproportionately people of color. 49% of those that we are enrolled in the Parkway, and 56% of those in the balance of the county are people of color. The people we're serving, as Supervisor Hume pointed out, are aging. And while I'm, I know the age categories in HMIS of 45-plus may not align with some of us think about as aging, that is the cutoff we have. But what we do know is that 51% of the people we've enrolled in the Parkway are over the age of 45. 55% in the unincorporated county are over the age of 55. And about 11% or 136 of the clients are over the age of 62 and living outside. The people we're serving have also been homeless for a very long time. On the Parkway, the average length of time people have experienced homelessness is six years. And 77% of those would be deemed chronically homeless, which means both having long episodes of homelessness as well as a disabling condition. And in the unincorporated county, the average length of time people have experienced homelessness is four years, and 63% of those are chronically homeless. So these really are folks whose conditions, health conditions, behavioral health conditions are likely exacerbated by the amount of time they're spending outside and vice versa. But despite the high needs of these clients in But despite the high needs of these clients, in a year, as you can see, we exited 350 people out of unsheltered homelessness, including 11% directly into permanent housing. And while that may seem very low, given what I just said, is that these are people have been living outside for six plus years, who are, you know, in many cases, over the age of 50, over the age of 60, with multiple disabling conditions, we think that's pretty tremendous. We obviously want to improve this and we're dedicated to doing that, but that is not, if you were to look across other outreach programs, I think in our region, you might not see that same outcome. And when you look across our different teams, the community-based teams, those ones that have office hours, whether they be in the unincorporated area or in the Parkway, and they do carry the deepest sort of case-carrying approach. They're there to meet you where you're at, people self-refer in. They actually have seen 46% of their clients exit from outreach into either shelter or housing. That's really, really high. I don't think that we'd see any other outreach program working with this level of vulnerable clients doing that. So I think we're doing things the right way. Again, speaking to the level of effort that's needed to meet these outcomes and why we believe this approach is the most effective on the Parkway, the average time from enrolling into the outreach program, so when you're willing to finally give your name and enroll and talk to our folks, to exiting to a positive situation is three months. And on the unincorporated county, it's two months. So it really does speak to not only the depth of service, but the time that we're willing to commit to engage with folks and to carry through and see that positive exit. We also have really great partnerships with our behavioral health colleagues and you can see their efforts have also been impactful. 351 people have enrolled, and sorry for the use of enrollment, in specialty mental health, and 210 have been linked and received services. And Tim, as you know, is here and he can speak to more questions around that if you have any of those. At this point, before I pivot to Florin, I wanted to see if you want me to continue there and ask questions at the end, if you wanted to speak to Coho or ask a question about outreach, whichever you prefer. It's a little awkward.
Why don't you continue? I don't think that we've shown any shyness for interrupting you.
Sounds good. I would worry if you did, so thank you for that. Okay, so as you know, in an effort to provide more diversified options of sheltering, including for those folks that we just talked about living outside, the board has committed to funding and operating safe stay communities as a key part of our homeless strategy. And our first site, as you all well aware, opened and was approved by the board in June of 2022 and opened in August of 2023 at Florin and Power Inn. Subsequent site, and this shows some of the timeline here just for context, while subsequent sites, including our East Parkway site, have ramped up more quickly, this one was our first one. It's also our largest one to date, so we were pretty intentional about the ramp up and the site therefore was not fully occupied until middle of December of 2023. But since then, we've maintained occupancy hovering around 94%. But because of this, while the site has technically been open for six months, we really only have about three months of full operations. Just keep that in mind as we talk through some of the data. Access to the site is currently managed by our staff here at the county, but we do have a commitment and are working towards a transition of that front door to the coordinated access system, as we talked about with Lisa a couple weeks ago. And the county and CityNet, who are our operational partners, have been working with them for quite a while now on the onboarding process. This is especially challenging for, or maybe not challenging, more complex for this program because it both has a background check requirement as well as a geographic preference. We want to make sure that we get it right before we open the doors in the coordinated access system. However, we do anticipate that will happen sometime in the next few months of this year. And what that will effectively mean is that the county will transition that front door from our staff and Coho to the, our community partners through 211 and Sacramento steps forward. But I do want to underscore that even when it transitions to the coordinated access system, there's a commitment to prioritize the designated geography that we committed to when we first approved this project. So this slide simply shows where folks are coming from today. Because we're managing the front door, all of these came from within the two and a half mile radius. And again, when we're transitioning to coordinated access, the referral sources might vary more. For example, I imagine we'll see more individualized self-referrals because people can pick up 211 and call for themselves, but that geographic preference will remain at the two and a half miles. And the red slice of the pie, which is labeled DCR, I apologize for the acronyms, that's the Department of Community Response for the city, those are still within that two and a half mile radius. So we gave the parameter to DCR that because this is right on the border of the city, they could also refer in, and they did make some good, successful referrals. As with our outreach teams, the safe stays are truly serving some of our most vulnerable folks. And you can see here some of the data that speaks to that. You can see the age breakdown again. Again, the racial disparities show up here as it does throughout every single homeless program we have and some of the highlighted data at the bottom. But I also want to lift up a few other things that weren't, didn't fit this slide. We think about 70% of the people who have entered come in with zero income or very close to zero income. So they have a lot of work to do to get to a place where they can afford stable housing on their own. Fifty-nine of the people who entered have experienced homelessness for more, for four or more years. So again, these are the people we talked about earlier with really extensive histories of long-term homelessness. We asked people why, what led to their homelessness, and the most frequent reason people gave at entering the Florin Safe Stay was 33% indicated it was a financial issue, followed by 14% who indicated a loss of job. So really in that same vein, the majority of the people indicate that what led them to homelessness, whether it's been a month or two or two years, is a financial crisis in their own personal life. And then we are working harder to collect data on pets. It is a field in HMIS, but it is not required, so it's difficult. But our own calculations, we think about 34% of the guests enrolled with a pet, almost all of those are dogs. And it's really been a good asset. I know Supervisor Kennedy spent some time there with his pet. It really does make a difference when people are able to come into a shelter with their own pet. So since opening, and this is where the, we only have three months of data, really keep in mind, because this is a place where the longer that we have to collect data and serve people, these outcomes will change. We've only had 57 guests exit the shelter and you can see 24% of those are positive, which of course means that the balance went to somewhere else. A good majority of those are people who we don't necessarily have data at the exit because they sort of came and went really quickly. As the program stabilizes, we're seeing less of that turnover. I will say this is somewhat natural. When a new program opens, there's uncertainty, there's new staff, people are acclimating to what this new thing is. And as we continue to operate and the word spreads throughout the community, I'm confident that this will change and we will get to either exceed, meeting or hopefully exceeding our community standard, which is 42% exits to positive exits. Additionally, I did want to say for those who did exit to a positive destination, the average length of stay that it took them from the time they entered Florin to exiting was 94 days. So it takes about three months of active engagement at the shelter to then create a positive exit. And we only have about three or four months of true data. So again, I'm very confident that we're going to see some substantial changes in the next six months and years to come. Also, again, we're very appreciative of our county behavioral health partnerships. As you know, the HART team, in addition to having their field-based teams, have teams who go into all of our shelters, including our safe stays. And you can see here the connections they've made. Some people came in through the HART team, so were already connected. Some people came unconnected and became connected. And I don't want to speak for the HART team, but I've heard them say this many times before, is that when people are in a known location like a shelter and getting all the other services, food, laundry, a safe place to be, their willingness and ability to engage in a meaningful way in their behavioral health services increases. So again, having their presence there to get people on that path at a shelter is going to be much more successful. Finally, as I alluded to in the last slide, we are already working with CityNet and other partners to ensure some continued improvements in our outcomes here at Florin as well as our other sites. As I said, we anticipate the site to be connected into coordinated access shortly. And we're also working to incorporate some more county rehousing programs, specifically allowing more referrals directly from our shelter providers in addition to coordinated access, so that the shelter operator can call up our rehousing program, say, somebody here is ready for housing, let's do the assessment right here on site and get your rehousing staff there to get them connected. We're also working to increase community-based partnerships to connect folks with critical services. As David alluded to, we've already had our animal care clinic onsite multiple times. We've also had a dental care clinic. Our healthcare partners, as Tim alluded to, the street medicine folks come by rather frequently, and we're looking forward to adding more services such as employment and educational services amongst others. That concludes my comments. I'm happy to answer any questions. I also welcome, if you'd like, to have Kelly, Scott or Kyle from Coho share anything that you might, questions you might have for them.
I would like to hear from Coho, but we do have a couple of questions.
Great.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Thank you, Emily, for the presentation. I didn't see anything in the slide presentation or here you mentioned, any data points around folks abiding by the rules of safe stay versus those that were given perhaps multiple warnings or left with their own volition. So what can you tell us about that part of the story?
Yeah, so we have had a few exits. I can get the data. I don't have the tip of my fingers of people for program violations. I would say it's rare, more, it's more the exception than the rule. Most folks are given a lot of latitude and once they come in, they want to stay in. I can get that data. And I should, I should have noted that in addition to this one-time look we did at Florin, we're doing it at all the other shelter programs as well, in part for preparation for budget, but also because I think we want to be able to say, how does this compare and contrast? But I can get you that. I think it's a very small handful, but I can get you that exact number.
And are those sets of rules that which are going to be presumably universal for all of our safe stays as they, you know, develop, are those rules consistent with any of the shelters that DCR or City is standing at?
That's a great question. So yeah, so we strive to have all of our shelters have consistent rules. And one of the conversations we had here today was about the community standards that Supervisor Hume and others asked about. We are right now looking across all of our contracts, both for consistency across them, but also looking to see where the community standards may differentiate. I know DCR is doing that exercise too. I haven't yet seen the results of theirs. I'm, you know, I would, I would, I would expect that there's not large discrepancies, but it's certainly something we need to know about because you're right, as people are entering through coordinated entry, if you get something different at one shelter versus another, we should expect different outcomes.
Right. And then lastly, what can you say at this point about the surrounding community, especially those individuals, organizations that expressed a great deal of concern back in June of 2022 in these chambers and, you know, their desire to see it succeed, but I think it's fair to say they were extremely skeptical, some were very skeptical.
I agree. And Supervisor Kennedy may want to add to this. I can say, I'm very happy to say I don't hear from them a lot, which means that things are going pretty well. As a matter of fact, members of the church across the street who were very active are members of our community council and have said, have expressed their appreciation for how well the site is running. I don't know if you've heard other things.
And have actually even said and shared their positive experience, because if you go down, as I'm sure Supervisor Serna does, as I do, since we go to split the street, if you go down Florin Road, the difference is palpable. I mean, it's amazing. I mean, Sunday, there wasn't a single tent. But they've also gone as far as to speak with others in future areas where there will be tiny home projects and spoken very positive about the experience.
And I'm hoping that we're formally or otherwise communicating these successes to especially Old Town Florin society.
Yeah, they are also on the community council. We haven't met in a couple months, so we're looking to restart that group. We went through a process with the county council, as you might recall, to establish some more formality, but they are a part of those community councils, so they get all these reports as well.
Okay. Well, I know for a fact that some active members, even in that organization, I think it's fair to say jump to conclusions about guilty parties that commit acts of vandalism and other assumptions. And so I just want to make sure that we don't let those assumptions, if they're not, you know, instances that can be cooperated in terms of who may have committed what, don't find traction and, you know, myths start developing about what the safe stay is and isn't. We really need to keep tabs on that so that that doesn't occur.
I agree. Thank you.
Thanks.
And Supervisor Serna, I'm well aware of what you're talking about, totally agree with you. I will say that at a public meeting recently, the Sheriff's Department, you know, was very emphatic in saying that since the safe stay community has been there, there's been absolutely zero uptick in any crime in the area, regardless of what some people are saying. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. And I'll just piggyback off some of that. I think it's, it's great. I mean, we'll hear from naysayers that will say, oh, this is just such a, it's a drop in the bucket, it's not making a difference, but this is the right approach. And I think, I think you've been doing an outstanding job, Emily, with this Florin Road site. And I've been down there myself multiple times and actually talked to the donut place, Richards Donuts, I believe it's called. And, and they've even said it's been an improvement down there. It's, it's great, I think, this approach that we're taking. And I, and I would like to know the names of those, those folks who have volunteered to kind of be an ambassador, to talk to other members in the community who have some trepidation. I mean, obviously, what's going to, what we're going to be seeing on Stockton Boulevard and Wad Avenue, and I think that'd be really important to see if we can get them engaged with members of the community who are worried as we move forward with Wad Avenue. And I, I imagine, I mean, obviously, we're going to be incorporating a lot of these same elements into Wad Avenue, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The same operator, so I think, you know, they'll have a lot of experience under their belt by the time Wad opens, for sure.
And I know Wad obviously is a little different because we have a set aside for city, a number of those beds designated for the city, so it'll probably be obviously a little different arrangement in terms of referrals and things like that. My question is, and I know Supervisor Kennedy said he would like to hear from Coho. I thank you for being here today and I'm out there a lot in my community, talking to a lot of folks, a lot of business owners, obviously the Sheriff's homeless outreach team. I wonder if you wouldn't mind maybe commenting about how that relationship is going with the Sheriff's Department? I mean, obviously, in the unincorporated area, of course, it's a different dynamic, the way we do things. I've been hearing very, very positive feedback from them. I, so would you mind maybe coming and-
Supervisor, before we jump to them, can I just ask a question of Emily quickly? Thank you, Emily.
Supervisor Hume. With the chairs, you know.
My apologies. Thank you, Chair. First of all, again, thank you for the snap sheet. You know, as much as I rail against Housing First, to me, this is a solution that, that really is, is how things can work better. And I'm hoping that the positive exits number will increase over time with more data because once they're in the safe stay, that was the first hurdle. They have accepted help at that point, you know, at least the beginning of it. And so my question is, and this kind of relates to the question that Supervisor Serna asked, is it to be interpreted that the other 76% of residents did not have a positive exit or some of those people still there and haven't exited at all? And of the 76%, because this refers only to housing, did they not enroll in any program or take part in any additional assistance?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So the percentage is only of those who exited, so the people who remain there today have been taken out of the equation altogether. So I did look at that because I figured you, so what it is, about 31, 31% did exit back to homelessness. That probably is self-selected. Most of those are, the balance of them unfortunately is, is data related. We don't have an exit interview. So it's difficult to, and this is an improvement we are working on with CityNet. They could have exited on their own and then gone back to mom or dad's house. So that is definitely a data point that we are hammering in to get better because unknowns, you can, you know, we could assume really bad exits are really good. So we don't know exactly. I would say that that is a common issue we have with some, not just in the shelter, but in other shelters where people, especially at the front end, when you're in for a day, you know, this isn't for me, and you walk away type of thing. So one of the things I would like to do with the help of DTEC is sort of look at, what I suspect is you might have like a bell curve of like a lot of exits in the first day or two, and then as you stay longer, your exit rate's going to improve. And then as you stay a really long time and kind of settle in, you also might have bad exits, right? That's sort of what I can picture this as, and we don't have enough data to trend that over time, if that makes sense.
That does make sense. Thank you for the answer. Thank you for the indulgence.
Thank you.[1734.86] Thank you. Scott or Kelly?
And while Kelly's walking down here, Emily, I think on that point, you know, an exit interview would be great. I understand, I mean, just logistically difficult to do that, but maybe getting some anecdotal information from the operator about what they know about why the person may have left.
We can certainly do that. And I should say, it is a data standard to do an exit interview, but obviously, people don't want to engage. They don't have to. So it's both, you know, making sure we're doing our job to collect data. And also, if people say, go pound sand, I'm walking away. That's what happens.
Kohiwo.
Good morning, Scott.
Good morning. Yeah, I'm Scott Young. I'm the Director of Street Outreach with Community Health Works. And I'm certainly here to answer questions. Also, if given the opportunity, I would just like to also offer maybe some context of what we've been talking about this morning and just with some, you know, highlight some successes that we've had and things like that.
Absolutely, please.
Yeah, I know there's certainly been the discussion of service refusals. And as Emily pointed out, I think it's not always as easy as a yes or a no. It's not always clear-cut that way in that, you know, a no today can often mean a yes down the road. And I think our outreach workers, you know, have a tenacious style of outreach that they're really waiting for the yes as much as they can. You know, I think we do a good job of offering those options for people that, as Supervisor Serna said, inspire people, you know, to want to change their circumstances. One of our community health workers, which is what we call our navigators, Gehenna Gersh, you know, she just is one of these people that I think embodies a real tenacious approach to outreach. And just, I remember one time when she came into my office and was really excited because she'd been working with somebody on the parkway for seven months. And that person finally, after saying no for seven months, had finally said, you know what, I'd like to go and get my CalFresh card with you today. And again, it was a win, not a huge win, but it was a win. It was somebody who went from that saying no for seven months to saying yes on that given day. And, you know, I want to, part of, another thing I want to highlight in terms of successes too, is I think our collaboration with CalAim. And this is just a little anecdotal story, again, with Gehenna. She'd been working on the parkway with somebody for a long time and got that person enrolled in CalAim, was able to transfer that person to a CalAim caseworker who, over a period of time, was able to get that person permanently housed. That was actually a month ago in February. And that person was 72 years old, had spent over 50 years of his life living and experiencing homelessness. And a lot of that, you know, probably decades of that was on our American River Parkway. Just, you know, I think it's, I think that part of it too, that our ability to work with CalAim and to expand the number of caseworkers that we're working with is going to be extremely successful. I did bring a few statistics. Our outreach team were really committed to doing those CalAim referrals. We have one outreach team that is really, that is kind of their primary goal. It's being funded by the Managed Care Plans. And just in the three, the first three weeks of March, so March 1st through March 21st, our teams did 145 referrals to CalAim. So that's 145 individuals that are being referred to CalAim, who will now have a CalAim caseworker. So that is, again, expanding our ability to serve people in all the areas that we serve. So it's not just our 43 community health workers that are out there doing outreach, street outreach, but now we have CalAim caseworkers as well that are able to intercede with people and, you know, continue the work that we began in outreach, looking towards a positive solution to people, for people. Just three quick, you know, I just thought this was timely in talking about success stories because just last week, we had three of the people we've been working with that were able to find permanent housing through family reunification. And that's when we're able to get people back home, back to a family member that they can stabilize and live with. On Monday of last week, we had our first one of those. Our CHWs met this 38-year-old man at Sutter's Landing on the American River Parkway. We helped him get into the A Street Shelter. And then finally, back to Texas where he was originally from. And a friend, he's, you know, we were able to connect when he was in the shelter. We were able to connect with a family friend of his who was kind of strangely his former babysitter and that, you know, that knew him very well and offered to take him in while he was looking for a job and for housing back in Texas. So on Monday, he flew back there. On Tuesday, we got a woman back to Georgia. This was a 63-year-old woman with two chihuahuas who had some seriously debilitating medical issues. And we were able to get her into a shelter and stabilized for a couple of months where she could get the necessary care that she needed. While we were there, we were in contact with her daughter in Georgia. And again, on Tuesday, we were able to fly her and her two chihuahuas home to live with her daughter and her grandchildren in Georgia. And then on Wednesday, it doesn't usually happen this way, but we just happened to have these three last week in succession. We had a reunification with somebody that our CBO or Community-Based Outreach Team had met in the Rio Linda area. He was a middle-aged amputee. He'd recently had all of his belongings stolen, including his car, which had his prosthetic leg in it. We were able to get him into a motel for a couple of weeks to help stabilize. And then while he was in the motel, we worked out details with his brother in Tennessee. So on Wednesday, he and his service dog and his wheelchair all flew home to Tennessee. So, you know, these are just, I know we talk a lot about statistics and we talk a lot about, you know, the people who say no versus the people who say yes. These are some of the people who said yes that, you know, through the work of our team have had successful outcomes.
I want to thank you for that. And Fergus also thanks you. But the, I just want to make it perfectly clear to people in the public that all of these efforts are done to identify somebody whose home, somebody who, wherever they came from, who is willing to work with them to take them in. And that we are in no way just putting people on planes and saying bye-bye. And that we don't, no one gets on a plane or a bus until we, unless we know that at the other end of that trip, there's somebody there to receive them. That's correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Great. Thank you. Great work. Supervisor Desmond.
Yeah, thanks for making that point because I bet some other jurisdictions couldn't say the same thing, from what I've heard. Scott, thank you for the work you do. I mean, honestly, I've learned a lot from you. I really appreciate our relationship and hopefully, you know, I mean, you spend a lot of time in District 3, just by virtue of the geography of the district. I'm curious, what, you know, describe how your relationship is now with working with the hot team, working with the Park Rangers. What I hear, at least from them and in some of our discussions, is that it's very good. And I think that it could certainly be improved, I'm sure. But I think what the beauty of it has been is they've learned a lot from you. They learn a lot from the outreach workers who are out there. These deputies do, these officers do. There's a lot of power in that. I very much believe that. Can you describe how that coordination is going?
Sure. Yeah, we've, our relationship with the hot team, you know, has evolved. It was, the hot team was a little bit different as we knew, like prior to COVID. There's been a lot of change, really a whole new staff of deputies now that are part of the hot team. And there's a new sergeant as well that has seen that. But we've, I think one of the things that has really changed is that we've, you know, we've been intentional about meeting in person so that our team and their team are able to interact, ask questions, get to know one another, understand what it is that we do, and understand that, you know, we would, we welcome their referring people to us, giving, you know, calling us, getting us out into some of the, dealing with some of the more vulnerable people they encounter on the streets. So I think that's been, been very successful. And I think it's getting better as we're getting to, you know, know each other more. Our relationship with the Park Rangers is really, has been excellent. We've been working with them now for the last year and a half since that American River Parkway contract began. And again, we meet with them somewhat regularly. Within the last month, we had a meeting at our office with probably about 18 of the Park Rangers that came and met with our entire parkway staff. And yeah, they, they have our number on speed dial likewise. And, you know, they call us. I would say every day we hear from the Park Rangers, every day we see them because when we're out doing outreach on the parkway, they're there as well. So they've been, it's been a positive partnership for sure.
Okay, thank you. And I think, you know, I, us in terms of our unincorporated constituents, I mean, oftentimes, the call goes to the Sheriff's Department and they're, they show up. And I tell them all the time, I said, hey, how can I connect you to be working better with our Kohiwo teams? And so I say the same thing to you. If there's a way I can help improve that relationship in terms of the Sheriff's Hot Team, you know, working with your teams to produce better outcomes. That's what we want. I mean, we obviously want someone to take advantage of a resource, a shelter or behavioral health resource and change the arc of their lives. My, you know, something we've been talking about with staff, actually Supervisor Hume and I have been talking about with staff is that sometimes, and it's not, it's not a majority, it's probably a very small number of people who, despite a lot of these very intensive outreach efforts again and again and again, still refuse to probably even enroll, even engage with you, and certainly refuse to take advantage of services being offered to them. And I think this is something that everybody, most of us on this dais have expressed frustration with that. And we've had a lot of discussions about, okay, we've got to certainly make sure that our outreach is intense. And it may take a lot of touches before someone wants to enroll. But I'm talking about the, I think the relatively low number of individuals who just won't do it. And there's, we struggle with leveraging these people to take advantage of services. And we don't want to have, take just exclusively a law enforcement type approach to them and where they're camping. I think a lot of jurisdictions are wrestling with this issue. San Diego, the city of San Diego passed an ordinance recently that essentially says camping on public property is banned in general, anywhere, if an alternative shelter has been offered. I believe that San Mateo County has passed one. I think in a discussion we had just yesterday with staff, the legislature is actually looking at something like this. And I know a lot of other jurisdictions are looking at this. Supervisor Hume and I have had discussions with the Sheriff Cooper and District Attorney Ho and County Exec and County staff here. And it is my intent, and I believe Supervisor Hume as well, to at some point bring something to the board for consideration that would essentially accomplish this, where we are dealing with someone who is refusing services despite all of these efforts that we've made and they're causing issues, disruption in a community. If they're offered shelter, there has to be a consequence if they don't take it. We have put an obligation on ourselves here and certainly in the county to do a lot to bring on more capacity for people. And at some point, I think people who are living on shelter in the community have an obligation to take some of these services that are being offered. Right now, there's a lot of unanswered questions about how something like this might work from a resource perspective, just logistically. And we're having some of these discussions. So what I'd like to do today is direct staff to look at the other ordinances that have been passed in these other jurisdictions. Supervisor Hume and I talked to a city council member from San Diego. And I've also, I've also had spoken indirectly with Mayor Gloria from San Diego about the success they've seen with that ordinance. So I think it's, there's a lot of value in looking at who has passed an ordinance and how it's working, what they had to put in place to make sure it's effective to reach, again, that I think limited segment of the homeless population that is refusing services again and again and again, despite our efforts. So I'd like to make that direction of staff today. I think at some point, it would be worth a while to maybe take a trip down to San Diego to see what they've done, see, you know, on the ground, what they've implemented to make this ordinance successful for them and how we can learn from that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm seeing no one else from the board. Yes.
Thank you, Scott. Hi, everyone. I just wanted to add two very brief things. My name is Kyle Stefano. I'm VP of Clinical Programs at Community Health Works. And just your question about the relationship with the sheriffs, I also wanted to highlight that in addition to what Scott said about the sheriffs and working with the Rangers, we're also connecting with Dr. Khan. And I know he's presented to you all about the APOT from the APOT Summit. And I know I spoke to Supervisor Hume after Dr. Khan invited us to present there too. And ever since that meeting in February, I've been contacted with, by so many folks from EMS and fire departments that I can't even really keep track of what, where they're all located. But we're starting to take meetings with them to see if we can capture some of the folks that are using the EMS and 911 response systems sort of inappropriately. So if we can intervene to connect in that way, I think that's important to highlight. And just one additional thing I wanted to say, when Emily was showing the statistics of the permanent housing placements that we've been making, and even though they might seem low, when you just look at the numbers, we're very proud of them because there's so many obstacles to housing people permanently in the community. And even just this month, we heard SHRA has made a change that they're no longer extending the vouchers. So as you guys probably know, when people get issued a housing choice voucher or an emergency housing voucher, you get about 90, or in some cases, 120 days to find placement in the community with that voucher. And before, SHRA used to just extend, allow us to extend those if we hadn't found housing for people yet. And they've made a policy change where you can only do one extension now, which is going to be another barrier for us to try to house folks in the community. So I don't want to come in with doom and gloom, but those, I think that that's just an instance of the systemic barriers that we face and we still continue to make placements. So I see your eyes perking up. Supervisor Desmond.
Supervisor Desmond.
Well, I'm just, is that, and I remember, is, refresh my memory, is that a, is that a policy decision by SHRA or is that a, I'm looking at Siobhan now. Can you please remind me about that?
Yes. And I can just say, we don't have all the information about it yet. We are meeting with SHRA on Friday to get more details, but it is a policy decision based on funding, as I understand it.
But certainly not voted on by the JPA that is supposedly run. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Supervisor Hume.
Supervisor Frost had her name up there. Did you get?
Actually, Supervisor Desmond's question related to mine.
Great, thank you. I just want to congratulate you on the interface you've been having with EMS as a result of that APOT summit. I think that is obviously, you know, a good opportunity where an individual has shown vulnerability and that they've sought care for whatever reason for, to expand that conversation into getting them to accept further assistance. And then I just want to echo the comments of Supervisor Desmond relative to his request and say absolutely I support staff working on this. And the language we've been discussing is essentially an amendment to our critical infrastructure ordinance. And again, it's geared primarily to people who aren't just resistant, but almost defiant in accepting help and trying to get them to that yes. And so I look forward to that discussion as it comes forward. But thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
Do not.
Okay. I wanted to also point out and kind of echo what Supervisor Hume said. We're doing so much better at putting forward information that, well, I wouldn't even say the general public, that I can understand. And so, you know, the report, these documents, some talking points that were recently given to me, spot on as far as making the message not so bureaucratic, but more, this is what we're doing. And so I want to thank staff for that. And also thank you for just coming back with this comprehensive report on the safe stay. I know that you would have preferred to wait another three months because of the short period of time. But I think it's important that the public hear this. The numbers aren't complete, but they're very hopeful in my mind. So thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item 58 is the Community Services Agency Biennial Report Regarding Development Review Process Improvements.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. Dave DeFanti, Deputy County Executive of Community Services. I'm going to do a quick introduction here and then turn it over to a couple of our staff. So as your board is well aware, we launched an effort about a year and a half ago to improve our land development-related processes, customer service, and culture, with our goal being a fairly straightforward one, although lofty, and that's to be the best place to build in the region. And I'll add on to that, also to be the best place to do business and the best place to work in the region. So we're addressing all of those at the same time. This is obviously a major priority for your board, for the County Executive Office, for the related departments, and certainly for me as the representative, maybe most directly pushing this initiative forward. So last February, your board adopted a resolution, which you'll recall, that speaks to what you believe is necessary and important about process improvements and changing the way we do business. And that resolution speaks to the housing supply and affordability crisis, which frankly, has even deepened over the last year, with interest rates moving and some of the other challenges that we're seeing, the need to reinvest in our existing communities, including our older commercial corridors that we're targeting and have actually had some recent success on, as you've seen, landing some pretty significant grant dollars for North Watt, and then also to address climate change. It speaks to what you believe to be good processes and good customer service and what that looks like in your mind. And then it finally directs staff to come back every six months with a progress report on how we're on how we're doing and what we're looking forward to in the near future. So that's what we're here to do today. So for the last year and a half, staff from multiple departments have been working very heavily on a host of different initiatives. Attached to your staff report is a table that might look familiar to you. That's something we've delivered to the board in the past. That illustrates all the different things that we're working on. I'm certainly not going to go through that in any detail today, but certainly happy to, uh, answer any questions or elaborate as you see fit. In the interest of time, your, our presentation today is going to take a little bit different shape. We're going to highlight a few different things in sort of a case study model to show what we've done and the outcomes of those efforts. So the, the key themes we wanted to hit on today are staffing and partnership, and we have a few staff, again, today to provide very brief presentations to highlight those initiatives. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Cameron Shu. He is an absolute rock star in transportation, and I'll tell you, I get a lot of feedback on staff generally, uh, much of which is extremely positive. I'll tell you, I get tremendously positive feedback about Cameron. I have never heard a bad thing said about you, which is stunning.
What's your secret?
Stunning. Teach me.
Don't run for office.
Yes. So he's going to kick it off for us today.
Cameron Shu, Principal Civil Engineer with the Department of Transportation. So I have the pleasure today of sharing a couple of success stories coming out of this development review process improvements. The first one being on the staffing side. So one of the most impactful and pressing issues that came out of the Ray Carriage Report was filling vacancies that we had to ensure adequate staffing levels. This wasn't a surprise to us, but the government hiring process can certainly be a challenge, competing with the private sector for candidates. But we were able to partner with Personnel Services and do a DOT-specific job fair to speed up the process and improve the candidate experience while still working within the bounds of the civil service rules. So in advance of the fair, we mailed out about 18,000 postcards to registered engineers throughout Northern California, and candidates that applied in advance online, we're able to, um, interview and potentially have same-day offers put out. Walk-ins to our job fair, we were provided with assistance through the hiring process, and personnel, um, worked with us to create special cutoff dates aligned with the job fair, and committed to turning around candidate rankings within one week, so we're able to schedule interviews and follow-up very quickly. The outcome of this was a resounding success, with us able to fill 10 vacancies. And in addition to those vacancies, we created and filled three development-specific positions at the senior and principal level. Uh, so the result of all this is, the first, for the first time in the last few years, our backlog has been going down instead of up. We're able to process and close out about 425 planning applications and entitlements last year, anticipate further decreases to our review time in 2024. And following up on, um, the success of that job fair, I understand the county has another countywide job fair in progress. I'd love Dave to add anything on that.
Yeah, um, you know, obviously, it's, it'll be a budget consideration moving forward, but we are, Sylvester and friends, including all of us, are looking at sort of teeing off the success we've had here, which was absolutely resounding, to fill all of those vacancies in literally, essentially a day's time, um, with a lot of pre-work that led up to it was just fantastic, and we are looking at doing something more countywide here, hopefully in the fall if all the stars align.
Supervisor Serna.
Yeah, sorry. So with regard to the positions, though, the previous slide showed engineers, interns. What about, maybe it's going to be a different part of the presentation, but I continue to, to note that I think we're still woefully understaffed in planning. I assume building, um, has a shortfall in terms of, um, plan checkers or inspectors. So when I, when I see these numbers, um, what, how are we supposed to interpret this? Is this just one subset of the development review process? And, and what's the order of magnitude that we have in terms of the vacancies across everything it takes to get something, uh, planned and constructed?
Yeah, so you're right in pointing out that we do have some pretty significant vacancy issues in planning. We've done actually a pretty tremendous job at filling vacancies in building, but we also have a number of vacancies in water resources. So part of our calculation is, you know, it's no small feat to set something like this up, although very successful, it is incredibly time and resource intensive. So we're, we're looking at, rather than maybe doing a number of one-offs, doing something more comprehensive that will address, uh, planning, water resources, et cetera, in sort of one fell swoop. And also then, you know, doing a lot more engagement with our, um, local colleges to try to get people that are, you know, imminently going to be graduating, interested in county government, and how we message the benefits of working for a county government. You know, oftentimes, what we're seeing is people that are very interested in sort of the salary line item, but not necessarily understanding the benefit package that comes with working in the public sector, so getting better messaging out around those things. I would say, you know, that the market that I've seen, that the employee market has shifted a bit over the last six months, it's been a bit easier to be recruiting and landing good folks, but we're still, you know, in a tough way in some of our, uh, you know, niche, uh, functions within the development review process.
Thank you. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Just to kind of follow up on that question, do we have a baseline or a benchmark, uh, sort of pre-initiative, uh, outcomes that we can measure against to see how well, uh, this effort is, is being received?
Uh, generally, or as it relates to vacancies?
Uh, generally.
So we did do, um, a, a poll last summer of our customers, so we do have some general baseline, and we'll be doing something again this summer to follow up on that. A lot of the feedback we're getting is anecdotal, and I'm, I'm sure you get it as well. I would hope some of that anecdotal evidence is less calls coming to your office. I'm, I'm hoping you're seeing and feeling that. Maybe not all of you. You know, I, I am actually getting less calls and emails coming to me, which is a very good sign that things are being handled at the staff level. I think your message by way of that resolution, empowering staff to be creative, make decisions, take some level of appropriate risk, and providing some top cover if things go wrong, which they do when you take risks, right? Sometimes they don't pan out. That has been very powerful, and we, we go back to that resolution and the language in that resolution very often to help try to, again, empower staff to make decisions even when it's not comfortable, right? But I am seeing it, I'm hearing a lot of positive feedback from our customers. I will say, there will always be some level of project-related issue, right? Where there are board-adopted codes, standards, ordinances, et cetera, that we are working to implement that don't jive with what somebody's trying to do on a piece of property. And, you know, sneak preview, in my outro to this presentation, I'm going to touch on a board workshop we have scheduled for April 10th, where we're going to be asking you how comfortable you might be knocking down some of those barriers. Because no matter how perfect our processes are, um, we can only address what's in our sphere of control, and things like the zoning code, county code, really, that's in your sphere of control. So we're going to have a series of questions for you, and hopefully a really good discussion at that workshop to talk about knocking down some of those additional barriers.
Supervisor Desmond.
And I was going to bring this up at the end, but it just kind of piggyback off Supervisor Hume, Dave, is, I mean, thank you, the, the word is certainly getting out mostly among the, the larger, I think, customers. There's still a lot of the smaller, kind of more boutiquey-type customers that are just now starting to hear about this. So I think we have to continue to be relentless in terms of the messaging and reaching out to them. So I just want to make sure we don't take our foot off the gas pedal when it comes to some of these others, and you, you know, some of the ones I'm talking about, I brought them to you directly, so.
Yeah, and, and on that front, we are, um, ramping up our efforts to do more external messaging. So we launched a few months ago an external quarterly newsletter that's going out. So we sent the first one out about three months ago, the next one should be going out probably this week, um, to, you know, thousands of customers to get the word out as to the good work we're doing here. So, and, you know, we've talked about this a little bit in the past, you know, I want to get better at getting information to all of you, that you can then put in your newsletters out to your constituents. So as we have some of the successes that we're going to highlight today, we'd like to get that, you know, to you, so then you can help message that out as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so then the second story I'm going to talk about is some of the partnerships that we've been doing with our development customers. So as the board has heard from me numerous times in the last few years about transportation mitigation strategies and triggers, um, one of the big challenges we have with development, especially in the vineyard area in Alberta, are basically timing or financial constraints imposed by conditions of approval for roadway improvements. Um, in response to that, the board did endorse a couple of key strategies that we've been employing throughout 2023 to help address these challenges. So the first one was to evaluate roadway needs in the context of today's traffic volumes versus a old 20-year-old traffic study that, uh, may not be applicable still, and we're able to use that to defer a number of improvements that aren't needed yet, um, which reduces immediate development costs. When projects are needed immediately, we're able to partner with development in delivering those improvements through roadway implementation agreements, um, where, um, private funding, either through the roadway fee programs, um, or developers just writing us a check, and, and DOT is able to design and deliver a lot of these improvements that are needed. And even though, um, they're still paying for the projects, um, customers have found that the benefit to them is it removes a lot of risk related to their project in terms of timing and provides more certainty. They know they're less likely to get held up on any permits or occupancies if the county's controlling the delivery process, and oftentimes an off-site right-of-way acquisition is needed. We're often in a better position to be able to acquire that right-of-way for roadway projects. So with that, um, similar to DOT, DWR has also been proactively partnering with development, and I think, um, they're going to be up here to share some of their experience. Unless there's any more questions about the development partnerships.
Thank you, Cameron. We have nothing negative to say about you.
Your streak continues. Well done.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. Amitaj Thandi, Principal Civil Engineer with the Department of Water Resources. Today, I'm going to provide an update on drainage development review process improvements. DWR staff has been working diligently with the development partners to update and streamline our development review processes. It's my first time up here, so I'm going to try to figure out how to work this, this one? Okay. Are you good? Okay. Yep, thank you. So staff has worked collaboratively with, like I said, the development industry partners. Here are some of the, uh, updates or improvements that have been made in our development review process. So staff created a drainage study scoping process to help promote early coordination. One of the things we've heard early on from the development community is the coordination between our staff and the development community. So we created this development study scoping process to promote that early coordination. Staff also created a parallel review process to allow for concurrent review of drainage studies and improvement plans. Staff updated the drainage plant submittal take-in checklist, basically to better organize and present our submit, submittal requirements, and also simplify some of those processes. Uh, staff also updated the drainage study submittal requirements document. This was done to streamline the document itself and remove a lot of redundancy in the document. By updating the county processes and adding some additional staff, numerous improvements have been made to the development review process. And I want to take a minute to thank a DWR development review staff on continuing to work with our development community and our partners to streamline that process. Also, um, our colleagues in the building department have updated some of their, um, building permit processes, and Greg Mahoney is here with us today to highlight one of the success, success stories, um, for one of the affordable housing projects in the county. So if there's no further questions, we'll hand it over to Greg.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. Greg Mahoney, Chief Building Official. And I'm going to talk about Affordable Housing Project, Cornerstone. This is a mutual housing project that included, um, mutual housing community that included both apartments and, um, single-family dwellings. So this is a fairly large project. It, um, BPI processed 66 building permit applications, and, um, it, uh, during the construction process, Mutual Housing approached the county and expressed some concerns about the way their project was going specifically. They were looking at a projected $4 million budget shortfall due to, um, construction timing issues and rising interest costs. So Dave DeFonte set up a meeting with the county, county staff and Mutual Housing, and they were able to communicate to us some of the problems they're experiencing and, and make some suggestions about how we could help them with that. County made some commitments, and, uh, some of the things that we did, we provided expedited plan review. Oftentimes, um, we were able to turn over, um, plan review applications in five days on rechecks, and even down towards crunch time, we were, we're doing same, same-day turnaround just to keep them moving. We were able to offer them, uh, partial inspections to keep their project moving, um, after-hours inspections, and really, our, our team kind of came together with, um, CMID and SAC Metro and BPI, doing proactive inspections, going out there every day, sometimes multiple times a day, just so that there were no surprises, um, at the end of the project. And with all of us kind of pushing in the same direction, we were able to reduce that $4 million projected shortfall to $2 million, so we were able to cut it in half. I would say that the real, um, success, though, is that we, we were able to get 108 new affordable units, um, online, with 16, um, provided for those who were, um, formerly unhoused, and there was an additional 18 homes, single-family dwellings that were developed by Habitat for Humanity. Um, and just a couple of comments that Mutual Housing made about, um, county staff. They were sensible and pragmatic, and the result is qualified occupancy for the entire project for an extra one to two months, a tax credit value of over $375,000. Throughout the process, all the staff below acted as true public servants, and, um, I think this is, success really comes down to the, um, culture change that was introduced by the county exec's office and supported by the board, and, and something that, um, all of staff bought into. So with that, I'll hand it over to Dave. Thank you.
Before you sit down, I, I also want to expand that, I'm very happy you used Cornerstone as an example, because I think it's a nationwide project as far as implications of what we can do. But I also want, I would be remiss because, you know, I did my fair share of whining through that process and some others, and, uh, you all have been tremendously helpful at St. Anton, also 190 units of affordable housing on Power Inn, Mutual on the Boulevard, all in the same area, all affordable housing. Because of the timelines that you have to follow with all of these federal funds, you know, if you don't turn dirt by a certain time, you lose funding and so forth and so on, you accommodated every time I picked up the phone, um, every time Mutual did, and so, um, I want to go above and beyond this one example and say that, uh, the difference in your department is, um, very noticeable and appreciated.
Well, thank you. And you know, on some of those other projects like the Boulevard, we actually changed our process, so you saw that there were 66 permit applications, we reduced that, and so we're including more of the structures on the, um, plans, so we got that down to 21, um, permit applications for the Boulevard.
Thank you.
And that's something I've, I've noticed with staff and particularly building, where as we go through these projects, we're learning as we go, and we're finding ways to improve even project to project, right? So collapsing some of those permits, requiring less of them, um, you know, is just one example of sort of iterating as we go and trying to make it easier based on what we learn. So with that, I just wanted to provide a couple of parting comments here. First, I wanted to thank your board. You have been absolutely steadfast in your support for this. Um, you know, we, we deal with a lot of issues in this room, but, you know, on this one in particular, you know, all five are just lockstep on the importance of, uh, this initiative moving forward, and frankly, that makes my job a lot easier, so I wanted to thank you for that. Also with staff, I, I wanted to thank staff, you know, we talked about vacancies earlier. Uh, what we didn't talk about is just the amount of work coming through the door. Um, you know, single-family home production is actually having a pretty banner year. There doesn't seem to be any slowing down whatsoever, and that's evidenced by the workload that our staff continues to be addressing, you know, and so what I'm asking them to do by way of these process improvements and culture change initiatives is on top of a gigantic workload. And I'm frankly asking them to carve out some time in their day to address some of these things we're talking about here, um, even if it does come at a cost, which is taking them away from the day-to-day work that's in front of them. And I've asked them to do that directly because I see this as an investment in the future. And it is paying off, and it will continue to pay off, but it does take time and resources. And I really appreciate staff trying to accommodate this in, in their very busy days. And then I also wanted to thank our customers. Likewise, we're in lots of different meetings with them. They are essentially volunteering their time, right? We have applicants who certainly have a certain project in mind, trying to push forward and some process improvements around that, but we have a lot of different engineers, consultants, et cetera. But we have a lot of different engineers, consultants, et cetera, spending their own time, non-billable hours, to partner with us to explore some of these changes. And I very much appreciate that as well because that's time away from them addressing their customers as well. And finally, just wanted to leave you with a snapshot of two major initiatives that are underway. The first, we've already talked about, on April 10th in the afternoon, we have a special board workshop that we're not so creatively calling our Housing and Infill Workshop. We're starting to brief all of you on the nature of that. There's a lot of interest from our customers in that workshop, so I think you'll see a number of folks from the development community here voicing their support and also maybe sharing some ideas with you as to what they would like to see addressed. But we'll be talking about potential zoning code changes, county code changes, looking at different hearing authority changes potentially, et cetera. So I think that I'm extremely excited for that. I, you know, again, as I mentioned before, there's a lot of things under our purview, but not everything. So this is going to be a really interesting conversation to have, to see frankly where your comfort begins and ends. And we're going to ask some tough questions, and that's on purpose, to really see how far we can push the needle. And also, something that might not be as visible to you as something, again, not so creatively, I'm calling our internal carriage report. So we obviously hired Ray Carriage a while back to provide us a report that sort of spearheaded the initiation of this initiative that we're embarking on. That was sort of an external view, sort of a top-down assessment of what Mr. Carriage saw. This initiative is going to be a bottom-up assessment where our staff, we're calling process pros across multiple departments, are engaged with a facilitator we brought onboard to map out our processes so we all have a common understanding of what those processes are. Because right now, I think a lot of staff, you know, myself as a planner way back in the day, knew my slice of the pie extremely well. I didn't know very well what came before me or after me. So this is going to map out the entire thing and look at challenges that our staff faces, particularly at those handoff points from department to department. And once we map all of that out, we're asking those same staff then to come up with their own process improvements that they want to pitch to us, that they think would make their jobs easier and the customer experience better. So I'm incredibly excited about this. We just launched it a couple of weeks ago. It's going to be multiple months of work, but I think it's going to bear a lot of fruit. So I look forward to reporting back to the board on that as well in the near future.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. So to that last point, David, I couldn't agree with you more that I think having a very deliberate way of understanding what others may be doing or not doing relative to kind of your own charge, whether it be in planning or drainage or economic development, what have you, I think it's going to be an extraordinary exercise to go through, and hopefully it bears the fruit that we all want, which is, you know, a more seamless, perhaps abbreviated process time. And I think that's, again, just another kind of extraordinary example of, under your leadership, thinking very differently about how we can better serve our clients. I feel like this is the right time to just underscore this. And this goes back to kind of your response to me in terms of my concerns about staffing. You know, I can't stress enough, and this is really more for Mr. Villanueva than anyone here, that we have some big projects throughout the county. We have a couple of very, very large projects in District One. And as we draw closer to environmental review especially, we are really going to need the personnel, the professionals, to process all that. And I think we're, you know, we have to, while at the same time, we have to certainly be concerned about length of time for processing from the client's perspective. I think we really need to be simultaneously cognizant of, you know, it's not necessarily called caseload, but the load that our planning staff are really, you know, forced to undertake with no relief valve, you know, whether it be a function of the market for planners or not. But if we think that we're not being competitive, especially when it comes to planning staff, we need to reassess that. And I think, you know, this budget cycle is probably the right time to do that. I'm not convinced it's a budget problem necessarily, but we should be leaving no stone unturned in terms of how do we affect staffing for our planning department relative to the fact that we can foresee very clearly just a ton of work coming their way. And if we want to, you know, if you want to see your phone not lit up, or Todd's phone not lit up, I think we would be wise to really take a hard and fast look at this budget cycle, about maybe adjusting where we need to, benefit packages. I think, you know, the fact that June's around the corner and we have graduation coming up, I'm glad you pointed that out, Dave, in terms of maybe getting some young, you know, new planners interested in county service and the planning department. But, you know, if we can't respond to the market in a way that's going to kind of get us there, then kind of shame on us because we don't oftentimes kind of get this fairly clear crystal ball to look at and say, yep, we're going to need folks. We're going to really need folks. Now's the time. So I thought this was the appropriate time to really kind of leave that message with our county exec as he's getting ready to, you know, really begin to digest departmental budgets and growth requests and that kind of thing. I think now's the right time. Thanks.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Echo those comments completely. And I want to say, I don't have a frame of reference from before this undertaking was initiated necessarily, but in my time in dealing with certainly all of our department heads, it is, to me, very palpable, sort of the eagerness to implement these procedures. And I'm hoping that that carries through all the way down to the process pros, as you mentioned. And I will say that, you know, having grown up in a family that was in development and land use, I have an institutional memory for processes in the county that a guy my age probably shouldn't be privy to. Interesting aside, by the way, the guy that used to check the roads for circulation, his name was Dusty Rhodes. I always thought that was pretty cool. But, you know, what I hear is a lot of harkening back to that time when essentially a member of the public could walk in with the plans under their arm, go to the public counter here, and literally walk their plans through department to department and walk out with approvals. And so it's those types of process improvements that I think really, and Mr. Mahoney, the examples that you gave, that's what we need to figure out, is how do we collapse those processes and then make them replicable, project over project over project? And so I'll say just a couple of things that we did down in my firmer role in Elk Grove that I think sort of take this, and if we can look at how to do this type of streamlining, it's certainly going to be beneficial, especially in the affordable housing space. One is we implemented a program called TI Tuesdays, which essentially, if you were coming in with a cold shell or better to do a tenant improvement, in that one day, those plans would get processed and put back out, and you'd be on your way. Again, trying to, you know, streamline for that business as time is money as they're trying to get up and open and operating. And then the other one is a program that we implemented, first in the region to do so, called Permit Simplicity, which essentially, if it was a pre-qualified architect and engineer, essentially, our building and permitting department would take their, you know, certification stamp as they would assume the risk. And so we would streamline our processes and say, go ahead and start, but it's on your own dime that what you're telling us is correct. Now, obviously, we wouldn't not double-check, but we would do so in a parallel while they were already beginning to go under construction. So I think if we can do that, if we can take those processes and those areas where we can find efficiencies and figure out how that just becomes replicable. And I think, you know, and I've mentioned this to Todd, a part of this is going to take political will to essentially get out of the way and say that we're going to put this over to ministerial decision-makers. I look forward to that conversation. But, so I think this is a great effort. It's a great progress so far, and I'm hoping we can continue to bear fruit.
Right. And we'll certainly look into those two items that you'd mentioned. I would also mention, because you had talked about, you know, bringing plans in and addressing them on the fly, you know, for better or worse, the world has changed around us a little bit with federal-state other requirements, right? So the world of development, even outside of these walls, has become far more complicated. But I will leave you with one thought in that we just opened up last fall our business assistance center on the first floor, right over there, full-time. We have its staff full-time now as of last fall, so no more appointments necessary. We have staff there to handle any walk-ins. And we saw business go up over 120% in just a short amount of time once we opened it back up. So just a success story right there.
Mr. Villanueva.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. I just wanted to address a couple of things. One, I wanted to thank the board for their support in this discussion. I'm sure all of Dave's staff are listening to you and appreciate the support that you provide. Also, just Supervisor Serna, we've had this discussion before about vacancies, and that started the discussion about that career fair we were talking about that was brought up earlier, also going out to folks that are upcoming graduates and also just looking at. So we're all working together. Sylvester's now on board and bringing some of that talent to the executive floor to help us figure out ways to kind of move that needle as we go forward. While our overall vacancy rate is about 12%, which my understanding is fairly good for the state, we do have critical positions that the vacancy is incredibly higher. So with that, also, I just wanted to say thank you to Dave because, Mr. DeFonte, I've been out in the last six weeks, meeting with lots of folks in the development world, and one of my questions I constantly ask is, how is this process going? And they've been all fantastic and very positive in responses. So while you are also not getting calls and Dave's not getting calls, I'm actually talking to folks and hearing positive aspects. I did hear one criticism that I brought up when Dave let me speak to his team at the quarterly meeting was, one of the customers, if you will, was complaining that we are going too fast and they can't keep up. So I think that's a positive thing. It shows the work that Dave is doing with his team. And I, you know, everybody in his team is working on this and moving the needle in the right direction. And I just want to thank everybody, including Dave and all his team, of all the work they've been doing. So thank you.
Thank you. Couple of things. One is that criticism wasn't aimed at Cameron, was it?
His name did not come up.
Absolutely not. Okay. I do want to say that, you know, I really appreciate, it's the first time I've heard you talk about the, whatever you want to call it, the internal carriage report. It's so critically important because you need direction to get something like this started from the top down, no question about it. But if you only go a couple of layers down, it doesn't do the consumer any good, really. And it really has to be a bottom-up and top-down simultaneously. So I think you're right on the right, right on the money on that one. So thank you very much, and thanks for everything you're doing.
Absolutely. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
We have any public comment?
Not have public comments.
Okay, thank you. And the board, I believe, has made their comments. So with that, we will recess to close session. We will return at 2:00 for a short afternoon session. Call this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors back to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Serna?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Hume?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. Please call the next item.
Item number 59 is Spring Gardens subdivision, a specific plan amendment, rezone, tentative subdivision map, and design review for a property located south of Florin Road, approximately 1,300 feet west of the intersection of Bradshaw Road and Florin Road in the Vineyard Community. And the environmental document is exempt.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy.
Hang on. There we go.
All right. Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy, members of the board. Emma Patton here to present the Spring Gardens project for your consideration. The project site is vacant and is located south of Florin Road, west of Bradshaw Road, and in the Vineyard Community. While the subject site is currently zoned AG 20, it is located within the North Vineyard Station specific plan area, which plans this area to be developed with residential land uses at a variety of densities. A number of the surrounding properties are vacant. However, there is a planned subdivision to the west, known as the Morbi Southeast subdivision. A developed subdivision is to the south, known as Vineyard Point. And there's an existing golf course to the east. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the North Vineyard Station specific plan, a rezone, a tentative subdivision map, and a design review to determine substantial compliance with the design guidelines. I'll go into additional detail on each of these requests in slides to follow. First, I'll note that the project is exempt from the California, in accordance with the California Government Code, based on its conformity with the North Vineyard Station specific plan. So it's relying on the environmental review that was performed with the North Vineyard Station specific plan. The specific plan amendment being requested by the applicant is split into three parts. The first is a land use amendment related to the Woo property, the site of the proposed subdivision. That area is bound in red on this exhibit. The land use amendment would reallocate the land use designations already existing on the property to accommodate the proposed subdivision in the Creek Drainage Corridor. As proposed, the single-family residential designation would be furthest north, closest to Florin Vineyard Road, and the remaining residential areas would be designated as single-family residential 3 through 5. So that 4 through 7 designation is furthest to the north, and the remaining is single-family residential 3 through 5. The second specific plan amendment includes straightening 8th Street and 10th Street of the specific plan to allow for the Spring Gardens subdivision to obtain access from Florin Road without requiring a significant portion of off-site right-of-way to be obtained from the neighboring Kraus property. This amendment requires the third amendment, which is the land use designation changes on the Kraus property, changes the land use designations on either side of the streets to provide clear land use boundaries. No other entitlements, the rezone, the tentative subdivision map, or the design review are for this adjacent Kraus property. That brings us to our next request, the rezone. The applicant requests the rezone of the Spring Gardens site from the AG 20 zone to zones consistent with the proposed specific plan amendment. So that'd be the RD 7, RD 5, O, and OD zones. The rezone allows for the ultimate division of the property as provided on the tentative subdivision map. Here you can see that tentative subdivision map. This map divides a 40.9 acre site into 159 single-family residential lots, one park lot, one open space lot, one basin lot, and seven landscape corridor lots. The park is centrally located to allow for ease of access by future residents and is planned to expand onto the neighboring property to the west. I will note that 4th Street and 10th Street both feature landscape corridors with separated sidewalks. These landscape corridors will ultimately be owned and maintained by South Gate Recreation Park District. In addition, we are happy to work with the applicant, who agreed to upgrade 8th Street from a primary residential street without separated sidewalks to one with separated sidewalks consistent with the North Vineyard Station specific plan policies. With the upgrade of 8th Street, pedestrians would be able to travel the length of the subdivision in both the north-south and east-west direction entirely on separated sidewalks. You should have received some revised conditions related to the adjacent golf course use. These revised conditions address concerns from the owner of the adjacent golf course property. One condition is revised to require an open ornamental fence in the landscape corridor along the boundary of the subdivision where it is directly adjacent to the golf course property. This landscape corridor, again, will ultimately be owned and maintained by South Gate. The second new condition was added to require a note on the final map that would acknowledge the ongoing use and operation of the golf course. Both the Design Review Advisory Committee and the Vineyard CPAC reviewed the proposed project at their respective meetings. On February 23rd, 2023, the DRAC recommended that the project be found in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. On April 13th, 2023, the Vineyard CPAC recommended that the board approve the requested entitlements. Finally, on January 22nd, 2024, the Planning Commission recommended the board approve the requested entitlements, voting 3 yes, 0 no, 1 absent, and 1 recusal. The proposed project is consistent with the general plan and specific plan policies. The subdivision complies with all applicable lot standards. The proposed includes both active and passive recreational uses centrally located within the subdivision and features enhanced pedestrian environments with inclusion of separated sidewalks. And lastly, the subdivision provides connectivity to adjacent constructed and planned subdivisions that can be found in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. Based on this analysis, staff is recommending approval of the project, specifically that the board... approval of the project, specifically that the board recognizes the exempt status of the project due to its conformity with the specific plan, that you adopt the MMRP, adopt the resolution amending the specific plan, approve the rezone ordinance, approve the tentative subdivision map, and find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. That concludes my presentation. The applicant team is also available this afternoon, should you have any questions.
Mr. Hume.
First of all, I just want to thank you for working with me, the neighboring property owner that had requested a couple of amendments to the conditions of approval. That's been worked through, and I think it's a good outcome. Appreciate it. I have a question, though. On your PowerPoint presentation, you referenced the Planning Commission decision as 3 yes, 1 no. But in the Planning Commission transmittal, it says 3 yes, 1 recusal, and 1 absent.
Got it. I apologize for any confusion there. The vote during the Planning Commission was 3 yes, 0 no, 1 absent, and 1 recusal.
Oh, I see. The 1 is to the absent, not to the no. Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Do we have public comment, or would the applicant like to address the board? Madam Clerk, do we have public comment?
We do have two members of the public to speak.
Okay. First, we'll let the applicant come forward, if you're interested. Go ahead and speak between the two of them. It'll pick you up better. There you go.
Okay. Is that better? All right. Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. My name is Laura Zuckerman, and I'm here with several members of our applicant team. I first want to thank county planning staff for their presentation and work on the project. Also, we appreciate the efforts by DOT to unlock North Vineyard Station traffic triggers. Without this work, we wouldn't be standing in front of you today. Our company, Town Development, operates in select markets throughout the country. We've been building in Sacramento region since the mid-1990s, building thousands of homes. We designed this project with two tiers of lot sizes, smaller lots for entry-level home buyers, and also large lots as a step up, which are in high demand today. There are different lots for all different buyers, allowing attainable housing for all. We have our applicant here today to ask you any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Then, let's go to public comment.
We have Steve Legara.
Yeah, my name's Steve Legara, and I'm the owner and operator of Bradshaw Ranskoff Course. I think the last time might have been before the board, was 2007, when the Johnson Development was before the board. So, I don't know quite how things work here anymore. There used to be a way to project stuff onto the screen, so...
If you just go ahead and put it on that white board right there, next to your right?
Okay.
Yeah. There we go.
This is a picture of Bradshaw Ranskoff Course, an aerial photo. Bradshaw Road is along here. The Johnson Development is here, and the proposed Spring Gardens Development is here. 4th Street is going to run along this edge of my development, of my golf course. This would be my third green here. This would be my fourth tee, and this would be my fourth green. When I originally designed the golf course 40 years ago, I recognized the impacts that noise and traffic would have on the enjoyment of the game of golf, the peaceful, quiet enjoyment of the game of golf. So, when I designed it originally, I put my first green, there's Bradshaw Road, this is an open field. I set back my first green, like 100 and some feet from Bradshaw Road, and then I set my ninth green back closer to 200 feet from Bradshaw Road. And the purpose of that was to mitigate the impacts, the negative impacts of noise and visual effects that traffic has on the golf course. On the backside of the golf course here, 4th Street will run along here. The backside of my third green will be about 40 feet from 4th Street. My fourth tee will be about 15 feet from 4th Street. And so, to minimize, to mitigate those negative impacts of noise and traffic, visual traffic on the golf course, I would like to see an 8 to 10-foot solid masonry wall, or precast concrete wall, set along to separate the golf course from 4th Street.
Sir, would you please wrap up your comments?
Yeah, I'm going to give you a chance to wrap up now.
Okay. Yeah, my other problem was with where 4th Street goes across the drainage easement here, they're going to have to raise 4th Streets. To me, that means that they're going to have to do some side slope off to the side here, because 4th Street is right on the edge of the property line. They're going to have to do some side slope and retaining walls to support that roadway. So, they'd be encroaching upon the golf course, and the negative impact on the golf course. Those are my two main concerns.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming down.
And then, we have Lee Miller.
Are you sure you're here for the right item, Lee?
Oh, you'll hear from me later. No worries. So, with the project, I live in the Vineyard Point area, in case nobody knows that. And it is a growing community. There are some concerns that, you know, we keep building, 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 which is fine. But, when is Waterman going, when is Waterman going to be built out? Because you've got now another 170-plus houses going in, two cars apiece at a minimum, that's more traffic. Also, will Florin Road be widened at this point also, in the near future, to support that? Then you have Hedge, that I don't know if anybody's been down Hedge. Pat, Supervisor Hume, I'm sorry. You know, I've asked you to go down Hedge, and it's full of potholes, and that street's going to have to be widened also. The other thing is, is when is the school going to be built at Hanfield and Don and Brendan Nativoli Park? The land's been sitting there for at least six, seven years now, with no elementary school being built. And the kids are being bused all over the place, yet the area keeps growing and growing and growing. So, these are things that I'm concerned about, living in the area. If it's nothing else, please build Waterman. I know you have to negotiate with the railroad company. So, that's all I have. Thank you so much, and talk to you later.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
And that concludes your public comment.
Okay. Back to the board. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Hume.
Thank you, Chair. So, I did receive a transmittal from staff that the, a closed masonry wall is not in keeping with the North Vineyard specific plan. But, can, I did not hear back about whether or not there's a, any kind of culvert or drainage pipe that would go under the road for the existing easement or drainage.
Supervisor Hume, the applicant team has confirmed through both the land survey and through their drainage plans, that improvements would not encroach onto the golf course property. I believe that the applicant's engineer is here and able to speak on that matter in more detail, if you would like to hear more.
Sure, I would. Thank you. I don't need a high level of detail, but can you just describe, is there an elevation change in the road? Is there, will the drainage be maintained? On the improvement plans, I saw, it looks like a storm drain outfall pipe that goes directly to the east.
Correct. We have a, sorry, my name is Eric Crowe with McCann's, I'm civil engineers. I'm a land use planner, and have been assisting with the entitlements of this project. So, thank you for your time today. High level, yes, we are required to accept existing flows from off-site onto our site. We do show a storm drain pipe with an inlet to accept those flows and into our drainage system to continue them through the site. The roadway is, in that location, is fairly close to grade, plus or minus 1 to 2 feet from existing ground at the golf course location. We don't anticipate any retaining walls along that edge at this time, you know, to be worked out further, in further detail at improvement plans, but that's the intent at this time.
But, all improvements will be contained on the applicant property?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Move the item.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Please vote. All right. Next item, please.
Item number 60 is Aspen 3 South Use Permit Amendment. Use Permit Amendment to prior use permits to extend the term of reclamation for a property located at 9436 Fruit Ridge Road, at the southwest intersection of Fruit Ridge Road and Mayhew Road in the Vineyard Community. And the environmental document is a final environmental impact report memorandum. And I will also need to take an oath for this item, for anyone who wishes to speak on the item.
If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item, just stand where you are. You don't have to come up, and we'll administer the oath.
If you wish to address the board, please stand to be sworn. Please raise your right hand, and the appropriate response is, I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth? So, help you God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm? When you go to the podium, please state your name for the record in the statement. I have been sworn. Thank you.
Thank you. Proceed.
All right. Good afternoon. I'm Mark Michalini with Planning and Environmental Review. And I'm going to present the Aspen 3 Southeast Permit Amendment. So, the project is located at 9436 Fruit Ridge Road, out the southwest intersection of Fruit Ridge and Mayhew Road in the Vineyard Community. It's shown there in the hatched red. The community context, so the site is zoned interim agriculture IR with the surface mining overlay. To the north is IR zone and AR2 zones. To the south is more IR with the SM overlay. And to the east and west are IR zones with the SM overlay as well. Site and entitlement history, January 8th, 1992, the board approved a community plan amendment, rezone and use permit to allow mining and reclamation on the 112-acre site. On October 20th, 1999, the board approved an amendment to allow an additional 31 acres of the site to be mined. This additional acreage is part of the Morrison Creek. And then, January 8th, 2013, the board approved a use permit and reclamation plan amendment to allow mining of the Morrison Creek. So, the request today is a use permit amendment to revise condition number 62 from prior use permit PLMP 20, or 2008 0016, and condition number 64 from prior use permit 1994 0484, to extend the term of reclamation for additional eight years to December 15th, 2031. The Vineyard Community Advisory Council met on January 11th, 2024, and recommended approval. The Planning Commission met on February 26th, 2024, and voted to also approve the project. Okay, there are no changes to the project, other than the time extension. The final hearing body is the Board of Supervisors. The environmental coordinator has determined that the environmental impact report, as prepared for the original use permit, is still adequate and appropriate for the current project. So, staff is recommending approval, recognize the environmental coordinator memorandum dated October 11th, 23, and determine the final environmental report for Aspen 3 Use Permit, Community Plan Amendment. And rezone is still adequate and appropriate for the proposed project, and revise condition number 62 from PLMP 2008 0016, and condition number 64 from 1994 0484 of the approved use permit, subject to findings and conditions listed in Attachment 2 of this report, which would extend reclamation period till December 15th, 2031. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant team is here, and ready for any questions, if you may have any?
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff at this time from the board? All right. Hearing is seeing none. Would the applicant like to make a statement?
Hello, my name is Nick Croninwet, and I'm with Tykert Materials. I'm the project manager and applicant for this. I just want to thank Mark for his work. Really been great working with staff to work this through the process, and happy to take any questions, if you have any.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none from the board. Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not have anyone signed up to speak.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to extend the use permit, second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote by the members present.
Thank you. We enjoyed the brevity of your presentation.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item number 61 is the Countywide Illegal Fireworks Task Force update, and introduce an ordinance amending Sacramento County Code Chapter 4.54 relating to fireworks regulations and prohibitions. Way for reading of the ordinance and continue to April 9, 2024 for adoption.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy, members of the board. I'm Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive of Public Safety and Justice. Also with me today, I'm giving the presentation, but there will be representatives from Metro Fire, Sheriff's Office, Code Enforcement, Finance, and others here as well, if needed. During the October 24th, 2023 Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting, there was a presentation by the Countywide Illegal Fireworks Task Force, as well as public comments. Staff had several recommendations for future opportunities. The Board of Supervisors had several suggestions, questions, and specific direction for county staff in a number of areas, as well as including proposed ordinance changes. I'm now returning to the Board of Supervisors with updates on, a brief update on the Enforcement Task Force itself, and then also the proposed ordinance changed, changes based on input from that October 2023 meeting. So, first is an update. The agencies involved in the task force are listed here. So, you have, again, Metro Fire, Sheriff's Office, Regional Parks, Code Enforcement, DA's office. It actually says new addition. They've been part of the task force in years past, just not active recently, but they are now, based on an inquiry from the board in October, and the Sacramento County's Office of Public Information. And to address requests and recommendations from the October board meeting, a number of task force meetings were convened from then until now. And these are really the more new developments for the task force. Now, this enforcement task force has just started a meeting to begin to lay out their goals and objectives for this next 4th of July time period. As mentioned, the District Attorney's Office has been added back to the task force. The representative is Paris Coleman, Deputy District Attorney. Question came up at the board meeting, but also since then, about whether, if there is an incident of illegal use of fireworks, we know we have an administrative remedy or functions that we've taken to the board before, but are there also misdemeanor criminal prosecution that can occur? And the answer is, yes, it can. They could go on parallel tracks. There is a lower threshold of evidence for administrative, which is more reasonable, or more likely than not, which is known as a preponderance of the evidence. However, for a criminal charge, the DA's office representative has told us that that is a much higher threshold. So, for an arrest, it would be probable cause, and for an actual conviction, it would be beyond a reasonable doubt. So, the DA can and will, if the DA's office determines necessary, also run a criminal track for prosecution, but that wouldn't preclude necessarily us doing administrative function as well. Some other things that the task force has spoke about is they'll put out advisory letters, usually done through Code Enforcement, earlier than they did these last two July 4 cycles, I'll call them. So, they'll put those advisory letters out sooner. Really work on our communications plan to really highlight the fact that out-of-state purchase violations, the illegality of that, and also who to contact to address violations. So, we want to make it really clear, so there's no ambiguity, when somebody wants to report illegal fireworks, sales, use, et cetera, to really make clear how the public can communicate that. We did discuss roving teams, and, again, the task force, which is co-led by the Sheriff's Office and Metro Fire, are working out how they're going to deploy this upcoming 4th of July time period. We did determine the District Attorney's Office, this was a question that came up in October, will not be part of those actual roving teams, because it's not really their role to have the active deployment in the field, but rather to take those cases afterward, and to determine whether they should be prosecuted. Sheriff's Office is considering the increased use of drones and aircraft, where reasonable, to really add to... to really add to enforcement, as well as early interdiction, or what are known as by-bust operations. Sheriff's Office is considering more of that as well. I will point out that just back in February, on February 21st, was a sort of a co-led action by Metro Fire, Sheriff's Office, and the Department of Finance. They did an inspection at a South Sacramento location, found that they were funding illegal sales from a business, including counterfeit Safe and Sane Seals, and so they have taken enforcement action and did a confiscation on that. So there might be more operations like that as we near the Fourth of July.
Mr. Jones, who do these advisory letters go out to?
Those who have been identified as being reported the year prior. So the advisory letters state something similar to you've been notified, or it has come to our attention that you may be firing off illegal fireworks or allowing it at your residence, and we're putting you on notice.
Okay, thank you. We also have questions from Supervisor Desmond first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eric, so these other steps that are still under consideration, I'd like to get a little more certainty about where we're going with those, because that doesn't instill a lot of confidence in me that it's going to be any different from years past. What are the steps between now and the Fourth of July to determine whether some of these things the sheriff is considering are actually going to happen? Can you explain what your next steps are going to be, and perhaps how this board can help further that objective?
Yes, so the actual Countywide Illegal Fireworks Task Force had their first meeting, I believe, yesterday. So they're going to have regular meetings. Those are the things that they spoke about that they'll be doing a bit differently or putting more emphasis on for this upcoming year. And so as they continue to have those meetings, they will also continue to brief me on what the plan is as we approach the Fourth of July.
Okay, what I'd ask, I mean, if you're not going to be coming back to the Board, certainly I'd like you to be communicating with my office about what is, how those conversations are going, and because I'm certainly willing to have a conversation with the sheriff directly as well. And then I had another follow-up about the letters. The letters going out, putting people on notice, are there any, perhaps there's some people who've received, I don't know, this is only the first time I think we've sent the letters, right? We've only sent them one time, or two years now we've been doing it? Just one year? I'm looking at Barry, too.
A little bit the year before, but most of it was this last year.
Are those, the recipients of those letters, is that helping form where we focus the efforts? I'm looking at our fire marshal up there, and she's nodding. Any comments on that?
Yes, that's part of the really deployment strategy, is to where to deploy staff, or where there have been a high amount of reported fireworks in years past.
Because I think a number of people who were setting off these illegal fireworks are chronic offenders, you know? So if we focus on some of these people, we could probably find them and allocate resources to be able to catch them in the act, and really make an example out of some of these people. So, all right, thank you.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Thank you. Eric, with regards to the DA's evidentiary threshold, is there any more detail that you can share with regard to that in terms of examples of how that threshold is met? Does it have to be completely caught in the act? Does it have to, can it be video? Can it be still photography? I mean, how do you, you know, confirm a date stamp? All those kind of nuances. What does that threshold mean practically?
Yes, Supervisor Serna, for administrative or criminal?
For criminal.
For criminal? Okay, so is District Attorney, Mr. Paris Coleman here? Yes, if you don't mind, I'll have the District Attorney's rep speak to that.
Great, thank you.
That is basically an impossible question to answer, but I will do the best I can. It could be primarily the problem with, and I said the problem, the difficulty is you're going to need witnesses. And that means someone willing to stand up and say, this is what I saw, here's a photo, here's a video. It can be videotaped, it could be photographed, although all that is admissible evidence, but you need a witness, which in these situations is really what turns out to be the most difficult thing, is because people don't, usually you're talking about neighbors, and people don't like to come and testify against their neighbors. What you really need, however, just to keep it as short and simple as I can, is you need someone to be able to come forward and testify about what it is that they saw.
But the witness could be another family member in the same household, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Supervisor Hugh.
Yeah, I just had a question, speaking of things that are nearly impossible to answer, but since it's called out there, is there anything being worked on, and this may not be a question for you, but any way that we can stop the flow of the purchases that are happening in Nevada and being driven over?
Yes, that's something we've had frequent conversations with the area police chiefs and sheriffs, as well as the State Attorney General. As you recall, you wrote a letter of support to the Attorney General, I think, two years ago, to add emphasis on that and for the State Attorney General to do more. I think you also did receive some correspondence about some work that's being done on perhaps new legislation in Nevada that would require sales in Nevada, information that California law enforcement would have access to that. So those are all things that are being considered by a number of different associations and organizations.
Okay. I realize it's not necessarily germane to what we're discussing today relative to the amendment to the ordinance, but thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, then.
Okay, sir, so we'll go next to the actual ordinance changes themselves. So these are the county code sections that we are proposing amended changes. And again, these changes are based on mostly what came out of the October 23rd meeting. So here to highlight those, again, since that meeting, we've also had numerous internal staff meetings. I've held a series of community member meetings as well, with some of the community members and others who are here in the audience today. Internally, we involved the internal task force partners, as well as county council and the Department of Finance, recovery, revenue recovery and business licensing, because there were so many components about this ordinance that need to be factored in. I will say, before I get to the actual ordinance changes, a question did come up from the Board about whether the county, we'll say based on administrative actions from, say, a social host ordinance action, could violations be levied on the tax roll for fines and fees? And so we did have a conversation about that with county council, who opined that actually counties cannot do that, although cities do have that opportunity. We aren't able to actually put those on the county tax roll, those fines and fees. So you've received the proposed ordinance changes. All violations are better categorized together, so involves violations together such as use, possession, or social host violations. The proposal does narrow the window for sales, essentially bringing it in one day on either side of the window. So how it reads currently is that it is from noon, June 28th, through, this is sales, through July 5th at 10:00 p.m. The proposal is to change that to June 29th at noon through the end of July 4th.
Okay, I have a question on that one, Eric. So first of all, I have to admit, and I shouldn't publicly, but I did not know that sales were allowed after the Fourth of July. That makes total sense. I know that there were some questions in the community regarding not so much the end date, but the beginning date and its consistency with other jurisdictions. Has that been addressed?
Yes, Chair, we did go back and look at all of the other really agencies in our area, jurisdictions, rather, and essentially, pretty much all of them have June 28th. If we do move the front-end window, if you will, to June 29th, we would be essentially the only jurisdiction in our county doing such. That is correct.
Okay, is there a reason, I mean, that we chose to be the outlier on one day?
It was a proposal initially from Metro Fire, their belief that it would have an impact, and then it was the direction to go ahead and put that into the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. So I just want to remind some folks that the last time we had a convening here to discuss the challenge addressing illegal fireworks and safe and sane fireworks, and what the actual, you know, threat in terms of fire ignition really is, and some of the nuance around that in terms of parkway versus outside parkway, I think I was the one that characterized July 5th as being the lowest hanging fruit there is in terms of curtailing sales on the back end. And in fact, I'd like to have some kind of confirmation that I thought it was already the law that even safe and sane fireworks are not supposed to be used after July 4th. So I don't know that there's, I don't know that there's an actual justification, any way you look at it, for sales a day after the law says you can't use them. Otherwise, you're buying them so they can be stale for next year? I mean, there really is no justification for that. I think that's a very different proposition than curtailing it by 24 hours in the front end. So I'll just leave it there for now.
Yes. And if I may, one other adjustment to this ordinance, very much to that point of the question of, well, you can buy them, but you can't use them. We are, in the proposal, saying that on July 4th, sales would end at 9:00 p.m., use would end at 10:00 p.m. If they both lined up at 10:00 p.m., technically somebody could buy some at 9:59, and then within one minute, they're in violation. So that's the reason we adjusted those, but I'm just talking about the July 4th, the end date. We did also add, those fines are no different, but instead of it, the one there being for just the American River Parkway, we did include all school properties and park properties for the enhanced fines. And then we did also clarify that any peace officer within, who has jurisdictional authority, can enforce it. So it's not, we don't have to call out deputies, park rangers, school district police, it's just if it's an authorized peace officer within the jurisdiction, they can do it. And then we did make clearer to include public right of ways adjacent to properties, because oftentimes, if we use the example of a social host ordinance, they might be having a social gathering, but they are possibly firing them off from an actual adjacent right of way. And right of way is specifically spelled out in one of the land development codes as well, as to what exactly the definition of a right of way is. But it's your sidewalks and your streets. One more thing I want to add here is that it is a newer item, and this was based, it's a technical change in definition. It was based on some input that we received just recently, and it is part of your revised material. So that is to ensure that the terminology of dangerous and illegal fireworks is consistent with the State Health and Safety Code. So it was changed in your revised material under 4.54305 and 4.54425, and it's highlighted, but it better clearly differentiates dangerous illegal fireworks per state code versus unauthorized use of safe and sane fireworks. So on to the next steps. If the Board of Supervisors approves this today, we will continue it to April 11th for the adoption of the changes.
All right, any other questions of the Board? Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that we probably have some speakers that wish to address the Board on this, and I'm not necessarily asking for us to do any kind of straw poll here, but I do think, based on much of the correspondence we've received in recent days and weeks on this matter, that the principal point of controversy here is that June 28th, June 29th matter. And just in terms of maybe helping folks, helping folks know maybe what to address, how to address it, I'll just tell you as 20% of the Board, I don't agree with curtailing it on the front end, so I would be supportive of leaving it on the 28th. I am supportive of cutting off sales after the Fourth. So I would just tee that up, see if there's others on the Board that may want to show their cards a bit, so that, again, members of the public maybe have something to respond to.
Well, you can consider my card shown, I agree with you. Supervisor Desmond.
I agree as well. I think that's an important point to bring up before the public comment, because that was certainly, I think, the biggest concern among probably a lot of folks that are here in the chamber today. And I agree with you, Supervisor Serna, especially in light of the information that that would create an inconsistency with other jurisdictions. But I'm certainly in support of changing it on the back end, but not on the front end, and in support of the other changes that you outlined in your presentation as well.
Supervisor Frost.
I also agree. I think it puts the businesses in the unincorporated county at a disadvantage to the other cities around us, so it should be consistent for everyone.
Supervisor Hugh.
Count me as the last 20%.
All right, any other questions? I assume that by next steps, you are done with your presentation.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have public comment?
Lee Miller.
And if you could, we've got a meeting ahead of us still, so if you can keep an eye on that list that you see up there, and if you see your name coming up, just start moving forward. That would help us preserve time and also keep in mind the conversation that the Board just had. Ms. Miller.
Can I go?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. As concerned citizens dedicated to preserving safety and well-being in Sacramento County, we emailed you an editorial recently published in the Bakersfield Californian. The editorial echoes our concerns and underscores the urgent need for action regarding illegal fireworks enforcement. The editorial addresses how illegal fireworks severely threaten public safety and cause property damage. It is crucial to recognize that many of the individuals living in the unincorporated county share the same concerns as those residing in Kern County. We share the frustration expressed by the Kern County grand jury emphasizing the need for a robust and coordinated response from local authorities. The call for a joint task force with apparent authority and consistent penalties for violators is particularly relevant to our situation. The editorial recommends for uniform rules, penalties, administrative processes between city and county jurisdictions align closely with our activism efforts. By adopting these measures, we can streamline enforcement efforts and ensure a more effective response to the issue of illegal fireworks. The proposed utilization of technology such as drones for detection and enforcement represents a proactive approach that we strongly support. Implementing such measures can be significantly enhance law enforcement's capacity to identify and hold accountable those responsible for illegal firework activities. We urge the Board to follow the lessons and recommendations outlined in the editorial and take decisive action to strengthen illegal fireworks enforcements in our community. Supervisor Kennedy expressed willingness to support forming a county-specific community task force dedicated to exploring and recommending an illegal fireworks enforcement plan for the upcoming Fourth of July.
Ms. Lee, can you wrap up your comments?
One more line. Residents against illegal fireworks respectfully request the Chair, the appropriate personnel to establish this task force. Time is of the essence. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Melissa.
And Thomas, if you can line up behind her, that would be helpful.
Thank you for hearing our comments today, and most of what you already said is kind of what I was going to say. Thank you for hearing my comments today on the matter of the amendments to the county code. Illegal fireworks are indeed a source of many problems in this county, and as a member of a nonprofit organization that takes part in the sale of legal fireworks, I feel like there is much room for education and enforcement. There is a stigma around the word fireworks as it pertains to scaring animals and those with PTSD, and I've had numerous conversations with people over the years to explain that that is not, that there is not one firework at our stand that makes a boom loud enough to shake windows. Our fireworks emit showers of sparks, sometimes crackle, sometimes a whistle, never a boom. The issue is not what we sell at our booths, the issue- The issue is not what we sell at our booths, the issue is obviously illegal fireworks coming in from other states. And my main question is, how does reducing the time, the timeframe for which we can sell safe, sane, and state-approved fireworks fix or help any of the actual issues of which you've already addressed? So we must address the actual issues, being enforcement of the law, better reporting methods, increased response time to neighbor reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas, followed by Natalie.
Good afternoon, everyone. I mainly want to talk about is the illegal fireworks. I don't even know why we're even discussing safe and sane in the same conversation as illegal. The safe and sane have been around for God knows how long. I've been selling fireworks in my booth for over 25 years, in my organization for over 50 years, and we've never had a single problem. We all, and I will probably speak for everybody that's here, would love to see the illegals go away, but it's just almost as bad as the drug cartel, trying to keep drugs and trying to get them out of the state of California. It's almost impossible. So we've got to find other ways, but I, again, I, I'm bewildered on why we're even talking and putting safe and sane fireworks in the same boat as the illegal fireworks. We've really got to figure a way to end them from coming in from out of state, whether it's Washington, Nevada, wherever, or people that are loading up their cars and bringing them in. The only way you could probably do it is stop them at the state, state line, but then you're talking weeks just to get into the state of California. So that, that's impossible, not feasible. So I thank you for your time, but I just, and I had a longer speech, but I'm not going to say it. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Natalie, followed by Shannon.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. My name is Natalie Price, and I have been a community servant in Sacramento County for nearly 20 years now. First off, let me thank you for agreeing that June 28th should be the date of operations for those safe and saints. Thank you for that decision in advance. I would like to ask that in section 4.54.380, you omit item D. This restricts booth volunteers to members of the organization and the immediate family members. With items C and G covering payment and profit splitting, and item E covering the age, all needed parameters of booth volunteers are addressed. Item D only serves to restrict relationship and community involvement. It restricts opportunity for quality-of-life organizations such as the Lions to grow a strong volunteer base. This volunteer base serves Sacramento County. We subsidize where Sacramento County can't pick up the resources. I also say that this restricts reciprocity from those who are served who want to give back but don't have the financial means to do so. Finally, today, I ask that you consider in section 4.54.425, not replacing the term "illegal" with the term "dangerous." Subjective language always risks confusion. It risks conflict, and it risks inconsistency of enforcement. So I ask that you please keep the current terminology of "illegal." That's all I have. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Shannon, followed by Mike.
Thank you. My name is Shannon Fannin. I've been selling fireworks for 51 years. I live in Sioux Falls area, I work in Hills area. We have a food closet, we feed about 500 families per week. Fireworks for us, and on the 5th, we have never sold fireworks for over 20 years on the 5th because TNT Fireworks had a gentleman's agreement with the fire department, they asked us not to sell. So we closed down on the 4th, and we've never sold on the 5th, and nobody's ever done it. So closing that off, that, closing that loophole is good. But I'd like for you to address this amendment by not taking away the day, as you've already said, and letting us sell. The hour is okay. If we take away an hour, that's fine, because it's, it's something that we need to do as a whole team. I sell in both county and in the city, and we need to do this as together as both, because this is important for our people, as well as for our county and for our city, and we thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mike, followed by James.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Mike Duffick, and I'm the president of the Sacramento Youth Band Parents Association. We have been a nonprofit music organization here in Sacramento since 1957. We have been selling safe and sane fireworks since 1963. So this is quite, quite a hit on our budget as far as it's a major thing. If it wasn't for safe and sane fireworks, the Sacramento Youth Band would not exist today. It represents over 33% of our budget every year to keep us going. So I thank you very much for the, maintaining the June 28th. Quite honestly, it's not a full day. We start at noon selling, and that first day, you're setting up your stand, you're putting up your, your signage and so on, so it's not a full day of, of selling, but, but thank you for that. That really helps. But thank you for supporting us and, and the continuance on that, and thank you again.
Thank you. James, followed by Anthony.
I'm a Vietnam Vet. My nonprofit veterans organization is Military Order of the Cooties, Pub 1069. What we do with the TNT fundraiser funds is provide the VA hospitals and their clinics the, what the patients need, like t-shirts, slippers, underwear, diapers, and also electric powered wheelchairs or scooters. The power wheelchairs and scooters are donated. We can't afford to buy brand-new ones, so, and we send them out to a medical maintenance supply group to check it out, to make sure that it works. So that, you know, I thank you for extending the, the May, I mean, yeah, May 28th thing, because I feel that illegal fireworks is not going to stop coming in until we figure an actual way to stop it from coming in, but thank you.
Thank you. Anthony, followed by Amanda.
My name is Anthony Bailey, a church for all. I'm one of the ministers there, and what we have is a church for all there in North Islands, California. We provide crisis and intervention services for people experiencing crisis and mental health challenges. And what we use the funds for is to transport them to healthcare and to mental health services and emergency housing, and we want to thank you for keeping the date. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda, followed by Tassi.
Good afternoon. My name is Amanda Aaron, and I'm, much of what I've already, has already been said. So I'm just here on behalf of the Juniford Hill Mustangs Youth Organization to maintain the current starting point as June 28th. This is one of our biggest fundraisers that helps get our, ready for the upcoming season, and that's basically it. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Tassi, followed by Frank.
Good afternoon. First of all, I want to say thank you so much for allowing us to come up here and voice our concerns as the people of the community. I moved here to Sacramento 20 years ago, and I'm so happy that you guys are finally going over the illegal fireworks. I represent the Samoan Good Samaritan Church, and this is our only form of fundraising to help with our church finances, besides the church tithing and whatnot. I want to also say, say thank you so much for allowing us to keep the 28th, just like one of my colleagues had mentioned earlier. The 28th is just a day for us to set up, but it's also helping us because delivery of products to our sites, it's becoming a challenge for some of us. The delivery companies are asking us to be there on the 27th or the 26th to receive the products. So allowing us to open on the 28th is giving us that extra day ahead to prepare our products if we have to be there on the 27th. Obviously, we're not going to do anything until the 28th. So we want to thank you for, you know, voting on that. But as far as the illegal fireworks, as a member of the community in the Natomas area, I strongly ask of you to please come out there and police it at least two weeks or three weeks prior to the Fourth of July, and also two weeks after, because there's so many illegal fireworks going on around that area, on those weeks of the, of the month or prior to the Fourth of July. Thank you again. God bless everybody.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing us to be here. Frank, followed by Jill.
Hello. My name is Frank Insula. I'm with Knights of Columbus, 4970. It's really nice to see all your faces, other than on a ballot, so I wanted to say it was nice to see you. The fireworks really means a great deal to us because we take care of three Catholic churches, so the fireworks for us is our biggest fundraiser of the year, but majority of the money goes to Catholic kids that are going to college or high schools for tuition. The rest of the money goes to St. Vincent and Paul at St. John Evangelist that I probably work 40 hours a week when I'm healthy. But the 28th is very important for us to start. I agree with the last speakers. And, you know, cutting the 28th and going half a day to the 29th, that's like whole day, and it really hurts our environment. That's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jill, followed by Greg.
Good afternoon. My name is Jill Spurling. I'm the fireworks chair for the Galt Agriculture FFA Boosters. All proceeds from that booth fund the Galt and Liberty Ranch High School Agriculture Education Programs and their FFA chapters, which support youth leadership development throughout the year. I came today to really advocate for fireworks sales on June 28th. Thank you for the decision that you just made, so I'll omit all of those comments to save time. I just would ask, I think most of us would agree, that the illegal fireworks are still an issue, so I would just implore all the supervisors and other stakeholders to encourage better illegal fireworks enforcement by the sheriff and fire departments, if at all possible. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you. Greg, followed by Dennis.
Good afternoon. I'll keep it short and sweet, but thank you for keeping the 28th. I represent Rio Americano Athletic Boosters. It's our largest fundraiser for our organization, and the 28th is our third-largest sales date, so thank you for supporting that.
Thank you. And Mr. Vell at cleanup.
I'm doing it right now. Thank you.
I know the ravages are.
I can help you.
Thank you. I apologize for my height. Good afternoon, Chair, Kennedy, members of the board.
Did you apologize for your height? Good afternoon, Dennis.
Good afternoon, Chair. I'm here today in my two minutes to speedily address the amendments to the proposed ordinance on fireworks regulation that the, been requested by the nonprofit organizations as well as my client TNT Fireworks. On March 22nd, we provided you a detailed rationale for supporting these amendments that are listed here in this handout before you and on the screen. I implore you not to dismiss these amendments out of hand, but rather to take them seriously. If I can, just briefly comment on the ones remaining. Unfortunately, I only brought the one copy. Of the ones remaining, number two, there is nothing in the ordinance that prohibits use between a point in the evening and, and when sales begin again in the morning. We, we achieved that restriction in the city ordinance, it's in every other ordinance in the county. This, the unincorporated area needs to prohibit all fireworks use between 10:00 PM and 9:00 AM during the sales period. To answer Supervisor Serna's question, no sales have taken place on the 5th, as long as I've represented this client since 1989, nor do I believe phantom fireworks have allowed sales during that period either. The term "dangerous" and the strikeout of the word "illegal" in section 5.4.54.425 concerns us, I'm not sure from Eric Jones's comment whether or not that's been modified. I haven't seen that, but we want to make sure that state-approved fireworks are not seen as the equivalent, same risk as dangerous illegal fireworks. The last one is the stand-removal deadline. I've given you in my correspondence to you, the stand-removal deadline on all the other seven jurisdictions, incorporated jurisdictions, and we would like to keep that at the 18th. In closing, I would just ask, the people that have just spoken to you are the reason that I've enjoyed representing this company for, since 1989. They're some of the finest members in any community, from community to community across the state. They want to work with this board, they want to work with fire, they want to work with the sheriff, we do, to make things better.
Thank you. Okay. Any more members of the public, Madam Clerk?
That concludes your public comments for this item.
All right. Then we will start with Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. First, I'd like to start by thanking our fire marshal and others in our surrounding fire departments. I think it goes without saying that we, we, everyone in this chambers and sitting at this day, sincerely value and thank you for what you do in terms of your critical role in maintaining, maintaining the public's safety and health when it comes to not just the time around Independence Day, but all 365 days a year. I think today's experience for all of us teaches us a great many things. I think the fact that there was obviously a very concerted effort to impress upon the board some principal concerns by those that I would agree with, Mr. Vell, have been characterized as some of the best, most committed members of our community, mostly in the context of the various charities, nonprofits that you work with and for. And I think it goes without saying, but I'll say it anyways, we truly understand how important it is for you to be able to fundraise the way you do, and I think that's been certainly underscored in recent days, just with the cascade of emails that we've all received explaining that. And therefore, that's why, I think you heard from us earlier about understanding and respecting the need not to lose that front-end day, and I think a couple speakers, I think rightfully, pointed out, something I have to admit, I didn't even really give thought to, about the setup time. That makes, that makes a lot of sense. So I guess my remaining questions, though, are really aimed at, I'm not sure, maybe both Eric and County Council's office, about some of the proposed concerns or amendments to the ordinance. Number one was the, the concern about using, the use of the word "legal" versus "dangerous", and whether or not legally that, you know, what are the implications of, of that? I don't know. Who wants to respond first to that?
I can, Supervisor Serna. So actually, that was what was changed in your revised material to make sure it conforms completely with state code. So that was remedied in your revised material.
Yeah, I'm throwing these softballs up so everyone gets to hear it. So, and then in terms of the, the time of use of safe and sane fireworks, are we staying consistent with the other jurisdictions as well?
That's one thing we have, did not have in the current ordinance, and it didn't come up in any of the meetings. When it was discussed, it was also discussed that we have a current noise ordinance that precludes anything between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM already, and it felt it could be duplicative, but we don't have anything in our ordinance specific to fireworks use during those hours.
My opinion would be that it's, at least it's, makes it clear, right? It doesn't leave any guesswork in terms of when the expectation is that individuals or groups could use, set off, safe and sane fireworks. I don't see, and if you're telling me there's really no harm in adding it, I would suggest that we do make that clarification. And then what about the definition of right of way? Has that also been clarified?
Yes, that definition is in, I can find the section here. There it is. Right of way is already explicitly defined in Sacramento County Code Title 22 under Land Development, where it discusses how it's county property for public street purposes, public utilities, et cetera. public utilities, et cetera.
Okay, very good. So, as I represent mostly the city of Sacramento, if you look at the political boundaries of the first district, you know, almost 100% of the people that I represent are in the city of Sacramento. I think it's more appropriate for someone that represents pretty much exactly the opposite proportion of unincorporated residents should consider making motions and changes, perhaps, to the motion, to the staff recommendation. But I just wanted to register where my interest lies, and I would be supportive of the clarification on time of use, and then leave it up to the motion-makers to maybe make some other suggestions if they so have them. But I think with making sure that we don't limit folks' ability to begin selling, setting up and selling on the 28th, that was my principal concern. I think that has been said pretty clearly by all of us, so thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. I know Supervisor Desmond is next in the queue, but I see that our fire marshal is here at this time. Do you have anything you would like to add to the presentation?
I did want to clarify one issue. I'm going to have to get on my tippy toes. Just in regards to the comments and the rationale for cutting off the day on the front end as well, when we came and presented to you in, I believe it was October, we showed the, when our fire incidents start, and the trend lines there for the last three years, which also corresponds with when the citizen complaints start coming into code enforcement, the sheriff's office, and us. So that was the rationale. I'm really excited to see the amount of community support that came out. I have never heard from the actual fireworks booths vendors. All we've been hearing from is the people that are very frustrated with the noise and the problems in their community, and so we look forward to working with you on some of the safety messaging that needs to occur, to appropriately educate the community on how to safely use those safe and sane fireworks, because we have been, as we've brought to you before, seeing inappropriate use, which renders them unsafe. And that was a main focus of our first kickoff meeting yesterday, was talking about our public education and the community outreach that's going to be going on to try and solve some of those issues, so we don't have those fires associated with improperly disposed of safe and sane fireworks. So, thank you. We support wholeheartedly the changes. I think these are reasonable measures that are going to help us with enforcement moving forward.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you Supervisor Serna for providing a roadmap for me for my motion. I appreciate that, because I am that supervisor that represents the district that is mostly unincorporated. I also want to thank everybody who came out. We have some wonderful public servants out here. It's great to see the junior mustangs representative in particular, and many of you. I realize that these fireworks sales are the lifeblood of your organizations that are so important to the community. And it is great. I agree with our fire marshal. It is great to see all of you out here, joining the voices of people very, very frustrated about the use of illegal fireworks. Mr. Revel and I have had a lot of conversations about the reality is, and we see it by the case that Mr. Jones talked about a little bit, the reality is that these bad actors, they take advantage of a time period when legal fireworks are being used to hide among you, and it makes it, it makes it much more difficult to find them. And that's the, that is what is so difficult in dealing with this problem. You know, Mr. Jones, I look forward to continuing to have conversations with you about really firming up some of the actions that are going to be taken by the task force, because I feel like this is one of those issues where it's, we don't really think about it a whole lot, and then we start thinking about it a lot around the Fourth of July and a little bit during, during, after New Year's, and then we kind of loses focus, loses priority. And I want to make sure that does not happen. And then also to Mr. Revel, I think, you know, we heard there's an issue, it would take a change in state law to be able to put a tax lien on property. I mean, I would like to explore that at the state level, and so I'd be happy to follow up with you and maybe follow up with our legislative staff here at the county about that, and see if maybe it would be worthwhile to explore changing that for a tax lien in this context, if someone has been found guilty of an administrative violation of using illegal fireworks from their home, in violation of the social host ordinance. And so with those comments, I will move the staff recommendation with the exception of the 28th, remove that from the recommendation, and add the prohibition on use from 10:00 PM until 9:00 in the morning during the period of sales. Is that correct, Dennis? And that would be my...
Supervisor, I do want to be clear, you want to allow sales on the 28th, correct?
Yes. No, I'm saying, remove that from the staff recommendation. Right. Keep the rest of the elements of the staff recommendation, and add the prohibition on use between 10:00 PM and 9:00 AM during that sales period.
Second.
Okay. Supervisor Hume.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded, so I won't belabor the point, and since we asked people to be brief, I'll try and be brief as well. First of all, support putting the start time back to the 28th, as was said earlier. Support the no-use between 10:00 PM and 9:00 AM. I'm not really comfortable with the change in the language under Section 4.54.425. I understand that it's done so to be, you know, Congress with the state code, but, and I say this primarily to you, Fire Marshal Law, but also to our county folks, year after year, we're told that the resources are stretched too thin to go after folks who are setting off illegal fireworks. So I want to say in no, on ambiguous terms, all of these efforts, as far as I'm concerned, are solely to try and make it easier to identify and stop illegal firework use. And so I do not want this to be interpreted that we're going to use those limited resources to go around and issue citations for people that are setting off fires on ladders, or kids holding sparklers the wrong way, or what. I mean, it's, this should not be to legislate away from stupidity, it should be to try and stop people from setting off things that go boom, way up in the sky.
I agree with you wholeheartedly, Director Hume. I did want to address the concern for changing the language from illegal to dangerous. Illegal is not the language in the Health and Safety Code. If you noticed up in the definitions, the definition of dangerous fireworks was added to your proposed ordinance, and that is to be consistent with the state Health and Safety Code.
Sure. I'm just, the Office of Redundancy Department.
Got to be consistent. Excuse me.
All right, that's all the board members I have. We have a motion in a second on the floor. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Okay, Item 62, authorize the Director of Airports to negotiate and execute the agreement for custodial services for the Sacramento County Department of Airports with TMM Housekeeping.
Let's just give it 20 more seconds. Okay, we may proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board of Supervisors. I am Sherri Thompson, Deputy Director, Department of Airports. Today, the department is here to recommend the Board of Supervisors award the agreement for custodial services at the airport to TMM Housekeeping. I have a short presentation, and then myself and others that are here today would be happy to answer your questions. As you are aware, and as you've seen before, these are the airport's core values, which include a focus on customer service. Custodial services are critical for providing excellent customer service. The custodial situation we find ourselves in right now is very complex and difficult to manage. We have three very different custodial cleaning models that take an enormous amount of time to manage. Our Terminal A and our ancillary buildings are administered under the countywide contract that's under, administered by the Department of General Services, and that contract is a time and materials contract. The Terminal B and Concourse B contract is an airport-only contract, performance-based, that's been in existence since 2021. In addition to that, we have about 20 county custodians that are employed with the department. This is messy to difficult, this is messy and difficult to manage, which is why we issued the request for proposal for consolidated custodial services under a single agreement. This, on the screen, this was our timeline for our request for proposal process. Note that this was not a bid process, which is very different, has very different requirements and processes. We completed the 71J process with local 39 labor relations in the airport with our county custodians, and they will continue to be busy at the airport. TMM is a union contractor. They have worked with unions successfully for about 36 years, and they have been in contact with the union for their planned transition. In addition, they have executed a letter of intent with SEIU for this contract. The airport received eight proposals. They were reviewed and scored by a six-member panel, none of whom have had involvement in managing the current custodial contracts. Each proposal was scored with a max of 100 points possible. The panel evaluated each proposal in seven categories: qualifications, management and operations plan, staffing plan, technology, equipment, the fee schedule, and the transition From that first round, the top four proposers were invited for an interview. The scores were erased from that first round, and the same six-member panel used a ranked-choice voting system. Interviews were ranked based on the responses to the questions and clarifications that were asked during the interviews. The number of rank-one votes are shown in the second column on this chart, and the second round, or the interview round, was qualitative and ranked by each of the panel members independently based on the responses to questions asked during the interview. Also on this chart, in the third and fourth columns, are the breakdown of cost proposals provided for the first five and subsequent five years for each proposal, and I'll come back to that in just a minute. As of last Friday, our current provider had 139 badged employees and subcontractors. Under California law, TMM is to retain all of them during the 60-day transition period, and will offer continued employment to them if their performance during the 60-day period is satisfactory. TMM is prepared, ready, willing, and able to take on all employees, including those with and without disabilities, and will continue to provide coaching and support so that those frontline employees are able to remain in place at Sacramento International Airport. County staff are also committed to working with TMM to make sure that they comply with the act's requirements, and that the transition in service providers occurs as smoothly as possible, and that custodial workers have easy access to available employment resources. It is not only TMM's intent, but also their preference to transition all existing employees. They see value in hiring an experienced workforce, and they prefer to eliminate any uncertainty employees have about job retention as a result of the change in service providers. TMM's proposal is to increase the total staff of about, to about 170 employees, so again, it is in their best interest to retain all the frontline staff. They will, in addition, have to add to that. This new contract for our RFP, it's a hybrid. It is a time and materials contract similar to the contract that we have in Terminal A, but it includes penalties similar to the current Terminal B-Concourse B contract. Specifically, this new contract specifies cleaning tasks rather than cleaning levels and scores, and increases the penalties for failure to perform those agreed-upon tasks. Scoring of the proposals and interviews had nothing to do with the current performance under the current contracts. The six-member panel had nothing to do with the inspections and contract management of the custodial agreements. None of my staff overseeing the current custodial contract, the Director of Airport, or myself, were on the panel. Cost proposals were a part of the evaluation criteria that were worth 15 out of 100 points. The panel did look at the pricing differences between all of them. Looking at just the first five-year proposal, I'll go back here. Looking at just the first five-year proposal, two of the four top proposers submitted almost identical cost proposals at $60 million, while the third proposal was 69, and Pride offered the highest bid at $79 million. According to TMM, they have done their due diligence in preparing their proposal, including executing an agreement with the SEIU, and were able to identify the required wage scale for the area in which the airport operates. Additionally, they were able to attain a wage scale and employee roster for current employees working at the airport as of October, when they submitted their proposal. TMM used the current wage structure as a baseline for their proposal, such that current employees would be made whole through the entire process. TMM has been operating in California since 1999, and has 36 years' experience in large public areas and high-traffic facilities throughout the United States, including airports, event venues, professional entertainment complexes, enclosed and open-air shopping malls, many of which are over 1 million square feet, hospitals, healthcare facilities, and more. Not only are they prepared, ready, willing, and able to take on all the employees, they have experience doing so that I'm sure they would be happy to tell you about today. To recap, the department is asking you to approve this recommendation for custodial services to TMM for a max payment of $129 million over the initial term of five years, plus one additional five-year period. The custodial situation, as I mentioned before, that we find ourselves in right now is very complex, it's very difficult to manage, and by going to this single provider, we will, we are furthering our goal of providing excellent customer service. Mr. David Schultes, the Division Vice President for TMM, and his team are here today, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Okay, before we get to that, Supervisor Hume.
Not a question for, well, it is a question for staff, I apologize. Not sure if you can answer this, or County Council, or maybe even one of my colleagues on the dais, but the last time this contract was being considered, the board voted to go against staff recommendation to award to Pride, is that correct?
Correct.
Kind of correct. It's a little more nuanced than that. There was an option, we couldn't just redo a new contract, but there was an option to extend the contract within the contract. An RFP process had gone forward, and Pride Industries was fourth on the list at that time, and the board, with certain deliverables, agreed to go forward with an extension of three years of the Pride contract, which brings us to the process today.
And at that time, that is when we switched it from, to the performance-based contract that it is today.
Okay, and so at that point, then, there still was no contemplation of the merging of the two contracts to get them aligned? Right? That wasn't part of the consideration?
It was not. To the best of my knowledge, it was not.
Okay, that's all the questions I have for now.
Okay. Any other board members have questions of staff?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure that the table is set, so that we, mostly me, I'm very clear on what you just presented, because I suspect we're going to hear different opinions about this. That the deliberate RFP process, including the interviews, including the narrowing down from eight to four, was not simply about lowest amount, lowest bid, it was not similar to a capital public works project where we have kind of tighter parameters in terms of, in some instances, legally being required to look at the least-cost alternative. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So despite the fact that TMM came in with the lowest-proposed five-year cost, there were many other component parts of what their proposal included that apparently impressed those that were involved in assessing the last four candidates. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And with regards to the declaration that you cited, that none of the panelists, either at the initial point of looking at all eight and then narrowing it down to the four, not having any prior knowledge about the performance that Pride had with their existing contract, what were the safeguards to make sure that that didn't seep in as an influencing factor?
The six-member panel, it was the same for both the evaluation of the proposals and the interviews. We had individuals from other peer airports that have similar jobs. We had, we had a member of Southwest Airlines on the team, and then other members for, within our operations and finance section. So there was nobody in the room when they were going over those proposals that had any knowledge of good or bad performance of the existing provider.
Okay. And then in terms of, if we were to look at kind of a rough breakdown of the existing Pride contract, how much, or even what they proposed, what can you tell me about distinguishing between kind of their overhead separate from salaries of the actual employees?
Based on what we could tell, it looks like the indirect cost, overhead and profit for Pride was about 213% more. So of the roughly 20 million dollar difference, it was about $8.8 million difference.
Okay. Over how many years?
That was the five.
Five years? Okay, all right. Let's see, I have another question here. Bear with me. Oh, actually, it's a question for the TMM representatives.
I was going to bring them up next.
Yeah, okay.
Supervisor Frost, you have questions of staff, because after we're done asking questions of staff, I'm going to ask TMM to come forward.
I was wondering if you could go back to one of the prior slides. It mentioned at the bottom of the slide that the protection extends to the subcontractors and their, that one, the one you were just on, and their employees of the, and their employees of the terminated contractors. So the, that intimates that all subcontractors, including Pride, would go with, go under whoever is the winning bid to manage the overall contract. I was under the impression it was the employees, but not maybe the administrative side of Pride. I wanted to make sure I understood that.
The frontline staff, their employees, Pride's frontline staff employees and their subcontractor employees, not their management team.
So if the Pride employees, if there are logistics associated with those employees and getting them to work and getting them back and forth, they will basically go under the umbrella of another company?
That is correct.
And Pride will be out of it, even if they're working with Pride separately in other areas?
That is correct.
And then my other question is, it says that the employees would have a 60-day guaranteed 60-day, after 60 days, it's based on merit or performance. They could be laid off if their performance is, I mean, there's no guarantee that they'll have a job.
Correct.
Is it that way now with Pride? I guess Pride manages that, so that's not falling under the airports. And I guess the, there were comments in some of the letters regarding the E-Bid system, and I guess that it was the difference in the type of bid that changed the way you managed the bid, is that correct?
These were proposals, not bids.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, any more questions from the board of staff? Seeing none, would the representative TMM please come forward?
Good afternoon. My name's Dave Schulz, I'm the Vice President for TMM.
Okay, Mr. Serna.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So thank you for being here. First of all, I'd like to know as precisely as possible what TMM has said publicly about any and all commitments to retain the Pride employees.
Sure. Our statement is there has been some miscommunication, it appears, that's out there. So to clarify that, TMM, if confirmed as a new janitorial service provider at SMF, we will fully comply with the Displaced Janitors Act, and it's not only TMM's intent, but it's our preference to transition all existing Pride employees. We recognize the importance of providing job stability through a seamless onboarding process. Additionally, we recognize the opportunity of hiring an experienced workforce, and our mission is to eliminate any uncertainty that they may have about job retention as a result of the changes, change service providers, as we previously spoke about. We are optimistic that Pride's leadership will support their employees by facilitating a smooth transition, and we seek to minimize any disruptions of the staff in the work life and their personal life. So all the folks that are behind me, that we respect to show up, I want to assure them that we have a place for them, we are going to support them, there's a job for them, and I look forward to meeting each and every one of them and working with them.
Thank you. And then can you speak to the fact that some of the criticism that has been out there about TMM and its recommendation from staff for this contract is that you're out of state? And can you talk about, while that may be the case, what's your relationship like with in-state airport systems or other large-scale custodial contracts in the state of California?
Sure. So as was mentioned, we've been registered in California for, since 1999. We've had various, various accounts through there. Currently, we're in Fresno and Camarillo. We have a dedicated human resource department based in California as well. And then our sister company, probably a third of their business, is located in California, numerous properties in the Bay Area, and a West Coast office based, they just opened up in San Francisco. So although our corporate office is in Nashville, we've operated across the country. We've operated, as mentioned, in large-scale retail centers, health, healthcare, specific to California, a lot of retail, large multi, you know, outside recreation lifestyle centers and shopping centers and so forth.
And then in terms, thank you for that. In terms of the proposed five-year cost and the proposed five-year extension cost that was on one of the slides earlier, I'll just look at the proposed five-year cost. TMM came in at 59.8 million. Pride Industries came in fourth out of four at 79.3 million. So, you know, whenever, at least in my tenure on this board, whether it's a process like this, or if it's a process for capital works projects and bidding, construction contracts, for instance, you know, I'm always, I think, got a healthy dose of skepticism when I see wide deltas between what comes in. So can you explain to all of us what kind of commitment there is or justification there is for being the lowest by what looks like about $10 million?
So when we do a RFP, you know, as stated, we do our due diligence, we reach out to market wages, we reach out to, in this case, the union, get the current roster, we plan for inflation as well as we process that. And although we're a profit-for-company, a small, you know, mid-sized family-owned business, we also, you know, control our costs and put more of that money in what would be a markup or overhead. Our margins are not astronomical where we're going to get rich off a contract, and we put that money back into the wages, and so we reuse that. Our goal is to have a smooth-running operation, minimize the amount of turnover, and be able to provide, you know, in this case, the airport, a clean airport, better training and so forth. So the large spread, I can certainly speak for how Pride came up with their numbers. I certainly see that we're in line with another large company, ABM, that does several airports across the country. So I think that, you know, our numbers are accurate in what we came up in, and we certainly stand by our.
I was kind of looking at the average of the four, that's why I mentioned $10 million. Thank you for that. And then Cindy, kind of same question. What, if TMM is awarded, from our side, our perspective, the airport systems, management of this contract, how do we ensure that we don't, you know, come in with large need for contract adjustment later because the original estimate was low?
You know, we believe that TMM stands by their, what they put in their proposal, and as we've done in other proposals, we hold contractors to what they've put in their proposal.
But is there any, is there any kind of mechanism in the contract that is kind of very black and white about the do's and don'ts, or the what-ifs, should costs exceed the bid estimates?
It's, I mean, what they provided is what we'll stick with, yeah. So yes, it's in black and white as to what we're going to pay them.
So back to TMM, what can you say honestly about your experience bidding in the past, doesn't have to be necessarily an airport system, about hitting your mark, hitting your estimates fairly closely, or even maybe hopefully coming in under?
We're pretty consistent, and we're pretty close accurate on almost all of our proposals. There's typically not a situation that we've been off, way off on either side, on the low side or the high side. We put a lot of resource in investigation and due diligence into what it's going to take to properly staff that and meet the requirements of the RFP and the contract, and we, our success rate is very well on that.
Okay, thank you. And then lastly, maybe you can speak to kind of the uniqueness of an airport system, an airport contract, especially as it goes back to, I think, my first line of questioning, which was retention of employees. What is kind of attractive to a contractor or unique to a contractor that would on the natural make you want to make sure that you do keep, you do have some continuity and you do keep folks employed?
Yes, so we look at our employees as our greatest asset, and we build a great culture within, in our programs, training, mentor, stepping platform for promotions. We're across the country, and we give opportunities that somebody could be excelling here if they're not, you know, committed to having to stay here. We have opportunities across the entire country. We promote from within. We recognize our employees, we support them, we have several assistant programs in place for any type of issue to deal with, and we put our employees number one. And a lot of employees that may leave for some additional money, we find out that soon after that, they come back and say, you know, the grass isn't greener on the other side, even though I was making a little bit more over there. What you guys did for me here, you respected me, you mentored me, and so retention, we put a lot of effort into, just based on our culture of what we can offer them.
I guess what I was really getting at is that an airport is not a mall. An airport has TSA, for instance. So I assume that there's some value when you have employees that already work in an airport environment, when they, you know, might be managed by a different entity. That's what I'm asking you to speak to.
Yes, so we, you know, that relationship is unique. It's all about relations, building relationships with TSA and the other tenants there, and, you know, making sure that we're meeting the needs of the other tenants and the passengers. And so it is unique to a mall. There's a lot of moving parts that you're not going to see in the mall. We think we're prepared, and with our footprint from healthcare to a 650-bed hospital, to a retail center, to a sporting event, that the processes we put in place and the mentorship of those relation buildings make us succeed in all of the moving parts that every day is different at an airport, it's not the same day of work.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm just going to follow up real quickly, if that's okay, supervisor Desmond. So Cindy, just to make it perfectly clear, I mean, this isn't like a construction contract in which you have unforeseen circumstances and therefore you have change orders come in. A services contract is pretty straightforward, and, you know, what you see on the four corners of the paper is what we're going to hold you to, correct?
That's exactly right. What I would like to point out, that the current contract we have with Pride for Terminal B and Concourse B, we have adjusted the rates over the term of that contract. You know, we're reasonable. There have been, they've come, Pride has come to us with various reasons that they needed to increase what we were paying them, and we listened to their concerns, and we came back to the board and increased what we paid them.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll piggyback on that last point first, because, I mean, it is a legitimate concern that when you see such a huge discrepancy between your cost proposal and Pride's, it really begs the question, are you going to come back and we'll be dealing with this another day? But I appreciate the back and forth, the discussion. So if that were to happen, if this board made the decision to award this to TMM, and they could not meet the performance objectives or perform the tasks within this cost estimate, then what would be the next step?
We would come to the board for an amendment. But I will say, that would, it would be a long, a long time before we would do that. We would want to really ensure that there's, unless there are some kinds of force majeure that happen, it's unlikely that we would make any, absolutely make any changes. You know...
Or we could also, sorry to cut you off, Cindy, but we could also say, well, then let's put it back out to bid, because they can't certainly, obviously can't perform under this.
Right. But I would add that, you know, who foresaw COVID? Who foresaw that our traffic levels would go down to 5% of what they were? There are things that we can't always anticipate, so I will be reasonable.
Okay, I appreciate it. And there's a couple of things I want to flesh out a little bit. I mean, from my perspective, the most important element of this whole discussion is the employees and their well-being and their ability to maintain employment. And Pride does a wonderful job creating opportunities for a lot of employees out there at the airport who may not get those kinds of opportunities in other places. So I want to delve into that a little more. You know, you talk about the supports, I know you read probably from the contract, and, you know, I think some of the employees there require some unique supports. And I've been told that TMM actually has some experience with that, providing those supports in your other contracts. Can you delve into that a little bit?
Yes, sir. So we do have several locations that we have job coaches, we partner with state agencies and give them a platform. Most recently, just of last week, with Goodwill of Heartland, we were awarded, nominated for employer of the year for 2023, based on our partnership with them on some employees and our manager, from the hiring process, onboarding, all the way through to our scope of work, setting them up for success, communicating with their job coaches. So we do do that across the country. We have several sites that we partner with the state in getting in resources to ensure that they have as successful, and we want to hire them, we want them to work for us, and that's the kind of company that we are. We want to give back to the community and provide jobs for everyone that we can.
Because to me, I mean, it would obviously be very concerning, I think, to me and my colleagues, if, after you perform your, you know, obligations that 60-day period, because the employees may need some unique assistance, they're no longer be able to, employed by TMM after that 60-day period is over. I mean, that is a legitimate concern, I think, for me and certainly others. The last thing I just want to touch on at this point, I'll probably have some more questions and comments later, is there been some statements about, one of the reasons your proposal comes in so much lower is because it's resulting in a lot lower wages for the employees? Can you address that?
Based off the wages that are, we provided and proposed from the CBA as well as the current rosters, our wages are higher in all aspects, from custodials to supervisors to floor technicians. So we're above what the current rates are.
Okay, so in other words, I mean, any of these employees that are there now, based on your proposal, it would not, there's, you would not be proposing to pay them less under any circumstances if you retain them as an employee?
You're correct. We have that roster, and whatever they're making now, we would make them whole, so there is... there is no change in pay, no change in benefits, vacation, any of that. It would be carried over, transitioned over to what they're currently at, or higher or better.
Okay, thank you.
So not to mention the fact that you have agreed to join the bargaining unit, or your employees will be part of the bargaining unit out there, correct?
Yes, that's correct. I've been in contact with the union.
There's certainly no way that you're going to come in here and that, which we all know, that bargaining unit is going to say, you know, sure, we want lower wages.
Right, yes. We've been in contact, they're aware, and if we're approved, we're ready to start that ball rolling with them. They're just waiting for the outcome.
Thank you. To follow up on Supervisor Desmond's question, just a little more specific is, you know, we heard from staff that you are willing to and have in the past provided coaching and supports. Those are the words that have been used. And I understand you can work with people like the Department of Rehabilitation and others to do so. But I heard the word support. What's that mean? To you, what does that mean?
For our support, it's being a voice for those employees to also help them navigate through work. It's, you know, supporting them on certain skills and tasks to make them excited about their future, excited about their career. So when we support them, as we're working in tandem with a state agency or entity, you know, there, a lot of times, we're still the first, our account manager is still the first person they go to, like a mentor, and whatever it means. It could be, hey, I need help with applying for something else, and it may not even be related to the janitorial side of things or the current thing. And maybe it's something in their personal life that we will help them navigate the best we can as a third party, as a voice for them as well.
So you recognize that, you know, of course, we all know that you have the 60-day period under the law. But should that time period come up, and you have a number of employees who are currently employed by Pride? Now granted, certainly not by any means, stretch of the imagination, are all of the Pride employees disabled, but those who are, you know, you recognize that in order to go beyond that 60 days and abide by what I think is the spirit, if not the word of the law, that that may require you and your organization to work closely with those current Pride employees and provide them services that you wouldn't necessarily be expected to provide for all employees.
Yes. And the last thing we want to do is separate an employee. That's, you know, the last thing any of these guys want to do. So that 60-day thing, yes, it's a benchmark, but come day 61, we're not looking to say, you don't, you know, meet our requirements and we can't have you here anymore, you know, thanks for doing the 60 days. They're engaged, we're all engaged to, again, continue to make them happy, give them that support, give them a purpose there. And we may have to tweak the task that they're doing, but we're looking to keep them. So the 60 days is by law and a benchmark, but I just want to reassure that on day 61, there's not going to be a mass separation or exodus of that.
60 days is a floor, not a ceiling in your mind.
Yes, yes, yes. And terminations or separations are the last ultimate thing we ever want to do. And we help with other, if we have other, pick up other contracts out here, you know, there may be some rotation to place them in other places that might be a better suit for them if they be.
And you're going to go, what, numbers are somewhere around from the current 139 badge-ed employees to 177, is that roughly right?
Yes, that's what they are.
And in order to do that, because it's, we all know, it's a tough job market to hire people out there, so that would be further benefit you to go above and beyond to do what you can to maintain the employees that are out there today.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hume?
Unless Supervisor Frost has questions for you, sir, my questions are back to staff.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you, sir. If we have more questions, we'll call you up.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. So I'm going to get out over my skis here a little bit. I support Pride's mission. I support the fact they're a local company. I support the social enterprise aspect of what they do. And I recognize that this is a very important contract to their overall network of the work that they provide for people who would otherwise be underemployed or unemployed. And so in listening to the line of questioning from my colleagues, I don't know that there's the political will to do so. And I say this with no disrespect to your company, sir. If there were the political will to, again, override staff's recommendation and dispense with this RFP process, and it's entirely in order to award to Pride, is there a process by which we could do that? And I say that because, first of all, let me, sincere appreciation for airport staff in trying to meet those goals that you lined out at the beginning of your presentation, and certainly trying to make it the most pleasurable experience for our travelers and passengers. But I don't believe that airport efficiency and operations and inclusivity in our contracting can't be co-equal laudable goals. And so therefore, you know, as I said, there is an aspect to our partnership with Pride that I think should be heralded, that should be held up as the county going above and beyond in the true definition of inclusivity. And it's something that I would like to support if there's a mechanism possible.
So we'll ask County Council to address the question of whether, if the political will of the board is not to take the staff's recommendation to award to TMM, what the alternatives would be with regard to Pride?
I can address it, unless Katrina wants to.
And just to be clear, I ask this question now in case you need time that while we're receiving public comment-
Thank you. We've thought about it, so I can address.
Okay, great.
There's a few options. The first one would be just to rely on the DGS contract for Terminal, I think, is it Terminal A, which expires on August 31st? That would give staff time to figure out what to do. The other option, which probably I think is more in line of what you're thinking, would be to extend the existing Pride contract for another one, or up to two years, because it has two more years remaining.
May I just make a comment? So the contract that is through DGS, so Pride is currently working in Terminal A through the contract with DGS, it's actually renewed every year. The pool expires August 31st of 2026. We could, we could continue to have Pride serve under that contract in both terminals.
I think that was sort of what I was alluding to with option one.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
May I just make one more comment? As Sheri mentioned in her opening statements, it's very difficult to manage two very different contracts, one of which is time and materials, the one in Terminal A, and the one that's in Terminal B, which is performance-based. We really need to get all, have all of the airport contracts under one structure.
I think I've heard that even from the proposers. Yes, Supervisor Frost?
I appreciate Supervisor Hume's comments. I had a question relating to the discrepancy in the bids and the comments that the gentleman made regarding their plan includes keeping everyone at the wage they're at or even higher. So can I, can I assume then that the added, the delta between those two bids was administrative or supplies or time, or we didn't get breakdown on that type of thing?
What? Sorry, we're deciding who's going to answer this. So the difference, there are really four categories, and... if it's possible to show this. Sorry, it's tiny. But basically, for the first five years for TMM, the proposals were broken down into four categories: wages, benefits, direct costs, and indirect costs. And you can see the difference in wages there is about $4 million in benefits, about $6 million, I'm sorry, I'm roughly showing, giving you the difference. For direct costs was 5.8 versus 4, so it's about a million. And the indirect costs were significantly different. So the indirect costs, which is overhead and profit for Pride, are $8.8 million higher or more than double those of TMM.
What does indirect costs, that look like?
Indirect costs are things like allocation of home office costs, allocation of management costs, the, you know, company president, the company leadership, that kind of thing, allocated to that contract.
So overhead?
Overhead, overhead.
It was in the contract.
Yeah.
It was included in the contract as part of the contract, or it was part of their bid. Is it what their current contract calls for, that type of a spread?
I'm sorry, I can't speak to what their current overhead is, but the difference in the proposals, this shows you what the difference in the proposals was.
So if we were to extend their contract, could we make adjustments that would bring them into a more reasonable, or, you know, what's more manageable for the county, whether it be? You're saying it's difficult to manage the two different contracts?
Yes.
I'm not sure I understand that, because I feel like airports is really a sophisticated operation. San Francisco Airport probably has several, I'm assuming, contracts.
Does San Francisco actually has all their, all the custodians there are employees of the city and county of San Francisco?
Oh, okay. So they're under one contract?
It's not even a contract. It's their own employees.
Okay, got it. Okay.
So it's very different in San Francisco. Yep. But the, if we were, so the scope of the work for the current contract that Pride has in Terminal B and Concourse B cannot be extended to Terminal A. It's not in the scope. It's not how we competed that back when. The contract that we have for Terminal A, which is through DGS, can be expanded to include not only Terminal A, but Terminal B and Concourse B.
Okay. All right, that's all for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Chair. And I apologize for coming back full circle in terms of board comments. I know we're all eager to hear from members of the public. But I guess, given what my colleague Supervisor Hume said, I think I'll go ahead and get out over my skis as well. But I'm looking at this from the standpoint of objectives, right? I think the first objective is to respond affirmatively to what our esteemed airport director is, I think rightfully asking for, which is simplification of managing contracts. That, to me, is kind of the no-brainer here. And then, of course, I think to Supervisor Hume's point, and I share precisely the same respect, concern for the mission of Pride, and certainly, we, this board has had ample opportunity over the years to demonstrate that collective support. In fact, some of us even individually have had that experience and respect for that mission of Pride. So I would caution all of us that whatever the board decides to do, I don't think that it should be interpreted either way as some kind of condemnation of Pride's mission. But as Supervisor Desmond said, my, you know, my second main concern and another very important objective is to make sure that Pride employees, separate from executive overhead, is going to be protected. That, to me, is very, very critical here. And knowing that TMM would not only commit to the salaries that they have, that they are bringing on more folks to fulfill the expectations of the contract, which I think you can probably surmise and assume may actually help in terms of overall performance. I think, given our earlier line of questioning, which I'm glad that my colleagues, kind of, we all kind of dovetailed off each other, in terms of really kind of trying to find that comfort level that TMM understands just how important the employees are, the Pride employees. That's what, at least for me, is driving my early line of questioning. And then lastly, finding confidence in the cost estimate. And so when you're looking at a $20 million delta on the five-year cost, and finding some comfort, again, with the other two objectives, making it simpler to manage the contracts, protecting Pride employees, I'm not too sure what there's not to like here. So, or that would kind of, I don't know, inform us that perhaps this is the superior alternative in terms of awarding the contract as staff has recommended. So I just, I know that shows folks a little bit where I'm positioned at the moment, and that's fine. But I'm trying to look at this from kind of those various standpoints. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. At this time, I have no more in the queue from the board. Ms. Thompson, is that the end of staff presentation?
Yes.
Okay, then we will move on to public comment.
Kat?
And as for those of you who were here for the earlier item, if you could take a look, and I will try to call up early so that we can make this, we have a long list. If you could try to come down prior to your time to speak and get in a queue, that would make things go quicker, and we could have a chance to hear from everybody.
Hello, my name is Kat Madru, and I'm the Public Relations Director for Pride Industries. And at this time, I'd like to present a video from our employees at the airport.
And this will not come out of your time, by the way, so if we could stop the clock, because I believe it's a short video.
It's very short.
Okay.
This is a little harder than you said. This angle as well.
Don't put the microphone.
And Pride is here for him, for my daughter. It's just really, really important that people with invisible disabilities are given a chance and have the opportunity to live a full life and be able to support themselves.
I'm more than grateful. I mean, I wouldn't have anything else if I didn't have this job.
It means a great honor. It's brilliant. And I go home and I tell my family about it every day.
My job is important because it keeps a roof over our head, food on the table, and electricity through the house.
And also to help support my mom, because she is the most important thing to me. And I want to make her know that her little boy can stand on his own and know that he can do this no matter what anybody says. And he knows that he can be his own man.
I have no words for what they've done for me.
And that was probably the best we've ever had when somebody did it on their phone. Appreciate that.
My name is Carol Colton, and I want to tell you about my typical day as a job coach. I start with reviewing with each coach's, sorry, the video hit.
Could you just pull the microphones a little closer to you? That'd be great. I want to hear, we want to hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Okay. My typical day as an employee, employment coach starts with reviewing the customer's expectations for the shift and developed strategies to meet each goal by delegating individual tasks to each team member, breaking down the jobs as needed. I provide personalized guidance, feedback, and support to help employees learn new skills and to adapt to different tasks with the aid of visual task boards or accommodations as needed to be successful. I check in with each team member throughout the shift to determine if they know which task needs to be done next and guide them with verbal cues, prompts, and when necessary. I also check and make sure they're experiencing fatigue or cognitive impact. I help them get back on track. I also assist with techn- impact. I help them get back on track. I also assist with technology, written directions, and verbal communications. We as professionals ensure that employees with disabilities have the necessary assistance to succeed in their work environment. As a part of my role, I develop training, training strategies, provide individualized coaching and mentoring to ensure success and development of coached employees, setting up work, directing workflow, providing safety training support, schedule and monitor progress of customer assigned work through to completion, develop and maintain positive collaborative relationship with the customer to ensure the job success of each coached employee, initiate an accommodation as if needed, maintain quality of work, review employment goals, and coach employees with on a consistent basis and document progress, conduct interactions in a manner that emphasizes abilities, experience, and individual qualities. In summary, an employment coach provides essential support, fosters inclusion, and supports individuals with disabilities to thrive in their jobs. We are here today to ask the Sacramento Board of Supervisors to protect jobs for people with disabilities and support Pride Industries. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Next, we have Eric, followed by Lawrence.
Good evening. My name's Eric McCullough. Hi, my name's Eric McCullough, and I live here in Sacramento with my parents and my twin brother, Darrell. I've been with Pride Industries since May of 1984, and I'm still far from retirement, but I love what I do without expecting recognition. I just let the work speak for itself. And eventually, people notice it in the long run. I still say that Pride Industries does an excellent job at keeping the Sacramento International Airport clean and spotless, and that it does not deserve to lose the contract under any circumstance. People with disabilities may not be able to do certain things as well as normal people, but they're still brilliant, intelligent, smart, and mature. No Pride employee deserves to be talked down to, mistreated, overlooked, or discriminated against because of the color of his or her skin, disability or nationality. But they deserve to be treated with respect, courtesy, honesty, and love. To be honest with you, I really feel comfortable working at the Sacramento International Airport as a Gastonian, and enjoy talking to the travelers as they walk to their gates to board their flights. I would really like to thank all my job trainers for all the encouragement that they have given me, and appreciate them. But most importantly, I thank the Lord for allowing me to learn new things and, and build up my self, and, and build up my self-esteem so I won't have a low opinion about myself. If it wasn't for His grace and mercy, I would not have a portion of health and strength, a job, a food on my table, or a roof over my head. But I'm still grateful, and I always will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Lawrence, Lawrence, followed by Andrew.
Afternoon, members of the board. My name is Lawrence Jackson. I've been working with Pride Industries going on four years. The thing I like about my job is that I get to meet new people and keep a safe, clean environment for families and their children to travel. The task that I specialize in the most is polishing the stainless steel columns. I clean all the fingerprints that are left there and make them nice and shiny. The reason I love my job is because it gives me a reason to get up in the morning so I can help provide for my family, and keeps me busy during the day. The reason Pride Industries should keep the contract is because in the real world, it is hard for people who are on the spectrum to find a job. Pride Industries' SMS contract is the only contract that has seven days a week. It is a privilege to work for Pride Industries because not only do you get the training for the job, but you also get to use that training to further your, your career, in case you want to go to another job. It is important for me to have a job coach because they encourage me to do a good job and congratulate me after I have done the task at hand.
Thank you, Lawrence.
You are.
Andrew, followed by Darlin.
Hello. My name is Andrew Garcia from Pride Industries. I am very grateful and thinking back on my 10 years of service as a janitor at the airport. As I stand in front of you today, I have seen countless planes take off, and I and tourists going on journeys and everyday activity inside these airport walls during the last 10 years. Working at the airport has filled me with joy and satisfaction as every day brings new opportunities to interact with travelers from diverse backgrounds and cultures. Each shift is a pleasant adventure because of a lively atmosphere and sense of unity among coworkers, leaving me with grateful recollections. My profession gives me a great sense of belonging, where assistance, community, and shared goals makes me feel like I am part of a second family. With our mentors, our job coaches serves as an exploration of hope for people navigating the frequently choppy waters of career growth. They turn difficulties into opportunities, uncertainties into confidence, and dreams into reality. We now have the chance to leave a lasting impression on the communities we serve as well as the terminals themselves thanks to this contract. Let us seize this chance with respect, honor, and a total commitment to quality. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Darlin, followed by Jordan. I was taking a stab at your name.
You did great.
Oh, thank you.
I would have stood up if, no matter what you'd called me.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time. My name is Darlin Pazdel. I'm the Vice President of Workforce Inclusion for Pride Industries, and I've dedicated my entire life to securing integrated, inclusive environments for people with disabilities. They're the most underutilized group of employees, and that's our mission. This is a population with untapped skills and talents. You've listened to their successes. They contribute to the economic health of our Sacramento community. Pride has been recognized for business services excellence while providing employment for people with disabilities for nearly six decades. Our airport is a perfect example of the county's willingness to partner with Pride Industries in a very public, integrated, inclusive environment, all while showcasing an award-winning travel hub. While partnering with the airport, we together have provided individuals with disabilities the same opportunity that you and I have, a competitive job market. Together, we've positively impacted the lives of nearly 200 individuals and their independence. We've invested the lives, excuse me, we've invested in the lives of people with disabilities together as a partnership, and it's taken us years to develop the skills and to reach the point where we are today. We heard earlier about contracted supports. Pride Industries is an industry leader in setting up natural supports for individuals with disabilities. You've heard from one of our job coaches. They learn and maintain the skills necessary to be successful to provide the high-quality services. If another organization is chosen, these natural supports will likely not be available for long, and the current employees will likely not have the supports they need to continue to be successful. 36 individuals and the hope of any future employees with disabilities may be displaced, displaced. It would be huge disservice to our Sacramento community to tear this partnership apart, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Darlin. Jordan, followed by Mary. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Jordan Coggins. I've been with Pride for a little over 15 years, and I've been the Custodial Program Manager at Sacramento Airport for the past year. Through effective communication and good partnership between Pride and the county, there've been a lot of great things that have happened. Difficult situations to overcome, window washing projects that, that we've helped support the county with, and vice versa with safety concerns that we've had for our custodians. The airport has been a great partnership with me in the year that I've been here, and I look forward for that to continue moving forward. In my 15 years, I've supported hundreds of employees with disabilities, most of which have worked at the airport. Today, I see former employees with disabilities working with other vendors, including restaurants, airlines, and wheelchair services, years after they've left our program. We don't just keep the airport clean. We provide a talent pool of people with disabilities that support the airport in all avenues, and we are woven into the fabric of what makes SMF great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Mary, followed by Charles. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. My name is Mary Flores, and I have been, and I'm the Vice President of Custodial Operations for Pride Industries. I'm a 30-year employee. Our custodial portfolio is in excess of 20 million square feet with over 1,000 employees in California, we, which 20% are people with disabilities. Pride is ingrained in the community here. I currently sit on two boards, the Sacramento Hispanic Chamber and the American Leadership Forum, and have served as Board Chair for both. I've been actively involved with oversight and execution of the Sacramento Airport contract since January 2023, when Pride realigned its reporting structure to build capacity and better support our growing commercial business line. This was about raising the bar and delivering a better customer experience. During this time, we have sustained scoring, sustained scoring of 95% or better, received improved scoring from county inspectors in restrooms, food courts of 90, 97% or better, enhanced communication strategies, improved tracking, monitoring, and reporting that includes the county's data, increased inspection and employee engagement through incentive programs, reduced customer complaints to under 25 per month, with an average foot traffic of 1 million per month. That's pretty good. In October of 2023, Pride introduced a more robust customer experience model, which helped us deepen our understanding of our customers' pain points, better align with them, and foster more engagement to deliver the services that they care about. We monitored and shared our progress on a two-week cadence and have now moved to a monthly review. In addition, we have quarterly business reviews, which have evolved to a shared review, including the customers' metrics as well. As an inclusive local employer, we have enjoyed the county support for the past 13 years. The work we do out there not only benefits airport operation, but has changed countless lives and makes a difference in the local communities we serve. We know when we include all in employment access, we not only help others succeed, but we all feel better for it as well. Thank you for hearing our comments and for your continued support of Pride Industries and individuals with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Charles, followed by Leah.
Hello, I'm Charles Sharp, CFO for Pride Industries. Thank you. Thank you for taking out the time to hear us out today. One of the things we wondered, or I wondered, was had the airport evaluated proposals for realism? In our opinion, TMM is undercutting the local labor market. I believe there's a high risk of a low bidder buying into our local market, a high risk of the airport receiving a request for additional funding after year three. Pride proposal achieves price realism, reflects historical and projected local markets, local labor market trends, also takes into consideration our local market conditions, which is California 6.6% minimum wage increase annually between 2015 and 2024. Also considers the fast food industry minimum wage of $20 per hour beginning April 2024, and the CPI of 4.2% on average annually between 2020 and 2024. So I'd like to take a quick minute to discuss the financial realities, realities. As you take a look at the graph presented on Slide 3 here, the, the area between the estimated TMM wage, the gray dotted line, and the fast food, fast food minimum wage, the green dotted line is likely where we believe there may be a shortfall in the TMM contract price. The area between the estimated TMM wage and the gray dotted line and the price wage, the black dotted line, is the difference in the proposals. Pride's proposal does step up the wages for custodians in year two. We're consistent within the local market. We believe Pride is the right price. Our price takes into account market realities and market trends. Market competition will be at $20 per hour in range a year or two of this contract, and we believe the selected best value price significantly undercuts the local market. With 170 or so custodians in this, in this proposal, that would create a, a large gap in price. So I know I have to wrap it up. So in closing.
Thank you.
I'm not going to go to Slide 4. But in closing, you know, Pride expects the local labor market for custodians to mirror the fast food by year two. And if this contract is awarded, in my, in my opinion, if this contract, man, sorry about that, if TMM has this contract, I estimate they will be coming back to the airport for requests within three years for additional dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Leah Burdick, Chief Growth Officer, Pride Industries. In 2023, we launched a formal customer experience management program at the airport using a well-known airport industry consultant. Pride paid approximately $50,000 for this. It resulted in more frequent and better communications with airport management, such as bi-weekly meetings to produce more cohesive communications. We identified data points to track progress and ensure that both parties were on the same page. We also held disability awareness training for airport employees to attend. The customer experience program also enhanced operations based on passenger feedback, focused on root cause of issues. For example, we aligned with SMF's external customer satisfaction tracking and drilled down to specific areas and times for course correction. This raised the overall customer happiness score, and we also put an incentive program in place for our supervisors at the airport. And we did see a positive shift in the airport's receptivity after implementing this customer experience program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeff Durn, followed by Jasmine.
Chair, before my time starts, I did request if I could have a couple more minutes, and especially in light of some of the discussion earlier with TMM and staff, I'd like to be able to address some of those responses, if possible.
I'll give you two extra minutes.
All right. Thank you, sir. So why is a social enterprise model important to SAC County? I think you can see it at the airport. We're a little disappointed, to say the least, that the RFPs in both the last round a couple of years ago and this one placed no importance or advantage on social enterprise. In fact, we have received comment from staff that the social enterprise model is not actually a good fit for this airport. So we're very disappointed with the direction that that's heading. You can try to replace what Pride does at the airport, but it's been built over 13 years. It won't happen in 60 days. It won't happen in two years. It just won't happen. Even depending on our great state partners, agencies like DOR and DDS and Alta Regional Center, we have the staff, you heard from Carol, we have hundreds of staff like Carol across the region. This is what we're best at. This is what we do. Our pricing, as Charles just showed, the gap, we estimate $18 million of the $20 million gap is actually due to frontline worker wages. When you don't step up the wages to the $20 an hour for the frontline custodians, for the 170 headcount, you're not going to get to market. Our best estimate, based on TMM's, TMM's billing rates in the draft agreement, is that they will barely reach $20 an hour by year five. That's an estimate, but that's what we're seeing when we analyze the numbers. We're asking the board to please take the time to revisit this question with staff. It's too important to blow past this, vote today, approve a contract. When we're saying it's high, high risk that in year three, you're going to be underwater, they're going to have to pay the market rates to employ people to keep their turnover lower, they're going to have to do the right thing as an employer. But if they can't afford to do that, and they're taking significant losses, they will be back. And that, that does need more analysis of price realism before you can proceed and in good conscience approve this award. I want to say that Pride's performance has been exceptional. Our contract calls for I want to say that Pride's performance has been exceptional. Our contract calls for a goal of 95% performance ratings. The scoring system itself is not perfect, but it is objective, and it's clearly defined what clean looks like per this contract. It should be further refined, not turned into a penalty-based system. If you look at the penalties that we have experienced as Pride, they're not very major. They're pretty minor. Our average score, as you can see on this chart, has increased year over year over year, to the point where we're now registered in the system that both parties share and input inspections to. We're at 96.35% for both terminals combined. That's about 95% at Terminal B, 97.28% for Terminal A, and those scores will continue to rise with the customer experience program that Leah just addressed to you. This new RFP adds 70 FTEs. We don't have 135 FTEs. We have 135 badge employees. We have 100 FTEs today. You're increasing the headcount by 70%. We want to deliver the Disneyland experience that our customer requests from us. We want to get to steady scores of over 97.5%. With 70 more headcount, with 70% uptick in staffing, we'll get there. No doubt about it. And we'll do it, as we have to date, with over 1/3 of our workers being people with disabilities. The yellow highlight there is just showing you an outlier. There are some differences in how the performance is scored at the airport. The public areas is one of them. The county inspects during the day after high traffic. We inspect all throughout the day during low and high traffic. That disparity, if eliminated, puts our overall scores at over 97%.
Can you wrap up, Mr. Dern?
So just to close, we may have a little bit higher overhead, a little bit higher profit, but our price is right. It's realistic. Best value is not a low bid. We bring the value. We've demonstrated for the past 13 years, our performance has increased over the last three. I'm imploring you to please take the time not to rush to judgment today. There's so much information introduced here today that we don't have the time to address. All I'm asking for, and our team is asking for, is just to take a little bit more time to make sure you get this right, because 36 employees with disabilities' jobs hang in the balance. Thank you.
Thank you. Jasmine, followed by John.
Chair Kennedy and supervisors, thank you for allowing us to speak before you today. My name is Jasmine Allop, a representative of the Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce. We represent the interests of 15% of the total businesses that reside in the Sacramento region today. And as the largest ethnic chamber in our region, we are very familiar with diversity, equity, and inclusive initiatives that promote and recognize our most disadvantaged communities as assets. We believe that this workforce is truly an asset to our region, and Pride Industries is a social enterprise model that promotes, hires, and creates real pathways for people with disabilities, serves an important role that places a priority on ensuring they are productive members of our community. Pride has consistently performed under this contract with a rating of 95%. We should be leaning into Pride's model that not only delivers a high-level scope of work, but also cares for and promotes these communities while offering fair wages. We urge you to reconsider the County Department of Airports' recommendation to award its custodial services contract to an out-of-state, for-profit company that does not have a proven track record in our region, and continue with Pride Industries. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jasmine. John, followed by Robert.
Good afternoon. John Decker, the Director of Community Services at Alta California Regional Center. Alta California Regional Center has served Sacramento County since 1970. We currently have approximately 19,000 individuals with developmental disabilities in Sacramento County. We serve 32,000 individuals across 10 northern California counties. We've been a partner with Pride Industries for decades. We recently learned about this change that is being proposed, and we came here today to talk about our very large concerns about the individuals that we support and their ability to be able to retain their jobs and the supports that they need to be able to work independently. We all like being able to go to jobs. We all like being able to have that feeling about it. When you look at developmental disability services, primarily employment, back in the day, used to look at people sitting in workshops together, all assembling things in a little line and making subminimum wage. Pride has been a leader in our community of opportunities like the airport, and it's very challenging to be able to create new opportunities like this when they are lost. The Regional Center supports individuals through supportive employment to be able to participate in these, because that is what we want. We want competitive, integrated employment. We're very concerned about this. If you are concerned, you are right to be concerned. The Regional Center provides a lot of supports to an experienced agency to ensure that our Regional Center clients are able to have their employment. We're not allowed to contract with out-of-state entities when it comes to providing supports for people with developmental disabilities. So again, I hear people talking about a pause to things right now, and we'd really like the Board of Supervisors to think, take a little bit of a deeper look into this, about the impact of removing Pride Industries and that very wealth of support that they offer to the individuals. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, John. Robert, followed by Cassandra.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Height. I'm the President and CEO of the Sacramento Metro Chamber, and I stand here before you today, still a little disheartened, and I'm sure you have a tough decision here to make. You know, actually Eric may not even know this, but he met me when I flew in about taking this job, and I knew right away that this community was more than transactional. This was a transformational community, and that's something that you have to weigh. There are certainly the complexities of contracts and the nuances that go in with it, but the people are what make up this community, and that's what also made me reaffirm my commitment to coming here to lead the Sacramento Metro Chamber. And so as you hear from the airport staff and certainly the folks at TMM, you know, they put some due diligence, due diligence into this, but the realities of working with an organization like Pride Industries, I know firsthand. When I was at the Vegas Chamber, we worked with a similar organization called Opportunity Village, and they also had a very similar contract with the airport, and it was something that was woven into the fabric of our community. And so, again, you each have a tough decision to make here, but I stand in full support of Pride Industries and Jeff and his team and the people that make up what we call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Cassandra, hang on one second. I've got two board members punched in. Do you want to wait till after public? Okay, all right. Cassandra, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. My name is Cassandra Jennings, and I've been around a long time. I've certainly been able to sit in seats over here and have made plenty of recommendations to this body, and I appreciate your time today. I just recently actually joined the Advisory Board with Pride Industry because I really support the mission and the vision of the organization. Having been a longtime resident, I have obviously benefited from a lot of their services as well. I want to talk to you about two things. One, the unintended consequences to an RFP process. I appreciate all the work that's been done. I look at the process first as combining two contracts into one, and then favoring large and out-of-town providers. And then with the evaluation process, I looked at it, the scores seemed to be pretty close, and then there's a ranking that's, that always sort of confuses me. I'd like to see the second and third ranking, and then there's obviously the price. So that's the RFP process. But the unintended consequences, which you've heard a lot about today, is more about employee retention, and we can say that they will be employed by another entity, but we know that employer matters, and the culture of an organization and of a business matters, especially for those with disabilities. I have a nephew that was on the autism spectrum that need, couldn't work for every employer, so it is important to really emphasize that, that the culture is important and employee retention. I think the second thing is about the investment in the local business and economy. I know the airport is doing a lot other places. I saw them at the Kings. I am encouraging you to invest in our community and in the economy that exists, in an organization that is headquartered here, in a, in a model of inclusive inclusivity and really just inclusiveness. So that's what Sacramento is for. It's not business as usual. We should continue to lead where we have been leading in a business that works well for our airport. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cassandra. Kathy, followed by Marjorie. Is Kathy here? I don't see her. Okay, we'll, in case she's outside. Marjorie, are you here?
I am.
Great. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Marjorie Beazer, and I'm affiliated with no one. I showed up because I saw this on today's agenda. I am affiliated with this work back in the Caribbean. I myself struggle with my own disabilities. They're hosting something, the UN is hosting something called the SIDS Conference. It's a small island developing states conference. It's going to be in May of this year, and they're hosting it in Antigua and Barbuda. I'm going to be a part of a group coming out of the entire region. We're reflective of a number of islands there in the Caribbean, and we're focused on, guess what? Disabilities, inclusion, equity, access. I kept note, I was noting a lot of what was said because it's so relevant, and I'm going to repeat it back, because these speak to the areas that I wanted to try and speak to, and I didn't feel I'd be eloquent enough. Transactional versus transformational. Sacramento County has always led, always led, been at the forefront of leadership when it comes to looking at how we, we do what we do in an innovative way. When we talk about persons with disabilities, we're talking about people first, taking a people-first approach. I love what was said just a moment ago about employer matters. Remember, it's about relationship. It's not just about the paycheck. And if you are my neighbor, I have a different relationship with you than I have with somebody somewhere foreign, right? Also, some of the other things that jumped out at me, and I wanted to repeat because I think these are important. I heard social enterprise model. What does that create? It creates an environment of inclusion that starts with me first, not the purse or the package or the pocket. Understanding that money matters, but why do we, why do we create a stream for income is to create and support an enabling environment for all of the members of, of our community. I heard hard considerations. I heard belonging, family, together weave, have that feeling. Those are all soft skills. Those are all soft emotions. I would ask, like everybody else has said, please step back a minute and reconsider. Reconsider. You can, you may make the same choice,
Can you wrap up, Marjorie?
But think about who's here and has that local connection and who's not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Includes your public comments.
Okay, that concludes public comment. We'll come back, but before we do, let me say that this is a, obviously, an important decision for the airport and our community, but it's also one that comes with it just naturally with emotion attached, and the, the respect that you all handled yourself with today is commendable and much appreciated. So thank you very much. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to lead out because I want to begin by apologizing. My comments earlier were in no way intended to provide a slight to my colleagues or to suggest that they, they are any less compassionate, empathetic, or appreciative of the work that Pride Industries does. So let me lead out with that. Nor are any of my comments meant to suggest that TMM did not provide a responsible, honest bid relative to, to what they anticipate their obligations under this contract going forward would be. So no slight against you folks. But even though we have the 60-day policy and they have committed to providing job coaches, you know, if we're worried about performance measures, I don't see how disrupting the management and the support safety network that comes with the coaches and the, the larger Pride organization is going to cause job performance quality to go up. And so, again, I apologize because I don't have the benefit of what happened three years ago, but for me and where I sit, I would be in favor of expanding the Terminal A contract or whatever mechanism needs to happen to buy us some time to negotiate the correct contract with Pride Industries going forward.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost.
Well, this is difficult, but not really for me. I have been a supporter of Pride for many years, and, and I know that what they do is, it's more than a business. I've toured their facility, and I've talked with their employees, and some of them are making computer parts, and some of them are packing teabags, and some of them are going to the airport and working, and it's, it's a, you know, Jeff was talking about best value is not always the low bid. It is a social enterprise model. It is inclusive. It's something that we're really proud of. I'm proud of to, to know that at our airport, we are featuring all of our citizens of all skill sets and from all walks of life. And, and I feel like a lot of these individuals who are affiliated with Pride are every, what they are is because of Pride and because of the support and the mentoring and the learning that they've received there and the structure that they leave there. And so to rip them away from that mentorship or that social model that they have that is kind of the backbone of, of their support system and say, you know, they'll still have a job, I, I'm not sure how they'll do, and I'm not sure how Pride will do, because the, the truth is, it's, it's kind of a, it's a local company, and it's an eco, it's a economic ecosystem that they've kind of, that we kind of have here, and they fulfill an important role for a certain targeted area of our demographic or our, our people. And so, if this is, it's difficult to, to just say that the employees will keep their job and that will make it okay. I don't know how that will end up, and I don't know how they'll react when they're separated from that structure. And I want to see Pride continue to improve. It looks like they've improved over time. I know we, I was there a couple of years ago. I'm sorry we're back here again having this conversation. I'm hoping there's a way that we can extend Pride's contract and figure out a way to work out what the county needs in order to make their business, you know, to manage their janitorial and services at the airport in an excellent way that is inclusive of our, our local pride. That's what I'm hopeful and what I support. I support Pat Hume's suggestion to try to see if we can figure something out. And I, I want to thank TMM because I thought, you know, I, I think you seem very sincere, and you seem like an excellent company, and your bid was very competitive. I, you know, I questioned the realism of what is the reality of the support that's required for these individuals and who will give that when Pride is taken out of that picture? That's, that's the concern that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And first, I want to talk to everybody who is an employee out at the airport. You know, thank you for the work that you all do. We value it. Everybody, you've heard from everybody upon this dais how important your work is and you are to all of us, and, and I've already said it once today, what I wrestle with most is making sure that you are taken care of with whatever decision we make today. So I want to just put that out there at the outset. I had, since Jeff Dern brought it up, about the performance element of this thing. Now, I want to be very clear that the performance aspect, that was not part of the evaluation by the panel. Is that correct, Cindy?
That's correct.
But the performance, as I recall, when this came back to us two, three years ago, performance issues, there were some issues regarding performance, and, and this board decided to give Pride some additional time to try to remedy some of those things. Is that, that was part of the decision, correct?
I would say it a little differently. I would say that at the time, Pride had been under a time and materials contract, and they came up with the, the idea of a performance-based contract, which we thought was a they came up with the, the idea of a performance-based contract, which we thought was a good idea. Rather than, I remember Jeff saying, rather than measuring, counting the number of people who are at the airport, why don't we look at outcomes? So, you know, how clean is it? You know, how long is the stain in the carpet, things like that? And we thought that was a good idea. So, we tried it, the, the thing that we found is that our definition of what's clean and Pride's is, you know, tends to be different, but I will emphasize that this is about much more than just price and about more than just, and it certainly has nothing to do with their prior performance. As Sheri emphasized, neither I nor Sheri nor anyone who's managing Pride was involved as a member of the panel.
Okay. And, and a few years ago, I remember, yeah, one of the issues was that we were changing the nature of the contract, needed to give Pride, wanted to give Pride an opportunity to, to adjust to that. And, and in terms of the performance aspects, we've, we've heard a lot about this, you know, hitting the 95% level. Can, can you flesh that out a little bit to me? Because even though performance wasn't included in terms of, included as part of the evaluation process, it does influence why we are here today talking about this. Is that right?
So, 95% sounds great, but I will say that Pride has been assessed penalties in all but one month that we've had this, this structure. They've been penalized in all but one month for failure to meet the goals that they themselves set.
Okay. And, you know, I, I guess that's another, you know, several, I'm struggling with several aspects of this, you know, and which way I land on this. If I were to go out over my skis, I would just say I'm really struggling with, with which way to go today. We've heard from several people suggesting a pause or a delay, and I guess, you know, Mr. Chair, could I ask a question of Mr. Dern? Would you mind direct, if I ask him a question?
You're a board member.
Jeff, let me ask you, if you please come, return to the podium. You know, you mentioned a pause, you know, take a, take a pause. What, what would that look like? What would that accomplish, in your opinion?
Well, I think just the questions you were just asking to Cindy, it's much more complicated than just saying, we've been assessed penalties in every month. Most custodial providers at airports probably have penalties every month. The contracts are laden with penalties. What would be accomplished by a pause would be to get some clarity on price realism. I think that's super important. If I was in your shoes, I'd hesitate toward a contract where there's a significant risk that within two to three years, it won't be competitive with the labor market. That would be a disservice to the county to shove a company like Pride Industries aside only to find out two or three years later that, yeah, there was a price issue here. Why not do the analysis first? In any procurement process, that should be a standard procedure. We're not going to take the lowest bid as best value, we're going to analyze it and ensure that it has realism. The federal government does that with pretty much every contract they look at, so why not do that at the county level?
Okay. All right. Thanks. Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate that. I think taking a pause in terms of performance issues, to me, I'm not sure that's going to address everything. It seems like there's been a lot of time, and there's been issues, and I'm satisfied with the responses I've received from staff about the, the performance issues that we have. In terms of the, the wage realism, I guess that's a good segue for me to ask, you know, is it Dave from TMM? You know, it does concern me that, that when Cindy held up her cellphone, and I would have asked this earlier, but my math is not as quick as some of my colleagues, the $10 million difference just in wages and benefits. You're $10 million less just in wages and benefits in the first five years, yet you intend to have 38 more employees. Explain that to me, because there's a big discrepancy. I mean, I don't understand, how can you maintain the wages or even increase the wages, like you, I think you said to me earlier, and come in that much lower than Pride on the wages and benefits and hire additional people? Explain that to me. What am I missing here?
So, some of that is related to the indirect costs, such as the profit, where, where we, we lower our profit and put what a lot of companies would put as their profit, and we put those back into our wages to, to excel on the frontline staff.
Okay.
So I think there was an $8 million indirect, and we, out of overhead and profit, and we, we reduce our margins on our profit and put that money back in towards, towards wages.
Supervisor Desmond?
Yeah, please, please.
So, to that point, though, what would you attribute that to? It's, I mean, TMM management wakes up one day, say, hey, you know, we're going to be the lowest profit company versus a competitor, or is it a matter of scale? What, what, I guess what influences TMM to come at this particular contract opportunity and kind of state pretty boldly that you're willing, and it's your practice, to accept a lower profit than the social, you know, enterprise model?
A lot of that is with experience of, of current market, and we know that wages struggle, so this is not a time for, for us to increase profit, this is a time, and, and we know that there's a lot of budget constraints for, for a lot of our clients, that, that they're set and they just can't get more, and, and we have a longstanding relationship with a lot of clients, we do the right thing for a client, we look at investing with the client. And so, so that's at the time we're at right now, is, is the wages across the country struggle in certain areas, and, and that's, that's our vision or how we manage that right now. 10 years ago, it may have been a different process in our business development and margins and so forth, but at the current state and the staffing struggles, that's where we reinvest our money in our employees to give them the best benefit.
Got you. Okay, and, thank you. And I, I want to also, you know, again, we've belabored this a lot already in terms of supports and everything, but now you've had a chance to hear from a lot of the employees themselves and, and others, their support staff, management from Pride, about the tangible supports that they provide to, to employees there with developmental disabilities. I, I'd like to give you a chance to comment on that. Is TMM going to be able to provide those same supports?
We absolutely are going to be, and we're committed to, and, and to, to all of those folks that came up, I thank them, I respect them, I love their stories, their statements. They've inspired a lot of people. I can tell them as they transition to over, to us, we're going to welcome to our family, and they're going to continue to inspire many people, and, and we're going to support them just as Pride has been doing. That's the number one goal. And, and, you know, I think it was Mr. Decker from the Regional Center spoke, you know, again, we're, we're looking for that partnership with him. Yes, it's a different company, but we're still looking to, to expand partnerships, to get as many resources and support to, to be able to achieve that mission of, of putting the employees first, making them feel welcome to work for us, and continue to, to make them excel in everything they do.
Okay, and this, my last just point is, again, getting back to kind of where I, my struggle with this is, is on the one hand, I also really value Pride, the work Pride does, being a local company, but no company has a monopoly on a county contract. And, and we already made a decision to take a pause a few years ago to give Pride time to adjust to the new mechanism, the new structure. There've been performance issues, which is part of what's precipitating us moving forward with this RFP and this consolidation. And the fact that, out of a rating system that didn't even take into account the performance metrics, and only 15% of which involved the, the cost, the bid amount, Pride was ranked four, or fourth out of, out of the four companies that were interviewed for this. That's, I'd really struggle with that, and I, and I'm balancing that, you know, do I make a decision to kind of overturn those results and elevate Pride notwithstanding that? Or do we traditionally have done, which I think has been through a very good RFP process from our airport staff? So that's kind of where I am right now, and interested in continued discussion, which is probably nearing its end.
Thank you, Supervisor. Mr. Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, first of all, let me thank all the speakers, whether you are a direct, whether you're a direct Pride employee, or Pride management, or affiliate organization working as a partner with Pride, or chamber representative, others that value the mission of Pride, like you. I sit here in awe of their mission, and we are well aware of their successes and their ability to respond to challenge in many different contexts. And to my two colleagues who have kind of expressed an interest in preserving the Pride contract, I completely respect and honor the fact that you hold that position and understand why. But again, this is, for me, one of those matters that comes with multiple simultaneous responsibilities. And so, I feel very strongly that we have a responsibility to be fair, and as Supervisor Desmond just mentioned and reflected on, and as Ms. Nickel has alluded to several times today, and Sheri as well, that the process, to me, was not only fair, but was intentionally made very fairly objective. To not include kind of the past performance issues and kind of start from zero, I think really gave everyone the fair shot. And so, starting from that point, in terms of the overall process, I want to congratulate and say thank you to staff for understanding that. I, you know, the one party I haven't acknowledged that I think equally respects and is an admiration, admiration of the mission of Pride are our airport staff. They know well aware, they're members of our community, they know the good work that Pride does. And so, that not, you know, that should, that should not be anything that is a takeaway for members of the public that have chosen to speak or write emails to us that somehow the Board of Supervisors or a majority of the Board of Supervisors has a black heart when it comes to Pride. That is not the case now, nor do I think it will ever be the case. We consider Pride a great partner for Sacramento County. But back to my multiple responsibilities, as I mentioned earlier, you know, it's a $20 million delta on the five-year cost. That's not insignificant, and we also are stewards of the public treasure. And so, I can't ignore that. And again, back to my line of questioning about how comfortable, how confident I might be in terms of that cost estimate, I hope it resonated with even those that may have a different perspective than mine on this, that those were some of the right questions to get on the public record that very firm commitment from TMM. And so I am, at this point, comfortable that the cost estimate is what it is. It's competitive. I'm very comfortable that, I think, especially given the, more than our testimony from everyone in support of Pride, I think even more so, TMM now understands just how important and critical Pride is as a community asset. And so, then, lastly, again, it is about simplifying the contracts for, for airport staff so that they can do a better job managing things. So, with that, I am not interested in delaying this. I don't think that much would change, quite frankly, except, you know, we might hear from the, the rest of our friends and acquaintances in, in Sacramento about, about the import of Pride. So, I get it. That's not lost on us. That's never been questioned. But with that, I'm going to move staff's recommendation toward the bid to TMM.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. I will second the motion and make a few comments myself. So, I, by the way, thank you, that was very eloquent, and I think that what you said was right on. We have a fiduciary duty to maintain a competitive and successful airport, which I'm very proud that we have done over the years and have to keep doing so. We also, you know, have a moral duty to protect those in our society who are most vulnerable, which I think that, you know, the supervisors are, you know, quite used to exercising and recognizing that duty. The thing here is, I don't think that the two are necessarily mutually exclusive, and I'll get to that in a minute. Also, as far as, and by the way, Mr. Hume, you know, thank you for your clarification, because if you think that staff recommendation is the politically expedient move, you would be highly mistaken, I believe. But there's, and as far as, I, I have very high confidence in the process. I've been a proposer for RFP responses, I've been on the winning side and the losing side, I've been a grader, I've been, as an elected official, a decision maker, and I think this was a solid process. So, thank you, staff. You've been very transparent from the beginning and very fair, and even, you know, going out of your way, knowing the sensitivities that would be attached to this, to, to make sure that that was the, the case. You know, to characterize this as, you know, we shouldn't do low bid, is, that's a little bit of theater. You know, when you're weighing the cost at 15%, that's not a low bid contract. When you, you know, look at it and you compare the bid of TMM price-wise to that of Pride, it's considerably, as Supervisor Serna pointed out, it's, it's no small amount. But if you consider it to some of the other proposals, it's not nearly as significant a difference. So, so I, you know, I, I don't think anybody up here, I don't think our staff can be accused of a low bid process in this. One thing that I would like to do, regardless of how this goes this almost evening, evening now, is, is I'd like, this is directed at you, Mr. Villanueva, I would like to see county staff work with various agencies and departments that have been mentioned by myself, by Mr. Dern and others today, work with the Department of Rehabilitation or Alta Regional Center or combination. I believe you have some experience dealing with at least one of those agencies, because I understand that our, our county has no policy around differential treatment for people with disabilities, and, and I think we should. I think we owe it, again, whether this goes one way or the other tonight, we, we should have that as a policy at the County of Sacramento and not rely on RFPs or agencies or, you know, all of that, but have it as a fundamental part, core of our business, is that we actually have a mechanism in which we can show differential treatment to our community members with disabilities who don't necessarily need a handout but need a hand up. And I would like, you know, you to do that. It doesn't seem like something that should take too long, could happen within, I'm going to throw a number out there, 60 days. And, and so I, I, you know, and be glad to work with you on that. So with that, obviously, as I did second the motion, I will call for a vote. Please vote.
The motion carries with Supervisors Hume and Frost voting against the item.
Again, thank you all for being here. I know some are disappointed, but I sincerely appreciate your respect for the process. Thank you. Next item, please.
Okay, for item 63, this is your nominations and appointments. Do you mind if I just let them exit the room, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, let's, let's give it a couple of minutes.
Okay, you are continuing to April 9th, the Vineyard Community Planning Advisory Council. Continuing to April 23rd, Building Board of Appeals Cemetery Advisory Commission, Community Review Commission, Elk Grove, Casumna Cemetery District, Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, continuing to May 7th, County Service Area C Delta, Human Services Coordinating Council, and for your first item today, Casumna Area Community Planning Advisory Council. I'll start with Supervisor Frost.
Please continue to May 7th.
Please continue to May 7.
Supervisor Hume?
Also continue to May 7.
Okay. County Service Area 4B.
Continue to April 9, please.
Thank you. Disability Advisory Commission.
Chiefs nominate Dustin Knott.
Would you like to continue the remainder to May 7?
Continue the remainder, yes.
Thank you. Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee.
Continue to April 9.
Thank you. Faroe Cemetery District.
Please continue to April 23.
Thank you. Galt Arno Cemetery District. Mr. Hume?
Please continue to April 9.
Thank you. Notomas Community Planning Advisory Council. Mr. Serna?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Zia Mian Ali Ahmad, and continue the balance until April 23.
Thank you. Public Health Advisory Board.
Chiefs nominate Megan Reichert.
Okay. And can we continue to?
Continue the remainder.
Thank you. Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board.
Chiefs nominate Jenny Stoneburner. And as you can tell, my notes don't have continuances, so if there's a remainder, continue it.
We will continue that to April 9.
Thank you.
Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls.
Continue to April 9.
Sacramento County Mental Health Board. Supervisor Frost?
Continue to May 7, please.
Thank you. Okay. Sacramento County Youth Commission, I'll start with Supervisor Serna.
Please continue to April 23.
And Mr. Kennedy?
Continue to May 7.
Mr. Desmond?
May 7, please.
And Supervisor Frost?
May 7, please.
Thank you. Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Mr. Desmond?
Please continue to April 9.
And Ms. Frost?
Continue to May 7.
Thank you. Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory, Mr. Hume?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Tyson Martella and request to waive the process.
Second.
And continue the remainder to April 23, please.
Okay, unanimous, and we will continue the remainder. And last but not least, is Veterans Advisory Commission. This is Mr. Kennedy.
Please continue to April 23.
Okay, that concludes your nominations and appointments, and we're on to CEO comments.
Thank you, Board. I just wanted to thank you for staying all day. This is, I think, the first long, all-day meeting that you've had all year, and there's probably many more to come. I did want to celebrate a couple of things and share with you some of our employees that have been doing such a fantastic job. One, and an underlying comment that we were talking about earlier was employment. Kim Nava, our PIO, on March 8, released the county's first podcast with an interview of Marlon Yarborough, our Chief of Probation, and a piece of that is looking for, folks looking for employment within the county. And included in that was a reference to our website, so if those of you that are interested in working for the county, it's www.saccountyjobs.com. The podcast was fantastic, like you made on your consent agenda earlier, there were some investments in getting to the younger, younger folks and meeting them at their own place, which is on social media, and I think this podcast starts to reach out to that. I did have a chance to listen to it this morning, and it is a great podcast. Marlon and Kim did a fantastic job, and they do wonderful at their, what they're doing. The next one that is supposed to be recorded on Friday will be what the county's doing for sustainability efforts, and I'll include our sustainability manager, John Lundgren. Also, on probation, we were out at probation site last Friday, or last Thursday, and a couple of things came up that I thought were fantastic. One is-
A well-armed dog.
This gentleman here, that, his name is Ace. Gentleman, boy? Yes, boy, thank you. Name Ace is Springer Spaniel, I believe. He is the newest drug dog for the canine officer, that is, for probation. Right now, he's, he's been trained to find various narcotics, including fentanyl and other things. Right now, he's found over 900 grams of illegal drugs, and then also about 100 different things, similar to the things you see there, that aren't necessarily drugs, but more drug paraphernalia or things related to it. So, like money, money coming through, a lot of times, large quantities of money will show some sort of traces of drugs, and Ace has been a fantastic job. I don't know, we had a closed session today on labor, I'm not sure that we need to add that one to our list, but right now, he's living off of treats and belly rubs, and we appreciate his efforts. So, the last thing I'd bring up that Chief Yarborough brought up was, as you know, we have a library called El Centro in the youth detention facility, and our librarian is Mrs. Jessie Sohr, who is in partnership with Sacramento County Office of Education, and she was sort of, she was nominated or nominated to be in the top four of the national, nationally as Librarian of the Year. So that was fantastic things. So, with that, I'll, I just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I'll have you know that I, too, will work for treats and belly rubs. Supervisor Serna?
Great, thank you. So first, I wanted to publicly thank David for the invitation to provide a tour of the district. I think, have you concluded all of them now?
I've done three of five.
Three of five, okay. I thought it was very useful for our county exec to see in real time and out in the, out in the community, not just our concerns, but also our achievements. So we went to places like Metro Air Park and others, other parts of District 1, McLone Business Park, and I thought that went very well, and I think, and I would hope it goes just equally well for the balance of the districts. I did want to make mention of the fact that next Monday, the county will be recognizing Caesar Chavez Day of Service. It is a holiday for county employees, and I know that there's probably a lot, ton of activity in all five districts. Just wanted to make mention that there will be a garden cleanup, a small one, at Marisol Village in District 1 in the River District from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And I'm currently trying to see if, and recruit maybe some folks from probation to pick up a shovel or a broom or other implement necessary to help clean up that community garden and that great new development there. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Desmond?
Real quick, I just want to thank all of my colleagues up here. I mean, it is really remarkable, the, with that last difficult item that we just had, I think we have some very serious, thoughtful deliberations up here, and I think we all wrestled with that last one. And, you know, makes me think of, along this kind of canine theme as I'm watching here. I flew recently out of town and had the privilege of interacting with some of the bark dogs. I can't remember what the B stands for, but it's Airport Relaxation Core or something. I don't know if any of you experienced those dogs, but what I would suggest or propose that next time we have a very difficult vote like that, we can maybe have a few of those bark dogs back here for all of us.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, I will just say that for my fellow board members to be aware that I have decided that due to time constraints and other considerations, I will be stepping down from the SACOG board. And so I have asked the clerk to agendize for our next meeting the appointment to replace me. And anything else?
No, that's it.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. We're adjourned.